The February 5th, 2014 meeting of the City Council is called to order. Please let me know when you're in the fourth. This meeting has been properly noticed and posted in compliance with the open meeting law. These proceedings are being video recorded as well as presented live on KCLV Cable Channel 2 and are closed captioned for hearing impaired viewers. Please note some customers of Cox Communications who do not have a cable box may view this meeting on digital channel 89.5. The council meeting as well as all other KCLV programming may be viewed on the Internet at www.kclv.tv. The proceedings will be rebroadcast on KCLV and the web the Wednesday of the meeting at 8:00 PM, Friday at 4:00 AM, Saturday at 7:00 PM, Sunday at 7:00 AM, and the following Monday at 1:00 PM. This building is protected by state-of-the-art fire detection and suppression sprinkler system. If a alarm should activate during today's meeting, please evacuate using the exits, the back of the chambers out to the mezzanine, proceed out the double doors to the terrace and down the back staircase. For anyone who has difficulty with stairs, please check with a marshal or a fire official for assistance. Once outside, assemble on the northeast corner across the street from City Hall at Lewes and First. Employees wearing safety vests or our city marshals will inform you when it's safe to re-enter the building. For public comment related items on the agenda, citizen participation, public hearing items. We have available a speaker card which you may complete and submit to the city clerk. Cards are available online and the clerk's office are at the rear of these chambers. If you did not submit a card, it does not prevent you from speaking under the public comments, citizen participation, or specified public hearing items. If there is anyone present today who has need for hearing impaired equipment, please come see the city clerk staff up front here. If you parked in the parking garage across the street and did not receive a validation ticket as you entered the chambers, please exit to your right and see the security personnel at the entrance. Before we proceed with the agenda, would everyone please rise for the invocation given this morning by Chaplain Steve Sanson, Veterans in Politics International, and remain standing for the pledge.
Good morning. Romans 13.1, "Let every soul be subject to the governant authorities, for there is no authority except for God, and the authorities that exist are appointed by God." Hebrews 13.7, "Remember those who rule over you, who have spoken the word of God to you, whose faith follow, considering the outcome of their conduct." God, thank you for the city of Las Vegas, a place that is home and refuge to millions. Forgive us for any sins that we have committed against you. Purify our hearts and cleanse us from disadvantageousness, disagreements, disappointments, disbeliefs, and disconcertments. Help our leaders take appropriate action to sustain and regain full confidence of each other and the citizens whom they serve. Grant our leaders wisdom and special insight as they continue to ascertain the unique challenges of Las Vegas. Thank you, God, for hearing and answering our requests. Amen.
Amen. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, and with equal liberty and justice for all.
And we will now proceed with the ceremonial portion of the agenda. attorney, Steve Wolfson, here in his beautiful bride, our judge, former judge and celebrity, Jackie Glass. And we have Councilman Coffin doing due respect. It's all right. It's all right. Okay, starting right off, Councilman Ross is going to recognize our February Citizen of the Month, you lucky man.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I want to express my appreciation to Steve Sanson from Veterans in Politics for a wonderful invocation. Thank you, Steve. It's always wonderful to start our meetings off with the invocation and, of course, the pledge of allegiance to our flag. When the state of Nevada transferred Floyd Lamp Park back to the city in 2006, I was very pleased because I have very fond childhood memories of that park. When I was a kid, it was known as Tulie Springs Park. So, the first thing I did is went to the Nevada Legislature and asked them to help me change the name to Floyd Lamp Park at Tulie Springs, and they agreed. Over the past eight years, we've done a lot of work to improve the park. Trees were trimmed, dead bushes and weeds removed, the stable area repaired and renovated. With the help of the Centennial Committee and the support of the Historic Preservation Commission, we were also able to restore the ranch house to its original condition. This was just at the beginning of the recession. When our funds ran out, we continued to make improvements, but a little more slowly and on a much smaller budget. Recently, another welcome addition was added, drapes and curtains for the ranch house windows. Now, please understand that all of the furniture, appliances, and even the rugs needed to be historically accurate. So, we just couldn't go to the local curtain store and buy what we needed. And this is where our Citizen of the Month comes in. Sandy Shackelford volunteered to hand-make the curtains and drapes for nine windows throughout the house. Sandy, would you join me up here, please? Give her a round of applause. Are they showing pictures?
I love you.
Very talented, yes. Sandy's husband, Tim Shackelford, works in our Operations and Maintenance Department, and when he heard the city was trying to find someone to create those window coverings, he told his wife about it, and she volunteered immediately to do the work. Sandy used the consultant recommendations on materials to a great extent, but had to improvise when those recommended materials were no longer available. Imagine that. She spent hours researching materials, patterns, drawing on her childhood experiences, and, of course, hours of measuring and sewing. In between countless trips back and forth to the ranch house, she was assisted by Tom Zwick, a senior carpenter who also works in our Operations and Maintenance Department, who fabricated the custom hardware and mounting system for the curtains. That's pretty cool. The mounting systems were designed to be visually unobtrusive and match the existing historic hardware as closely as possible. And I see everybody, does anybody see the pictures? I haven't seen the pictures. Okay, they look great. Awesome. This park has such great significance for Southern Nevada. I am proud that the city of Las Vegas is working to preserve it so we can share it with our children and future generations, the rich heritage that we here in Las Vegas share. Sandy is just one of many volunteers who have assisted us in upgrading and maintaining our jewel in the desert. I am personally grateful to her as she shares my love for Tulie Springs and has committed so much time and effort to make it a better place for all of us to visit. Thank you so much, Sandy, for all you do.
Thank you, Councilman Ross, the mayor, Councilman and Councilwoman. Councilman Ross, you've held many events at our Ward 6, and at the beginning of every event, people are rushing around trying to get things set up, but it's not until you show up with that big smile and those cowboy boots that we feel John Wayne has arrived and everything's going to be okay. Your presence gives us a sense of security, comfort, and well-being. Thank you for being my Councilman.
Thank you, Sandy.
I am so honored and blessed to join the other citizens of the month who have given their time and dedication to do the things that they're passionate about. They make a difference not only to the city, but to the lives of other people. I am so grateful that the city has decided to preserve this historical landmark. So many times in our lives, we don't preserve the things in history that are such a part of our lives. When I first saw Tulie Springs Ranch House, it was a crumbling shell of the house. The roof was caving in, and there was a lot of work needed to be done. My husband, Tim Shackelford, and the city staff restored the ranch house. Their unbelievable craftsmanship was breathtaking. I was so amazed by their work, I wanted to be part of restoring the history. I would like to thank Courtney Mooney. Come up here, Courtney.
Come on up here, Courtney. Give Courtney a round of applause.
Yes. Courtney is our Historic Preservation Officer, and I want to thank her for trusting me with her precious historical restoration. She goes to great pains to make sure every detail is as authentic as possible. Trust me, I know. So, after many fabric samples and 102 yards of fabric and lining later, we had period curtains. I must say, it's not the fabric of choice today, but it was for the 1940s. Courtney Mooney, you nailed it. Once the curtains were finished and hung, I took a final walk through the house. It was the kitchen that struck me the most, seeing the feed sack curtains with the red trim rickrack hanging over the sink, the time it took to restore an antique stove, the detail of the period tile, and the style of the refrigerator. You could almost smell breakfast cooking and conversations about the chores that needed to be done on the ranch that day. Thank you for allowing me to contribute to the history of Las Vegas.
This is for you.
Thank you.
And, take a look at this. Sandy, this sign is going to be on Main Street for the entire month, recognizing you as Citizen of the Month, and we ask all the citizens of our city to do the same. Let's go over here and get a picture taken.
Thank you.
Courtney, thank you.
You know, I can take advantage of having this free mic because I remember in 1964 when we came to Las Vegas, and it won't show while I keep talking. I said to Oscar, "I'm not moving to Las Vegas unless you buy me a horse." And so, as soon as... Not a Porsche. A porch? No, Porsche. So, anyway, fast forward, we'd saved enough money and I got a horse. And I said to him, "Guess where we're going? We're going to Tulie Springs to ride on the mesas, and you're going horseback riding." So, can you imagine somebody who hates animals and hates horses, my husband, riding on a pinto? They had horses for rent there. Do they still?
Soon.
Soon coming back.
Next month.
Beautiful area. And so, you've helped preserve this wonderful ranch house. It's awesome.
I love it.
Just awesome. And Courtney, thank you, because it's always best to do the best. Thank you, congratulations.
Thank you.
And folks, if you haven't had a chance to go out to Tulie Springs, please go. Take your families. It's a wonderful, wonderful jewel that we have here in the city of Las Vegas. It's the city's largest park, and take your fishing pole too, because there's great fishing going on.
And is there food out there?
There's no food out there. Bring a picnic, yet. Bring a picnic.
Great. Thank you so much. That's so exciting. For our next item, I have the pleasure of recognizing an outstanding team of city employees. The Action Team Award recognizes a team of employees who strive to be superheroes in the workplace, meeting our values of action, which you know stance or achievement, creativity, teamwork, integrity, and ownership now. So, I want to invite our Parking Services Manager, or our Parking Czar... Where are you Parking Czar? Brandy Stanley to join us at the podium for this recognition. Here you are. The February 2014 Action Team is the Parking Meter Purchase and Installation Team. This group of employees was responsible for the update and installation of 233 new technologically advanced parking meters. These meters have made parking in our downtown much more efficient and convenient because customers now may use debit or credit cards and not just have to fump around and find coins. Since the new meters cover multiple spaces, collections and maintenance, obviously, has been simplified as well. This team completed the purchase and installation of the meters, oh my goodness, in just four months. Cracking of the whip. They also measured and striped over 1,100 spaces, installed 651 signs, and removed 628 unneeded meter posters that were cluttering our sidewalks. Boy, you work hard. So, therefore, I'd like to invite the team members up as I call their names, so will you please join us? Jerry Leaf, Matthew Lancaster, Christopher Burns, Jeannie Edwards, Joe Carrato, Michael Austin, Roberto Alvia, Brian Axelrod, Christopher Lloyd, Ivan Lopez, Whit Thompson, Rick Waldra, Brandon Wells, Carl Villablanca, Calvin Roush, Jim Didway, and Horace Melanox. So, please, everyone, give this great team and all these members a big round of applause. Awesome. And I can remember when Councilman Coffin and I went out to that first meter that was put there, fumbling around trying to figure out how to put in the card and the coins, but believe me, it is easy. And we thank you all for your hard work on a project that has helped to make our downtown much more inviting and much more friendly, and absolutely for all our tourists and our residents, a better place to be. So, Brandy, I know you'd like to say a few words about your great team. They are fabulous. Brandy, and your best.
Thank you. I would just like to say thank you to everybody that's standing up here because, honestly, I didn't have very much to do with the installation and the placement and all of the work that went through. Once we got the meters purchased, the contract signed, the project was pretty much turned over to this group of employees. And I found that every time I got involved, I screwed things up, so I just backed off. That says a lot about our city employees, that they have the dedication and the ownership to be able to take control of a major project and do it without any type of, you know, micromanagement or really very much management at all. So, thank you all very much. You guys are the ones that make things happen in this city, and, you know, you demonstrated that with this project like no other city employees I've ever seen. So, thank you.
I was trying to balance the line because we want a picture. How about, one, two, three, four, come on over to this end so we can get a picture? Or more? All right, so come in close. And I'm not contagious. I keep running, but I'm not contagious. Come in close, please. Come in real tight. Same, the same disease. We all have it. It's awful. Okay, so, who is... Okay, everybody right there? Thank you. Thank you all so much. We're so proud of you and so grateful. And Brandy, beautiful job. Just great. Okay, for our next item, I would like to invite Andy Bichelle from the Animal Foundation and Karen Lane from Heaven Can Wait to join us at the podium. As you know, devoted wonderful folk, February's National Pet Spay and Neuter Month, and we are making great strides in Las Vegas in controlling our pet population. In November 2009, this city council enacted a mandatory spay and neuter ordinance for dogs and cats. And believe it or not, from 2007 to 2009, before that ordinance, only 28% of the animals that the city animal control impounded were spayed or neutered. Since that time, the number has now increased almost to 46%. Every animal that is spayed or neutered means fewer animals that have to be euthanized at the Animal Foundation. So, we're all working toward a goal of not having to euthanize animals in our city, but we do that because we have to end pet overpopulation. That's something that is our responsibility, all of us as citizens who have, who do have pets. So, I want to thank Andy and Karen for the work that they do to get the word out about spay and neuter. Andy, and Karen, I have a proclamation I want to present to you that makes February Spay and Neuter Awareness Month in the city of Las Vegas, and we'd love to hear from you both, but I'm going to start, if I may, with Andy because he's taller.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The Animal Foundation began as a low-cost spay and neuter clinic in 1978 and has been adding welfare services ever since. Last year, we spayed over 13,600 animals. We acknowledge our community partners with the city of Las Vegas, Las Vegas Valley Humane, Heaven Can Wait, and C5, in our combined efforts to reduce the number of animals being received at this shelter through spay and neuter services. In fact, adoption of spay and neuter ordinances in 2009, led by the city of Las Vegas, we have experienced this steady decrease that the mayor spoke about. In 2010, our intakes were over 51,000 animals at the shelter every year. That's an average of 136 new animals coming into the shelter every single day. In 2013, we just finished our annual report. We've reduced that to 40,348. It's a 21% reduction over a four-year period since that spay and neuter ordinance went into place. While we are trending in the right direction, we still have a long way to go. We will continue our efforts with our community partners to eliminate the tragedy of pet overpopulation through spay and neuter services. Thank you.
And congratulations. It's pretty much what we've said, this proclamation, but Karen, I know you'd like to address our city too.
Thank you very much. I just want to echo Andy's comments that we're very thankful for the, to the mayor and the council members in terms of all the efforts that have been done with the spay and neuter ordinance and also the feral cat ordinance and the reductions that we've been able to make. This has been a very collaborative effort, and by the way, I would say that I'm with the Las Vegas Valley Humane Society, but I'll certainly let Harold Vosko, who is with Heaven Can Wait and is one of our partners along with C5 and Keith Williams, and also the Animal Foundation, and working to try to deal with this animal overpopulation. Spay and neuter is critical to that issue. Everyone can get involved because they can spay and neuter their own animals, and that makes a big difference. I would invite all of the, I would invite the mayor and the council members to attend our 132nd Feral Cat Spay Clinic that will take place at Heaven Can Wait at 546 Northeastern this Sunday, where we will be spaying between 100 to 300 feral cats. And that's all part of our effort, and that's part of the TNR program, to reduce the number of animals because we've got, this is a critical time for us right now, and that's why February is Spay and Neuter Month. We're seeing a lot of the animals that we're spaying and neutering in heat, and we know that we're going to have a lot of pregnant animals soon. We're already starting to see puppies and some kittens. So, this is a critical time to get the word out about spay and neuter, and we thank, again, we thank the city council for this proclamation.
Thank you very much. Thank you. And Andy, I'm going to ask, please, if you would tell all of us who are residents here, if you have a wild animal or a loose animal in your yard, what do you do and where do you call?
You call, depending on what district you're in, but if you're in the city of Las Vegas, call Animal Control first and then head on down to the Animal Foundation because they're coming to us one way or the other. So, 655 North Mojave. You can actually, if you've lost a pet, the best way to start is online, animalfoundation.com. You can look for your lost animal. As soon as Animal Control picks up an animal, it is automatically input into the system, which is automatically loaded to the, to our website. So, even before the animal gets to our shelter, it is actually up online, posted as a lost animal. It won't have a photograph until it actually comes into the shelter, but from there, and you have 72 hours to reclaim that animal, so you do need to act quickly.
And, in your yard, you don't have any way of catching it except for lasso or something? What do you do?
The wild ones, in particular cats, which are a big problem, is trapping, and actually, the best resource there is to actually go through C5. It is a community coalition of C5, Heaven Can Wait, ourselves, and Las Vegas Valley Humane to create a feral cat trap-neuter-release program, so...
Provide the traps.
Correct. Yeah, in fact, Councilman Coffin actually just went through the process, so he can...
We have an expert here. Tell us.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I've been doing this for, well, Mary and I have been doing this for a number of years, and so we've probably, TNR used that term, Karen, it's trap-neuter-return. We've done that. That essentially means fix them and put them back out in the wild or wherever they are, so that they can be, again, feral cats, but not reproduce. So, you just get a trap. I mean, these little traps are about three feet long and 12 inches square, and you put food in there, and you simply wait for them to do the normal thing, which is go in and get it. Some of them are smarter than others. It took us three years to catch a female. We finally got in December. She had had three litters in that period of time, and so now we've got all of them fixed, and hopefully that would stop the size of that. But people, you know, they go near our house and they see all these, what would be looking like miniature Jersey cows, because for some reason, they're all black and white. So, it's really kind of a hoot to watch them. But anyway, they're not a bother to the neighborhood because they cannot reproduce, and we feed them. So, that takes them off the back porch of most houses.
Does Animal Control lend loan...
No, we get those traps come from C5 and Heaven Can Wait. You go pick them up, they give you a little instruction, or call me, you know, one of the two.
Oh, yes. What's your phone number?
299-4623 at our office for further instruction on what kind of food works best.
I love it. It is true. I mean, we have, we purchased many years ago one of those traps, and unfortunately, I mean, I hate to see them taken away, but we've also had herons picked up by Animal Control. We've had an eagle picked up by Animal Control. So, really, our animal control and these services are simply wonderful, so we appreciate it. But everybody, catch those animals and get them spayed and neutered. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Okay, we're going to move on. Thank you. Thank you. Congratulations. Do we have something? Yes. Okay. For our next item, we have Councilman Beers going to recognize the heroic actions of a young man in our community. Wonderful.
Thank you, Your Honor. I think I'll just read the proclamation because it tells the story quite well. Whereas Max Cooper, Max, would you come stand up here with me? Is a 10-year-old fifth-grade student at OK Adcock Elementary School, where he is an excellent student. He is a tennis player and a golf player, and believe it or not, was a big Seattle Seahawks fan before last weekend. Whereas his mother, Amy Cooper, is a second-grade teacher at OK Adcock Elementary School. She was diagnosed with breast cancer four years ago, but deemed cancer-free after completing Her diagnosis and subsequent treatment has created an ongoing concern for her health, however, and on November 14th, 2013, Amy Cooper fell, hitting her head and passing out. And whereas Max heard his mother and found her incoherent on the floor, he remained calm, called his aunt, Jackie Glass, who we all know. His aunt told him that she'd be right over, and they hung up the phone. And then, while on the way, his aunt called Max and told him to call 911 if things got worse. Max told his aunt that he had already called 911. And I think we have the recording, do we not? So, whereas the recording obtained from the 911 communication center demonstrates Max very calmly followed what he was taught and also demonstrated his bravery, certainly his heroic conduct played a part in his mother's subsequent good health. And could we hear the 911 call?
911, Govea 6546.
Hi, my mom can't get up and she's hurt.
Fire, medical, don't hang up.
She can't get up still.
Fire, medical. I have a child on the phone reporting a mom that won't wake up or get up.
It's edited.
Okay. Is that the right address?
Yes.
Okay.
It's 411-5.
Phone number... Okay, how old is your mother?
50.
50?
Yes.
Okay. Is she breathing, do you know?
Who's in charge of editing the tape?
She looks, she looks just look okay.
Okay, so she's unconscious, but she is breathing, is that right?
She's unconscious and moving.
Okay, when you shake her, will she wake up or no?
Yes, but, yes.
Okay, is she a diabetic?
No.
No? Okay. Do you know why she's not really waking up?
No, it's, yeah.
How old are you?
10.
10, okay. Is her breathing normal or no?
It's normal.
Okay. All right, I'm going to ask you, can you see her chest going up and down? Can you see her breathing?
Yes.
Okay, I want you to tell me, every time she takes a breath, so every time you see her chest go up and down, I want you to say "now," okay? So, let me know when you're ready.
Okay.
Okay. Is that her... Is that her talking?
Yeah.
So she's talking?
Yeah. She just can't really get up and stand away.
Okay. All right. So she's awakened. She's not unconscious.
Right, but she...
Okay. Ask her what's wrong.
What's wrong? She doesn't know and...
Therefore, we, the mayor and city council of the city of Las Vegas, proudly proclaim today Max Cooper Day. A few words, Max?
I want to thank Councilman Beers and the mayor of City Council for this honor. I also want to thank the dispatcher on the phone who helped me when I called 911 and the paramedics who came to help my mom. My mom taught me what to do in case of an emergency, and because of that, I was able to get my mom the help that she needed. The most important lesson: learn to always listen to your mom.
Judge Glass, would you like to say a few words? Congratulations, Max.
I really thought that Max, who is my nephew, because Amy is my sister, deserved this recognition because when I got that phone call at 5:00 in the morning that something had happened to Amy, I just didn't even think. I said, "I'm on my way." And along the way is when I called back, like the councilman said, and said, "If things go worse, get worse, call 911." And when he told me he already did, I was like, "Wow." He was really thinking on his feet to make that phone call and got the paramedics there sooner. And as you know, mayor, when people have medical episodes hit their heads and nobody has an idea of what's going on, it can be very frightening, and you can imagine what it was like for Max to be sitting there with his mom. And the good news for everybody is it all turned out well, and Amy is healthy, and we're very happy that everything worked out. And we're so proud of Max, and thank you so very much for honoring him today.
Congratulations, Max. Did we give him one of our programs?
We've got a signed program for him. Congratulations and way to be thinking on your feet, Max.
Wonderful.
You're a great example for all the kids.
Will have mom come up, too?
Yeah, mom?
Thank you. Wonderful. Congratulations, Max. It's your day. Everywhere in Las Vegas, it's your day. And for our final item, Councilman Anthony is going to recognize Chinese New Year and the Year of the Horse. Okay, should we move this away?
Okay. We're going to kick off Chinese New Year with the Las Vegas Lohan School of Shaolin, the lion dance. Go ahead. Okay. There you go. All right. Thank you. All right. Today gives me a great pleasure to recognize the Third Annual Chinese New Year in the Desert Festival and two of its ambassadors. At this point, I'd like to call up to the podium Janie Lau of Golden Catalyst, who has been instrumental in organizing the festival for the past three years. Janie, would you mind coming up here? Give her a nice round of applause. The city of Las Vegas, Golden Catalyst, the Las Vegas Convention and Visitors Authority, and the Fremont Street Experience have come together to celebrate the Year of the Horse in downtown Las Vegas this weekend, February 7th through the 9th. We're inviting you to ring in the Chinese New Year with this three-day festival taking place in downtown Las Vegas because Chinese New Year is the most important tradition of the Chinese holidays. Mayor Goodman and myself will kick off the festivities during the opening ceremonies Friday evening, which will feature the Desert Winds, a premier contemporary wind ensemble of more than 50 professional woodwind, brass, and percussionists. There will also be live, authentic dragon dance by the Las Vegas Lohan School of Shaolin, and throughout the weekend, guests will also experience live international cultural performances, taste authentic dishes from around the world, and in the International Vendor Village, and enjoy live concerts. This is the good part. The Las Vegas Zumba Crew will attempt to make history by breaking the Guinness World Book of Record for the largest zumba class in downtown Las Vegas. I expect the entire city council will be out there doing some zumbing, okay? There will be stunning parade floats in the McDonald's Las Vegas Spring Festival Parade, and along with students from the Clark County School District, guests are invited to create their own lantern to display on Fremont Street Experience to commemorate the Lunar Lantern Festival. The city of Las Vegas is very pleased to usher in the Year of the Horse with an assortment of cultural amenities, attractions, and celebrations, and our mission is to host the largest Chinese New Year in the entire United States. At this time, I'd like to ask Janie from Golden Catalyst to add anything additional.
Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you, mayor. Pro-Ten. Good morning, mayor and city councilmen, city councilwoman. She was here earlier. I actually brought a gift for you, too. I know you two are happily married, so by all means, this is not a proposal. Yeah, right? This is a Unity pin.
Wow, how nice.
And just want you to know that the pin is a symbol of appreciation of your commitment to the CNY in the desert. At the core, CNY in the desert is about unifying our AAPI community, the Greater Las Vegas community, and the international community. This pin is a symbol of your commitment to unity, and on behalf of the CNY in the desert ambassadors in the community, we want to thank you both for that. Now, we have made 50 of these pins, and those are all being worn by our cultural ambassadors, and this event takes a village to put on. And I want to take this time to acknowledge some of those that are present here today. So if you can bear with me, I'm going to just call their names. If you can just stand up. Dr. Teddy Sim, Jackie Panetta, Ji Wong, and Virgil Sim. They're leading us with our Zumba, Sumathon on Saturday, so thank you so much. Thank you. Selvi Edelman there as well, too. Thank you, beautiful. And of course, our Ms. Christina Brooks from the CCSD. So we're going to have all the wonderful lanterns being displayed on the Third Street stage for you all. And I'll tell you, this woman is amazing because she has gotten all the high school bands, she has to have prime six kids out there on Sunday for our parade as well. So thank you so much. And Betty Atkins and Carol, Dr. Carol Suzuki and Jason Lau, my board members. I'm so sorry, I should have started off with you three. Thank you. Don't be shy. You can stand up. And then, of course, Dr. Christian Giovanni and Owen Sawyer from the Thai community with John Ziegler and White Ziegler. Thank you. Darryl Yuan from our Lions and Frank. Lions International is very a part of this celebration with us, so thank you so much. And you know what? This event doesn't happen without our greatest volunteer team with Tess Seifred and Sherri Cummings, if you're there. Irene Lee, thank you so much for all your help. And of course, our Lohan School of Shaolin, so thank you. I want to end this, and I'll pass the mic on to you all, but here's to the Year of the Horse. Gong Xi Fa Cai, Nian Nian You Yu.
Wonderful. Congratulations. Don't go away.
Good job. Okay. I'd now like to recognize two individuals who are ambassadors to the Chinese New Year in the Desert and have done a lot of work to make sure that this festival gets kicked off correctly. So first, I'd like to ask Billy Ann Sabala, who's administrator of the Lohan School of Shaolin. Would you come down here? And I'd also like to ask Owen Sawyer, editor-in-chief of the Las Vegas News Thai Newspaper. Would you come down, please? There you go. Billy Ann Sabala was born and raised in Honolulu, Hawaii. She studied Tai Chi for over 25 years, is the administrator of the Lohan School of Shaolin, and is director of an outreach program which sends senior instructors to teach Tai Chi classes in various community centers, senior centers, and athletic clubs throughout the city of Las Vegas. Billy is currently teaching Tai Chi, Chuan, and Qi Gong at the Las Vegas Athletic Club and the Lohan School of Shaolin. Billy's past experience include being the executive producer for three years with the Jerry Lewis Telethon in Honolulu, producing several TV shows with network TV stations in Hawaii, and all local Chinese line demonstrations, martial arts exhibits, and public relations promotions are all coordinated through Billy. Therefore, on behalf of the mayor and the entire city council, I would like to proclaim today in the city of Las Vegas, Ms. Billy Ann Sabala Day.
Wow. That's too good.
There you go.
Thank you very much. Thank you. And I'd like to thank Las Vegas. You know, when I first got there 20 years ago, or maybe a little bit more, I told somebody -- Las Vegas was not that big then, and I said, "You know what makes a city a city?" They said, "What?" I said, "When it has a Chinatown and a cultural center." And they came to me one day and they said, "Guess what? We have a Chinatown." So here we are. We've been here ever since. Thank you very much.
Good job. And next, I'd like to recognize Owen Sawyer, who is the editor-in-chief and founder of Las Vegas News Thai Newspaper. The Thai community is growing rapidly in Las Vegas, and Owen has been great in engaging the Thai and Laos communities. Owen has played a significant role in organizing the cultural events for the Chinese New Year in the Desert Festival, and these events have attracted more than 3,000 international visitors from various parts of the world. The Las Vegas New Thai Newspaper is coordinating and sponsoring the cultural events taking place this Saturday night, and we appreciate that they will be presenting genuine cultural costumes, Mai Tai exhibitions, Thai cultural performances at the Fremont Street Experience stage this weekend. Owen's position as editor-in-chief and founder of the Las Vegas New Thai Newspaper have earned her the respect and influential status that empowered her to unite the Thai community's participation in the Chinese New Year in the Desert event. Therefore, on behalf of the mayor and entire city council, I'd like to proclaim today in the city of Las Vegas, Ms. Owen Sawyer Day. There you go. You're welcome. Do you want to say anything?
Yeah. I just want to say thank you, and I want to invite everybody to come on Saturday at the Fremont Street to see us. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Again, it's this weekend, Friday night kicks off the festivities, and have a great day.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Come on down. 6 o'clock, Friday night, Fremont Street Experience. We look forward to seeing you all in this great celebration. What a wonderful community. Oh, wonderful. Now, we have to go that way to get his... Thank you so much. Thank you. And we will proceed right into our agenda. Thank you. Thank you. All right. Page 10, Agenda Item 10. Public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters on the agenda for action. The amount of time any single speaker is allowed may be limited. All comments made will be cross-referenced to those specific items. If anyone submitted a speaker card who wishes to speak under this portion of the agenda, please come to the podium and state your name for the record. We will set the time at 1:00. And we have Lance Frank at this point, but does not mean you cannot speak at the other portion of public comment. This was in reference to item 57. Please come forward, state your name.
My name is Anthony Harder. I just wanna say this is a beautiful day because we're celebrating a part of our culture. Remember, the United States is a country where people come from all over the world and make it a great nation that it is. So right now, it's the Chinese, you know. But anyway, I just wanna say congratulations to the, to the, to the culture, and congratulations to you, mayor, for your new tennis fiasco, whatever.
You'll see me next year. Thank you. I'm intending to open the seniors. I have guests with me, and I think we all do. So I'm gonna ask you young people, we'll start down there by Councilman Beers to lean forward and announce your name and where you go to school, please.
Denzel.
My name is Denzel, and I go to the 100 Academy of Excellence.
Thank you.
My name is Bailey's, and I go to 100 Academy of Excellence.
My name is Berisha, and I go to 100 Academy of Excellence.
Right up front.
My name is Zisela, and I go to 100 Academy of Excellence.
Wonderful.
My name is Cavante Jackson, and I attend the 100 Academy of Excellence.
My name is Naomi, and I attend 100 Academy of Excellence.
My name is Deja, and I go to 100 Academy of Excellence.
Wonderful. Well, we welcome you all, and I see more students out there, so we welcome you as well. All right, at this point, I will close Agenda Item, the public hearing. No one else wanting to come forward?
Mayor, if I could for just one moment?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I also have a guest here today, and I would just like to come up and introduce him. At the last council meeting, the council authorized the city to grant a four-month extension to negotiate with the Cordish Companies for a potential arena downtown. Since that time, we have retained outside council whose contract will be before you at the next meeting. He is with us here today. His name is Mac McCarley. I've known Mac for about 20 years. Mac is the former city attorney of Charlotte, North Carolina, and he will be joining us today at about noon to begin the first round of negotiation with Cordish. He's standing next to our city manager right now, and I would like you all to meet him.
Thank you, we welcome you, we're delighted. Thank you so much. You'll find our weather glorious this weekend, it's gonna be 70, just like Charlotte, North Carolina. Thank you. And I'd also, we have a new member of our public information staff here with us today, Erin Sebalius. So, welcome. Always smiling, always helpful, just doing a great job, running on full speed. So we will now move on to Agenda Item number 11. For possible action, any items council, staff, or applicant wishing to be, wish to be stricken table, withdrawn, or held in abeyance to a future meeting may be brought forward and acted upon at this time. Councilman Anthony?
I have one item, item number 33, report regarding the status and progress of the shared services and management consultant agreement with the city of North Las Vegas. Staff has asked this to be obeyed till February 19th, 2014, and that will be my motion.
Thank you, there's a motion, please vote and please post. Okay, we're multitasking here for these wonderful young people. We're signing, signing the agenda for them to have copies. And so, once it's up, we will... And that motion passes, of course, unanimously. We'll move on to Agenda Item number 12. For possible action to prove the final minutes by reference of the regular city council meeting of January 8th, 2014, is there a motion? Mayor Protem to have these approved.
Move for approval.
Thank you, there's a motion, please vote and please post. And that motion carries. We'll move on to Agenda Item 13. Items 13 through 30 with no exceptions, correct?
None from council.
All right, items 13 through 30 on the consent agenda are considered to be routine or recommended for approval by the departments and may be enacted in one motion. Any items council wishes to bring forward at this time? Hearing none, may I have a motion, please?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda items 13 through 30.
Okay, there's a motion, please vote and please post. And the motion carries. Move on to Agenda Item 31. We are so blessed to have a report coming from the wonderful head of our Las Vegas Visitors and Convention Authority, or Convention and Visitors Authority, I always flip them, but that keeps it interesting. Rossi Rollin-Cotter is here, president, and just so exciting all the time, everything that you do. So here we go, Mr. Rollin-Cotter.
Good morning, mayor, members of the city council. Thank you for allowing the LVCVA to give you an update on our global business district and the state of the tourism economy in Las Vegas. But before I start, I'd like to show you our new commercials. As you know, this is the 10th anniversary of the What Happens Here Stays Here campaign, which has been the most successful advertising campaign in tourism history, and so we are continuing with that. This one has a little bit of a theme called The Enabler. All of us have known one of those types of people, whether it's a relative or a friend that can get you to do things that you may not want to do. So with that, I'll show you the new spots.
You coming?
Yeah.
You coming?
Yeah.
You coming? Coming?
Yeah.
Jessica.
Danny.
Alex.
Instigators, troublemakers, enablers. There's one place you'll always appreciate it. You're unpredictable, reckless. But you never leave your friends behind. That's what we love about you. You're the interruption to our regularly scheduled program. And without you, what happens here wouldn't happen.
So you'll be seeing those spots on cable network as well as regular network television. So with that, I want to give you a little bit of a recap of 2013. We had our second largest number of visitors to the destination that last year, 39.7 million. Our inventory really stayed static during 2013, but our occupancy was at 84%, which is about 22 points ahead of the national average. We have consistently been that, had that difference between us and the national occupancy average, which is, shows the strength of our brand. Most importantly is the average daily rate. As you can see, was up 2.4%. That's good for room tax collections, but more importantly, it's, it's good for the industry itself as the average daily rate continues to increase as we come out of this recessionary period. Conventions, we had over 5 million attendees to conventions this year, so we broke the 5 million mark, first time in the last couple of years, and so we had a very strong 2013 calendar, and our 2014 calendar is also very strong. And then gaming revenue at 9.7 billion, which was up 2.9%. All very good indicators. And the last is the airport numbers at 0.5%. About 47% of our visitors come here by air, and so that's very critical to us. Our forecast for 2014, we're forecasting 40 million visitors, and we will have an excess of $45 billion as an economic impact. I do want to note that our industry really has led the community of Southern Nevada, all the cities, out of this recession since November of 2009, which was the low point of the recession. We've added 19,000 jobs to the tourism industry, and so we continue to see that increase as we have more visitation. We will continue to have increases in the number of jobs created. Value of tourism, again, for all of Southern Nevada, it's our number one economic driver. I mentioned the number of jobs, at 47% of the workforce of the valley is involved directly or indirectly in the tourism, gaming, hotel industry. And so, as we stay strong, the economy will stay strong, and we need to make sure that we protect that, and that's part of one of the reasons why we are coming to you today to, to begin a dialogue and a conversation over this 2014 year as to what the LVCVA is doing and how we need to involve all of the community with that. Major tax collections, as you can see, 37% of all the tax collections for the state come out of the, out of Clark County area, $2.5 billion. And so, it's very important for the, the economy of the state also. As we go to room tax distribution, again, we are funded by room tax at the LVCVA. 80% of what we receive comes through room tax. The other 20% of our budget is generated by the rental of our facilities. But everybody in the valley benefits from the room tax, and this is a breakdown of the 532 million that will be projected for 2014 fiscal year. You can see all the different jurisdictions who receive that. It's a school district for teacher salaries, as well as for the construction renovation of schools, transportation, the cities and the counties benefit, parks and recreation. So this, over the years since 1959, has created a better way of life, better way of living for all of us here. And so, we are truly partners with what happens with the visitors because of the strength of this. At the LVCVA, we keep about a third, about 32% of that revenue comes to us, and again, we use that for our advertising marketing campaigns, as well as to maintain and operate and make sure that our convention delegates have a great experience. And so, that, I just wanted to show that to you, and then kind of drilling down as to the economic impact for the city of Las Vegas, it was up about 2.2% in fiscal year 2013 at $9.35 million. So again, that comes directly to the city for your budgetary purposes. So the initiatives that we have, if you look at the three growth markets for Las Vegas of the future, it really is in three areas: special events, international visitation and trade shows and conventions. And on the special event side, just some of the events that are coming up, the NASCAR weekend, which will be here in March, the Mint 400, Big League Weekend, which will be at Cashman, I encourage everybody to come to those games, they're in the second week, weekend of March. The basketball tournaments, we have more basketball games played in Las Vegas during March Madness than any other city in the country. We are really the heart of basketball, college basketball, when all these tournaments are held in our, in our community besides the Mountain West and the, and the Pac-12, all of those teams will be playing here. Then Vegas Uncork, which is a culinary event that will happen in May over Mother's Day. And then, as you all know, we just recently, with Las Vegas Events, re-signed the National Finals Rodeo, so we will have them here till 2025. A very, very important event for all of us because it does drive December. I don't know how many of you remember the days when we used to have very little business from Thanksgiving Day to Christmas, and so this really allowed us to bring more people in, and the PRCA, the rodeo people are very, very happy that we'll be coming back to us. And so, that's a very positive for all of us who live here. So again, going into international visitation, it was, it was kind of, you know, symbolic that you had the, the recognition of Chinese New Year's because we truly are an international city, and we need to act like an international city. We have international visitation, and this is probably the biggest growth factor for all of us. Currently, 17% of all the visitation to Las Vegas is international, but if you break that down, three countries, the United Kingdom, Mexico, and Canada represent 70% of all that international visitation. And so, we have so much untapped demand that's out in the marketplace that we need to go out and get that. And so, the President of the United States and his initiative two years ago to create the Brand USA, which is the marketing component, the brands and markets the U.S., the goal is 100 million visitors internationally within the next eight years, and so we need to get our share of that. And so, I've tasked our staff, working with the hotel properties, to take that market share in the next 10 years from 17% to 30%. We're doing that in a combination of ways. First of all, looking at international conventions that can come here, working with our offices that we have worldwide, and then the partnership that we have with McCarran Airport to try to bring more international lift into the destination. That's very critical, the more international non-stop flights, one-stop flights that we can get here, we can expand that. Just as an example, Copa Air, they started with, with four flights a week, they're now flying twice a day out of Panama City, but that connects into all of Latin Central, South America. And so, that is the growth area for the future of the destination by and large. And then the last part is the trade show, conventions, and meeting side. Again, this is a very critical part. The conventions and trade shows meet, most of them midweek, which is good for occupancy and good for the average daily rate. We had over 22,000 of these conventions and meetings in Las Vegas last year. As I tell people, the Fortune 1,000 companies are in Las Vegas every single year, conducting business, taking care of commerce. That's something that is very significant, and business does get done in Las Vegas. And so, as we go out with that message, whether it's on an economic development side or on the side of bringing trade, trade shows and corporate meetings, we need to stress that most importantly. Over 5 million delegates, as I indicated to you, the impact of just this segment is $6.7 billion into our economy. And so, we have to make sure that we keep this very, very strong as we go forward, and that message of doing business. When Consumer Electronics was here, the Secretary of Commerce came in to see two things. One, how business is conducted at a trade show in Las Vegas, and how the buying and selling and the interface of a trade show such as Consumer Electronics, especially in the industry of electronics, works for America. And so, the recognition of us as a destination by having her here was very, very significant. And then the Consumer Electronics Show itself, they had a record-breaking January show this, this past January. They had more than 2 million square feet of space that was leased, 160,000 delegates, and they had 150 different international countries represented. And so, about 32% of their visitation was international, and we're seeing that consistently along the way, and so that international component is, again, part of our strategy. But, you know, our competition is not standing still, and that's the reason for the, for the conversation. You know, when we started to talk about the, the Global Business District, it was really just to remodel and renovate the convention center, but as we came out of the recession, we needed to do more than that. We need to create the leading convention district, convention center in the world. We need to change the dynamics of what a convention facility is and what a convention area is, and that's the, the goal of, of the, of the Global Business District, is to get there. But the competition really is recognizing that. Mayor Daley, I mean, I'm sorry, Mayor, not Mayor Daley, the mayor of Chicago, man, he has already said that he wants to take business away from Las Vegas. He's already called us out. And so, they have a $1.2 billion project going on right now. And so they have a $1.2 billion project going on right now, which includes an event center and includes more exhibit space, more meeting space. They're building a hotel there. They've targeted us. You look at Orange County, one of the areas that was looking at trying to go after the National Finals Rodeo. At their convention facility, they've got about 500 acres of land that's available for future expansion. They have almost, they have more square footage than we have gross right now, and so major competitor for us. Moscone in San Francisco, they're going to add another 400,000 square feet to their facility. And then when you go to San Diego, they have a half a billion dollar project that's going to go forward to make them more competitive. So that's part of what we are dealing with. And so we have to make sure that we keep the convention center vibrant and that area vibrant. I indicate to people that this is the most important project that the convention center and the destination has done since 1959, when we built the original convention center. And so this is a community effort. That's the message that we want to deliver everybody. This is a community effort that all of us need to get involved with. The cities, the county, the, the private industry, the hotel industry, because we have to make sure that we maintain the job structure, we maintain our position as number one. But you know, we could do nothing, and this has never been a city or a place where people say that. We're a can-do community, but what would happen if we just said, okay, let's keep the status quo, let's put some pain on the convention center, let's just make sure we, we make it functional and not do this project that we're talking about? So we have a little video to, to show you that.
Let's imagine what things would be like without our tourism industry. Measurable in real terms, its effects would ripple through our communities. Without these visitors and the business they generate, local revenue would drop significantly. This drop in revenue would impact Southern Nevada's operating budgets. And without the revenues to pay workers, hundreds of thousands of jobs and incomes would be gone. Without room tax dollars, school funding would shrink, which means schools would not be built. Older roads couldn't be repaired, and new roads wouldn't even be built. Community services would have to be cut. Companies and businesses and the jobs they create would disappear, further hurting our economy. The struggle to make ends meet and pay obligations would hit many Southern Nevada families hard. While sales and property taxes steadily decline, but it doesn't have to be this way. Because this is Las Vegas. And like before, the next group of pioneers have a vision to transform this great city once again. And each of us can play a part in strengthening the future of Las Vegas as we redefine this destination and chart a new course, a pathway that includes reinventing our convention center. This new Global Business District will turn Las Vegas into an international marketplace of business, technology and advancement, cementing our place as a global gateway city and put us far ahead of the competition once again. This is our time and our turn to move forward. We can keep this improbable city achieving its improbable success. Let the next Vegas visionaries be us.
So there's four parts to the Global Business District. First of all, it's the continuation of the rebranding of the destination as a place to do business, and we will continue to do that both with our facilities, with the hotel facilities, as well as how we do our marketing and advertising. The second is the World Trade Center, which is a component of the Global Business District. We are a member of that organization in conjunction with Consumer Electronics. We are the only convention center in the United States that is a member of that. There are about 350 World Trade Centers throughout the globe. We work together with them. During Consumer Electronics, we signed an MOU with Mexico City and their World Trade Center. We'll continue to do that. We also are looking to them to give us additional sales leads. We share information, and so it really truly puts us on that global scale with all the other international destinations throughout the world. The second part is, or the third part is the, the transportation hub. We do have a transportation subcommittee as part of the Global Business District program. That was part of my initiative as the, the former chair of the United States Travel Association. It was to talk about the infrastructure of America. We had a conference in Washington DC in November called CAT, which is Connecting America Through Travel. We understand that our industry is not the funding source for that, but we believe that, that our job is to move people from point A to point B, and we need to readdress the infrastructure of transportation of America. We need to make sure that we can connect people. It's not one mode of transportation. The United States used to be ranked number one in transportation throughout the world. We're now number 16, 18 or 20, depending on what reports you look at. But all the way from ports to airports to roads to highways, we need to have an integrated intermodal approach. International visitors, when they come to a city, they expect that. They expect some type of, of high-speed rail out of their airports to go to other places. They look for transportation, public transportation. And as we get more international visitors here, we need to address that. All you have to do is go to Europe. Euro, Euro Rail had over 11 million passengers who went from Brussels to Paris to London. Not one person came to Las Vegas last year by rail from Southern California. We don't have an interstate highway system from Phoenix to Las Vegas. And so that's one initiative that we will take on, on the, the national level and be the advocates for that in US travel is doing that. An interesting side note is that for every billion dollars of construction for travel infrastructure, it creates 30,000 jobs. So that is a great way to continue to move our economy. Taking it locally though, is we need to be able to move our visitors and our, and our employees from point A to point B. We have on a weekend about 350,000 people in the Las Vegas area that want to go to a show, that need to get to the airport, that need to get to the convention center, need to come downtown to enjoy their experience. We need to make that seamless, we need to make that easy. And again, it's not just one mode of transportation, it needs to be multiple modes of transportation. And so all of us together need to come up with a systems approach to this. It can't be just one, one organization or one entity. And so that is the direction that we're taking with this. We've had a lot of success with our committee so far. We've had some short-term wins on, on working with the Taxi Cab Authority with, with some of the hotels, looking at how we can have better ingress egress at the airport, talking with the RTC. And so that is moving forward, but that is going to involve the entire community to make sure that that happens, that transportation part. And so if you look at all of that, that's really what we need to do with this, with this program. My ask today is that to allow us to, to reach out to the community, be a part of what we're doing. I'm asking for the entire community to be involved with this. I did this at preview, because it's not just the LVCVA, it's not just the resort industry, it's our, it's all the people who live in the valley, everybody, all, every one of us. We are the advocates of this. And so from time to time, I will come out and come down to the city and give you an update. I'm working with, with the mayor who, who is on, on the board, as well as Councilman Ross, who's on the board, and we are working together. But I just wanted to give you that update, and you will see us from time to time. So with that, if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer those.
Thank you, Mr. Rollin Carter. I know that this is a salvation of the future of our state because gaming is everywhere, as we all know, which used to be the rock of our community down here for certain. And so tourism and convention business, and knowing that the name Las Vegas is a brand around the world, they come in to our council from around the world, and every time, and I know I'm speaking for my colleagues, is to encourage them to reach out and try and connect with direct flights to these different visitors that are coming in from other countries to us. And so it's a very, very exciting time, and I'm opening up for questions, comments, and then I have one last question I'd like to ask you. So Councilman Ross.
Thank you, Mayor. Through you, with your permission, Mr. Rollin Carter, great presentation. It's important, and you've heard me say this at our board meetings before, we don't get this information out to the masses enough, well enough. I would love one day, through the mayor to Mr. Riggelman, that we actually have some televised board meetings, so the people of this city understands the importance of the convention and trade industry in Las Vegas. Now those of us that are in the trenches, or actually on the floor, putting the, putting the shows in or tearing them out, or, or the vendors and the small businesses associated with, with this great work we do, it is tremendous to our economic engine, tremendous. With almost 40 million people, and that was our goal last year, 40 million, and we're going to hit it this next year.
Yes, we are.
40 million people coming to Las Vegas, 22,000-plus trade shows in and out of town. I mean, the effect it has on, on just anybody, and, and the hotel and casino worker may not get it because they're trying to pay their bills, they're trying to pick their kids up, trying to get them to, to ballet practice, and, and they forget the importance of what the convention and trade industry does for Las Vegas. And, and you mentioned, who was it, the Secretary?
Of Commerce.
Of Commerce. And I think his comment to you one day was, wow, you're actually conducting business in Las Vegas?
Right.
And that's true. We conduct business in Las Vegas. This is a great place for your convention to come and do business. Oh, and by the way, go eat and see some great shows at the same time. I want to make a comment about the Global Business District, Mayor and council members. I was approached, I've actually been approached a few times, you know, why on earth is the Convention and Visitor Authority making this massive investment in this Global Business District? What's the purpose? I mean, we already have the trade show industry cornered, and you, you gave it in your presentation. There is a target on our backs. Everyone wants to be Las Vegas. Everyone wants our business. And if we don't make this investment, and if we aren't the cutting edge providing the best level of service, whether it's transportation, or whether it's show service, or whether it's dinner at a fancy restaurant, we are not living up to our full potential. This is Las Vegas, and everybody wants to come to Las Vegas. Mr. Rollin Carter, I'm grateful, Mayor, that you and I are part of this, and, and we as a council, and we as a community. But the more we can get this great presentation, the information in this presentation out to the people of this city, the better. And I don't know how else we do that unless we do it through our communication vehicles that we have here at the city of Las Vegas and at Clark County. But I think it's very important that, that, that this information gets in people's living rooms. It's very important for our economy. Thank you, Mayor.
And Councilman, we are starting an initiative with the LVCVA in conjunction with the hotel industry to do just that. Now is the time to tell the story about why this is so important. And so we'll be working with, with the city, with this program, and also the other cities in the valley and the county to do that, to make sure everybody understands the importance of why we're doing our program, but more importantly, the value of a tourist, the value of a convention delegate.
Thank you. And Councilman Barlow?
Thank you. Great presentation.
Thank you.
I've had, I've had not had an opportunity to interact with all that you all, all are doing each and every day, but the snapshot of what's taking place shows me that you all are very busy in promoting and making sure that Las Vegas remains in that number one spot. And, and the words of Councilman Ross, I enjoy having the target on our back because it keeps us on our feet, it keeps us moving forward, keeps all of the wonderful minds coming together as to how in fact we continue to remain in the number one spot. Having said that, you mentioned the Global Business District. If you can just wash that out a little bit more, what, explain that a little bit more in detail as far as the Global Business District, and more so how that ties into Cashman Center.
Couple things. First of all, the Global Business District is the recognition of, and that's the, that's the name that we have for the project, recognition of Las Vegas as not only as a domestic destination, but international destination. The business part of it is to encourage convention groups to come here, trade shows to come here, both domestically as well as internationally. We have been number one for the trade show 250, 250, the largest trade shows in North America for the last 19 years, and we want to maintain that position. And so that's the purpose of it. The other part is really more the business community. The World Trade Center facility will, first of all, house our staff that will be in there. We anticipate that some of our conventions, their, their annual conventions will have offices in that facility. But more importantly, we're looking for organizations, companies in the United States as well as internationally to use that as maybe an office facility or headquarters or corporate office in the United States. And so that's the purpose of that. Innovation happens every single day in the convention center in Las Vegas, at the Manalay Convention Center, at the Sands. Consumer Electronics is a perfect example of that. And we want the world to know that innovation is part of what the business community of Las Vegas is. And so how do we maximize that? So recognizing that, that is the purpose of it. And so hopefully, as we move forward, the development around us, in addition to what we're going to do, because it's a $2.5 billion project, will encourage that type of development and that kind of recognition. But, but that, that innovation is, is so much a key as we move forward. And so people need to think of us as a business destination for meetings, as well as a place to conduct their business and also maybe relocate. And so it's, it's that partnership. And for the first time, because of this international marketplace that we all deal in, for the first time, we need to make sure that, that all of us are, are working together with that. And as far as, as the Cashman facility, we're, we're just working with, with the mayor's office relative to the potentials for, for Cashman. And so we still have the MOU with, with the city relative to that. However, on the other side, we continue to move forward to maintain that, to make sure that the baseball team does well, that the facility down there has trade shows, utilization of the theater. But this is one that, that we're working closely with the city as to what is the best use of that, and where should that go into the future?
Right. And you also mentioned Chicago, Orange County, San Francisco and San Diego as far as being our competitors now, in, in no specific order. I mean, is there any other city outside of the cities that you mentioned? Or are these in a specific order in relation to how you lay them out in regards to them being competitors?
Those are the four that currently have projects in the ground or going to be expanding. And so we recognize them. But truly, it's New York, Chicago, Orlando, Atlanta, Dallas, San Francisco, Los Angeles, San Diego, Denver, all the major convention buildings in the country. But truly, because many of our convention groups, our, our corporate meetings meet in the hotels, maybe 200, 300 people as part of that corporate meeting. And so we're competing with every destination for all of that business. And so we can't, we can't lead, let any leads to stay there. We have to make sure we get everybody there. But the competition continues to increase. The one thing that the recession did, it, it allowed these communities to understand the importance of tourism and conventions to their community for job creation. Tourism and trade shows and conventions are either the number one, two or three employer in each state in, in America. And so this also, this just pointed to the value of the tourism side, because tourism started coming back in those other communities. And so they see the, the value of it, and they want to take our business from us. We're not going to let them do that. But we have to make sure that we have the right facilities, the right infrastructure to make the customer experience excellent.
Right. And one additional note, you mentioned the multiple modes of transportation. And I was recently appointed to the Super Speed Train Commission for the state of Nevada, and I'm glad that you brought that forward in relation to the transportation needs in order to have the connectivities from the bigger cities such as Phoenix, Los Angeles, Orange Counties, the San Franciscos, the Salt Lake Cities. I mean, all of those metropolitan communities having a direct tie and connection into Las Vegas is very important. From that transportation intermodal point that you brought forward, what is it that, in your opinion, in your recommendation, that you can share with this council in relation to how in fact we can, what we can do on, as far as legislators from the city of Las Vegas to assist in that process, to help connect or basically fill that void respectively in relation to some of the intermodal connection transportation needs that you mentioned?
Well, first of all, to work through our, our subcommittee, because the purpose of the subcommittee has come up with short-term, midterm, long-term solutions to the transportation network of the valley. And so there are, there'll be recommendations on streets and so on and so forth, taxi availability in certain areas, how can they move in and out of hotels more effectively? That's kind of part of that. But it's really all of us working together. Forget the hat that somebody has on, but how do we, why do we take all the current transportation infrastructure that we have and improve its efficiency? For example, one that, one of the suggestions that we have made along the way is to connect the Sands and the Manalay Bay with the monorail. Couple things happens there. You would connect over 60,000 rooms, over 7 million square feet of space, as well as increasing the capacity of that mode of transportation, moving the taxis more efficiently. How we look at our, our roadways, making sure that what happens in one part of the valley, what's the impact on the other part, so that everybody talks to everyone as they go forward before a decision is made for a project. And so looking at all the different modes, how do we more efficiently move our people around? It's also both for the visitors as well as the, the residents who go into the corridor and come downtown to go to work. And so we need to work on a systems approach. There's not just one mode of transportation. And then the other part of it is more air service, connectivity with the major markets, Los Angeles, Phoenix, whether it's by rail, by, by car, by interstate, we still need to continue to expand I-15. The I-11 corridor is extremely important to us as we go forward. So I think it's everybody working together is really the answer now in coming up with, with programs, because it's going to take 15, 20, 25 years. These are like projects to put somebody on the moon. This is not something that happens overnight. But if we don't start now, we'll be talking about this five years from now with more problems because there'll be more people in the valley, 45 million visitors at that time. And so you don't want to have, especially for a visitor to have an experience that they say, it's just too difficult. We don't want to go back to Las Vegas because of the transportation system. And so that's the purpose of the, of the subcommittee. So we're going to be asking you to, you as the city, to be part of that, and your staff to be part of that as we have done in the past.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
And I would add to that, that a lot of this connectivity has been on the books at least for 12 to 15 years already, and we're still waiting. Councilman Coffin?
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks, Rossi, for your report. I always appreciate an update from you. And one thing that concerns me, I have two questions actually, but they're kind of interconnected. The, you know, every, it seems like every time there's a recession, the governor will reach into revenue sources, because it's hard to get taxes approved by the legislature. But the hotels are collecting this tax for us. And it's supposedly painless, because after all, that 12%, 13%, whatever it is these days, you know, is a pot of money that people look at. And so, I know at least two occasions where governors have plugged in revenue from our room tax here, and then used it for state responsibilities. And it's almost impossible for a legislature to change a budget in any large sense, because once a governor has submitted it, there's a big hole if you're not going to do something. So, convention authority money has been taken for various reasons. Now, some of those were in the presentation. I mean, you saw improvements in transportation and money for education and all that, but they do take away from our ability to attract visitors. It is no question about it. I mean, having a nice place here to live and work and for them to visit is nice, but it takes away from our advertising dollars. It takes away from the, really, the many millions more we should be spending internationally, because we are in an international fight for our tourism and our gambling. And, you know, the casinos who collect this tax, they're not, they don't like to challenge governors, because they, those are the guys that make the licenses rattle on the walls when they say something. So, you know, you end up with this unwilling, but nevertheless cooperative relationship between casino owners and the governors, which means that money is taken out of marketing, and it's taken out of advertising. And that really worries me, because I sure hope it doesn't happen anymore. I mean, they, those casino owners, have to start fighting this tendency, and also, they need to enlist the general business community and the rest of the political community. Because if that keeps subtracting, we're going to keep losing ground. You could literally double the amount of money you spend on advertising in the world and in our nationals, and you could move the needle. But it literally takes that much. It takes a real change. And so, I'm worried about it, because not for my own welfare, but I think for the future of the area, since we don't dominate gambling anymore. We are a tourism destination and convention destination. And we can reach over the decision-makers in many ways at these convention organizations by reaching their customers and reaching their members, if you will, through our national advertising. And I think that we just need to pound and pound and pound, and never let up on that. And so, I'm worried about the diversion of dollars, because inevitably, it comes out of what you spend on advertising and marketing. So, you know, that's important, and I don't want it to stop. Now then, increases in the room tax also affect your average daily room rate. You talked in the presentation about it increasing. And the ADR is a good indicator of economic activity and demand for rooms. But I want to make sure that we don't get overpriced here. I do get worried about it, because you and I grew up in this town, and you knew that the rooms were free virtually, and the gambling carried everything. Well, it's not that way anymore, and everybody wants to try to make money on their rooms, too. I need to know, this is the thing, how do we stand with these other convention and visitor worldwide destinations as far as the price coming here? Because your average daily room rate might be 111, but for some groups, it's a hell of a lot more, and some weekends horribly high. And I think we're getting a reputation for being high-priced, and I want to make sure we're not getting there.
Well, if you look at, I'll just take room tax, first of all. We're about in the middle of all the other destinations as far as the room tax, the 12% and 13% down here. So, we're very competitive when it comes to that standpoint. One of the advantages that we have with 151,000 rooms is that we have a room quality presentation as well as a price point that is there for everyone. So, we have a full range of that. Supply and demand determine some of that, but we are very, very competitive. The hotels are very competitive when they put together their bids back to convention groups or corporate groups. You look at some of the, go to New York City, go to Chicago, go to San Francisco, and see what some of those rates are for what you get. The quality of the product that Las Vegas offers, no one else has that. And so, but we have to be concerned about being competitive, which we will do. So, we will continue to watch that. You have to worry about the fees and taxes and so on and so forth that could be there. But we're right in the middle of everybody. And so, we're very competitive, and we're not, that has not been a deterrent at the current time relative to booking groups. We're booking 2025 and 2026 with conventions right now. And so, the brand is very, very strong. Going back to the other part, though, is I think this is the difference in what we have done in the past as far as our expansions are concerned. This is a very significant project. It really is a defining project, I believe, over all the years I've seen this, for all of us who live here. And so, we've had conversations with the governor, we're speaking with the legislative group, talking about this project. And it's an education project. It kind of goes back to, you know, the value of the tourist, the value of the tax revenue that comes back, the value of the economy, the value of jobs. And so, that's going to be our initiative. And we're also going to have to be very creative in how we go to fund this $2.5 billion project, which will last over 10 years. That's why I'm talking about, this needs to be a partnership with everyone in the valley. The other significant thing that we built was T-3 at the airport, the $2.4 billion international terminal, which fortunately, the airport went forward with that construction, even though we were in the worst recession since the Depression. And so, they made sure that we had the facility. This is a defining time for us as a destination. And so, we need to tell our story, we need to build our case, and then move forward with what we need to do. Adding a million square feet of exhibit space is part of the project. Adding 300,000 square feet of meeting space makes us more competitive, but we're also going to change the dynamic of how a convention center operates and what that looks like. It's going to be an architectural statement, it will reflect Las Vegas, and that's where we need to be. But you're right, we need to get everybody on the same page as to what the importance and value of it is.
Thank you, Mr. Rollin-Cotter. And I would just add one more thing, knowing the cities around the country that are trying to get all this business. I hope there's a small part of the Convention and Visitors Authority that is really focused on city, county-wide safety. Because if we are not the safest community, that will put us miles ahead of everywhere else if we are positive and pull this together and make sure we maintain the standards of safety. It is so far-reaching for us, and I know you consider that, but would love to see a committee that is focused on that, especially as we move forward. One last question, I'll let you go, because I know you've got a lot of business to do. First of all, I'm sure we are all in partnership, and we are in tandem, we'll do whatever we can do, as long as you communicate it to us beyond what we're doing, and letting the world know, call Rossi, call this place, call that place, get a direct flight. What are your feelings, or what is our role in anything with the national, the RNC, the Republican National Convention? Is this a possibility? Where are we with that?
Well, you know, we've had both the Republicans as well as the Democrats over the years look at the destination. In past years, we really didn't have availability. That was a challenge because of when the convention was being held. There is a group headed up by Lieutenant Governor Krollicky that is moving forward with the bid process. We have been supportive from the standpoint of giving them information on our building, as well as directing them to the Sands as well as Mandalay, because those are the three buildings that could possibly house it. So, we are cooperating from that standpoint. They have a whole list of things that they have to put together to present to their committees as to what our destination has to offer, air service, number of rooms, convention facilities, and so forth. So, we're supportive. We're treating this as a piece of business. It's a trade show. It's a very important one. It would give tremendous amount of exposure to our destination. It would be a signature event to have, whether it's the RNC or the Democratic National Convention. And so, we're there to help and assist, and they're moving it forward. And as we need to do something beyond that, then we'll come back to the board, our LVCVA board. But we're very supportive. The hotel industry has been supportive, and so, we're just waiting for them to ask us the next question.
Thank you very much. And Councilman Mayor Protam, you had a question?
Thank you. Thanks for the report, Rossi. You know, you talk about the competition in the United States. I was recently talking to somebody who had been in Macau a couple months ago, and what he described to me going on in Macau was 100 times bigger than anything I thought was going on over there. I mean, he said it's, the gambling's crazy, they're standing in line, the shopping. What kind of, I mean, what's the impact of Macau going to have on Las Vegas? And do they actually have, I didn't ask him this, but do they actually have conventions there, or is this strictly gaming?
It really is a gaming destination. If you probably looked at Las Vegas in the early, late 60s, early 70s, 70%, 75% of our revenue was probably gaming revenue. We have had to, because of competition, evolved into a full-service international resort, convention destination. And so, we are not just gaming, and that gives us a competitive edge. We also have the best brand in travel, which is Las Vegas. But they are competition, they're continuing to grow. Of course, they, you know, they have billions of people who are right there, who are potential customers. We need to make sure that we continue to work with the State Department and Homeland Security, and our elected officials in Washington, D.C., to improve the visa system that exists in China. We were very successful two years ago, if you wanted to come to the United States, come to Las Vegas, it took you over 110 days to go through the visa process. We have that down to less than five days. So, that is important. Those are, they're developing customers for us. The one thing about Las Vegas is people want to be here. They want to come and see the number one place. I don't know how many times you see Las Vegas-style gaming, Las Vegas-style entertainment, excitement. Well, you know, competition makes us better. So, there'll be more visitors coming from that area. Another reason why we need to stay in the international marketplace with trade shows, because they'll eventually probably have convention space that will enable them to do some conventions. But the entire Pacific Rim is growing, all of those, all the major cities in the Pacific Rim. Europe, same thing. So, those are all potential customers. That's why we talked about the big growth being international. We need a visa waiver process to be added to more countries in the visa program, those that have to get one to be easy to do. And then, we also have to make sure that when international visitors come to our country, that we say, welcome, and when they leave, to say, thank you, come back again. And that has been also a challenge. So, we need to improve all of that process. But it's, you know, competition is what has made us the number one place we are.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Tarkania?
Yes, I also wanted to tell you how much I appreciated your very fine report today. And I second the mayor's suggestion on maybe a safety committee or something that helps us. I know in people of my age, I know of people that travel a lot, they have the time, they have the money to travel, they want a safe place, no high crime, easy transportation, and a place that they feel that they're going to be respected. I think that's very important, the safety within our city. And I wanted to thank you for all of us, and thank your staff also, for the vibrant visionaries you've been these many years in the past, and which you continue to be. You're very, very important to our community. I wish more people realized how much you are, and thank you for all the work you've done.
Thank you. We have 500 great employees who live the brand every day.
Good, good.
Wonderful. Thank you so much, Mr. Rollin-Cotter. We appreciate it, and please thank everyone that has joined you today, who we really admire and thank your staff.
Thank you.
It's great. We're excited to be partners with you.
Okay. Have a great day. Thanks.
Okay, we will move now on to, that was a report, so that no motion is required. We will move on to agenda. Item 32. Oh, wonderful. Another exciting report. This is from Jorge Cervantes, City of Las Vegas Executive Director of Community Development regarding the light-emitting diodes, LED, street lighting implementation study, which we asked for a month or so ago because of concerns. And so, this is very exciting for us, and thank you. Good morning.
Good morning, Mayor Council. For the record, Jorge Cervantes, Executive Director, Community Services.
Neil Rolliter, City of Las Vegas Public Works, Assistant Traffic Manager.
Mayor, as you indicated at a previous meeting, you asked us to go on doing evaluation of the recent conversion of LED lights, and to come back and report what our findings were. So, we're here to do that today. Kind of what we're going to look at today, we're going to look at the methodology that we followed in doing this assessment. We'll talk a little bit about what the lighting standards are, both the national lighting standards and what the readings were that we got from our measurements. We'll look at a couple of pictures that kind of show side-by-side the new LED lights in comparison to the previous lighting standards, which was the high-pressure sodium lights. And then, one of the concerns that was brought up is, was there any impacts, either positive or negative, that these lights have had on potential fatalities? So, we'll look at those statistics also.
Thank you.
When we look at the methodology, what we did is we took measurements of street lights throughout the city. We wanted to make sure we covered all areas, so we selected an area in every ward to be able to go and do this random sample. We selected them on three different types of roadways, because each type of roadway has a different standard. Your arterial roadway are your larger roadway, your six-lane facilities that have higher speeds, higher traffic, and those have a higher standard of lighting, because we have more traffic on there, higher speeds. We took measurements at collectors, which are four-lane roadways, kind of like your Alta or your Semara streets, a little bit smaller than your arterials, but also carrying significant number of traffic. And then, find our residential streets, which really make up probably 70% of our roadway inventory, and those have a different standard, both for the lighting of the street and the lighting of the sidewalk area. We compared our illuminations to what the standard is, which is the Illumination Engineers Society of North America standard. This is a group that goes out there and provides what those standards should be, that if a city is to, or city, state, or federal government is to provide lighting, it should be at these standards. So, that's what we compared it as the benchmark to. We focused on the lighting that's going on the public roadway, and I want to kind of emphasize on that, because the purpose of our streetlights is really to light the streets, the sidewalk area, and not really private property. So, all our measurements were on the lighting levels on sidewalk and in the roadway itself. And then, we used what's called a spread-out grid pattern. And what that is, is we took the distance between two poles, and every one-eighth of a distance, we took a measurement, and then at the center line of every traveling, we take a measurement, do a grid, and use those numbers to calculate an average. In total, we did over 600 readings at the 21 locations, which covered all wards, and we compiled that data and will be presented today. And then, we took readings of the high-pressure sodium lighting, because we wanted to have a comparison, here is what our new lights are showing, here are what the previous lights are showing, so we have a side-by-side comparison of what those levels were.
So, Mayor Council, what you see in front of you here is actually a table of what the recommended standards are by the IES that Mr. Cervantes was saying. You'll see in the first column, it shows the roadway classification broken down by the arterial, major collector, minor collector, and residential. Again, that correlates to the different roadways that he just explained, which, again, the second column is the width of the roadway. The third column, you'll see the average IES standard, that's in foot candles. That's how we measure how much light is surrounding us. And you'll see 1.58 is the standard foot candles for the larger roads, 0.84 foot candles for the medium-sized roads, and 0.38 foot candles. The last column has to do with how bright the light is compared to the average, compared to the lowest level. You don't want to go into a situation where you have bright light, dim, bright light, dim. And so, the better uniformity is a lower number.
What is the margin there? What is the range on that last right column? Is top at 10, or what, where are you, from zero to what?
It would be a ratio of the average light down to the minimum amount. So, let's say you have a light level of one foot candles, and your minimum would be one-half foot candles, you'd have a two-to-one ratio. Okay? And so, those are the standards that you'll see on the standards for the regional and the national. Now, this gets a little bit busy, this page, and, you know, we're going to kind of break it down so we can focus on some of the specific, more important numbers and values. But again, the first column, these are the actual measurements of the roadway itself. You'll see the HPS ward, and then the HPS, so you'll see where the ward is broken out by the ward, as well as where we took, we went out to some sites where we still had HPSs in place, and we took measurements at those locations as well. So, the second column, roadway, again, explains the arterial collector, residential. The next two columns have to do with the maximum and minimum. So, when you take the light reading, the maximum has to do with how high it was at the lightest point in that grid pattern. The minimum has to, well, was the lowest point that we took in that grid pattern. The next column just echoes what we saw on the page before, which was the recommended The next column just echoes what we saw on the page before, which was the recommended light readings. And the first yellow column you see is really what's critical. What you'll notice, first of all, the 1.58 is what the recommended average, and in all cases, our LEDs actually surpassed what the recommended light level. And just as important, if not more importantly, HPS, where we took the measurements for HPS, it didn't even meet the lighting levels at the standard. Everything we have with LEDs right now actually surpasses what was in place for the HPS. So, that's what's really critical in all of the cases, where you look at the collectors, the same thing, 0.84. In all cases, we surpassed what the 0.84 average was, and were significantly higher than what the HPS standard was. And again, same thing with the HPS for the residential. That was just barely meeting the standard. However, in the residential areas, you'll see the averages are well above what the industry standard should be. The next page has to do with the lighting levels, because the sidewalk illumination is just as important. Again, it follows the same format for the first four or five columns, and then, you go to the actual average. Now, in this case, again, we were always beating the average, so to speak, as what was be the recommended average. And again, it generally was higher than what HPS was in all of those cases. And then, finally, the last column has to do with what would be the standard of the brightest, or the average, if you will, compared to the dimmest levels.
And so, what I want to do next, Mayor, is just show a couple of graphical representations, because a lot of times, the picture says the story. And so, this is looking at Decatur Boulevard, where the east side of the road's still North Las Vegas, they still have the high-pressure sodium lights. The west side of the road is where we convert the lights. So, you get a side-by-side comparison of what a LED light looks like, which we usually call a white light, versus a high-pressure sodium, which is more of a yellowish type of light.
So, just to clarify, the left side's the new LED, the right side's the old, correct?
That's correct. The right side is the North Las Vegas side, where the HPS, the left side is the LED light. So, it gives you a side-by-side comparison of the light, both the color and the temperature of the lights. This one is the same location, but what we wanted to show was, one of the concerns that we've heard is, can you see a person walking in the sidewalk? And is a person more visible in the white light versus the yellowish light? So, on the right-hand side, kind of in the middle of the picture, you can see one of our staff member wearing a yellow vest that we use for night protection, walking down the street, and you can see how he looks under the yellow light. On the left-hand side, you can see the same employee walking in the white light, kind of reflecting more of where he's at. One of the advantages of white light is that it renders more true colors. It's more simulating sunlight, and so, it gives you a truer representation of colors, so it makes people more, more vivid.
If I might just ask, I have to tell you, I could see the, in the yellow light better, and I see the gentleman's figure. Does that mean maybe I have an eye problem? Or does it, you know? But you could see more of the street and what's ahead of you, it appears to me, with the one on the right. And if you look at the man, he seems more clear to me on the right. Am I the only one that sees it that way?
Could be the lights coming from the building that help put him out there. The other one's just totally dark. There's nothing there.
That could be, that could be.
Councilman Coffin?
Well, if I could, I don't know if this is an explanation for my colleague, but it could be from me. I have cataracts. They're not severe, and it's like you normally get them, you know? And light looks different to those of us who have cataracts. It glows more. And so, I perceive that there's more light out of a high-pressure sodium than I do from a really sharply focused or better-balanced light, like a, an LED. Now, these photos, I don't know why, one, unless there was a lot of moisture in the air at a particular time, why, you know, you would see that corona around the LED, but you get it, you know, the older you get, you get these things. And I'm the oldest guy in the council, so I can talk about them, you know? And so, when we get complaints, particularly out of areas which are populated with older people, like Summerlin, Sun City, particular portion of Summerlin or others, you can understand their dilemma, because it seems brighter, because frankly, your eye is dominated by a larger globe of light, and you kind of think, well, you know, that's what's better. But in fact, you're not really seeing the same light. It's that a younger eye would see, that in fact, the light is there, and the camera can tell the difference, and the light meters tell the truth. But it's comforting, you know? You think you're seeing more, but in reality, there isn't more. And you have to tell yourself that, you know, one of those infirmity things that happens, "I don't understand it." I mean, I'm, you know, getting a certain age, I can't figure out why, but there it is. That's just one. Or a, you will get to confront.
And Councilman, you make a good point, that that is one of the differences between LED and non-LED lights, is LED lights have a good ability to have what we call a cutoff, which means everything above the horizontal, where the light is, reflects down. Very little light goes above the actual illumination head, whereas some of the other light technologies kind of spread light all over, and so, not only does it reflect down, but it reflects up into the sky. And so, LEDs are better at trying to keep the sky not illuminated, but really just illuminating the area that you're trying to illuminate. We wanted to show this picture, because one of the, one of the concerns that we've had for many years, not just with LEDs, but with any streetlights, is, a lot of times, where we have some of our master-planned communities with very lush landscaping, we find that the trees kind of create shadows. And so, a lot of times, when we hear complaints, you know, the sidewalk is dark, it's not really the light technology, it's the fact that we've got a lot of trees that create that canopy, that cover the light from emitting down. And so, we had this prior to LED, we had it when we had the old pressure. It's just simply the, the nature of where we have a lot of lush landscaping that creates those type of shadows out there. And this is a view of where we start the conversion. This is actually Eastern Avenue, and we wanted to show it, because you can see where we start the conversion of the arterial, and hadn't started in the adjacent residential streets yet. But it gives you a little bit of a contrast of the LED lighting versus the high-pressure sodium, the different temperatures of lighting, and the different illumination patterns. And then, this picture here, it's not really in the city, it's in the county, but the reason I wanted to show it is because the county started the conversion already of all their major intersections. They're working their way to do the rest of it. But one of the things I wanted to point out is, if you look at the white light, you can see the pavement markings reflect better with the white light than you typically do with the yellow light. That's another advantage of it, because again, the color rendering, the temperature allows those markings to really stand out a little bit better. And finally, we just want to conclude with the analysis that we did on pedestrian fatalities. What we did is, we went back six, seven years to look at the number of pedestrian fatalities total versus those at night. And what we found is the total number-
Excuse me, and now, would these be incomparable looks at the overall map as to the ward spaces you took, or is this just the generality overall of what your data is?
This is in the total city limits, Mayor. And so, you know, if you look at, there's a number that's usually reported, that's valley-wide. We just concentrate those within the city, because the conversion has really only occurred in the city so far as the streetlights.
Thank you.
And so, when we look at the total number of pedestrians, they've been kind of constant, they fluctuate by a couple, but then, constant. And so, those really haven't changed. But what we did find, though, is the number of night fatalities, when we got to illumination, that percentage is starting to go down. And so, we can't say it's due to the lights, but we can say that the lights aren't having a negative impact on nighttime pedestrian, which was a concern, or they created more problems for us. But the numbers tend to show that there's actually a pattern of percentages of night fatalities going down.
I hate to be annoying about it, but can you, is there a study where you can find out on the nighttime fatalities where they were? I know the city's grown since, well, not so much, since 2007, where those eight were and the nine and so on. Can we find out those locations to see if, in fact, there's any other information that would provide us?
We can, Mayor. We get, actually get reports of all the fatalities, that gives not just what happened, but all the contributing factors associated. It even states whether it was illuminated or not illuminated, so we do have that information to do that analysis.
I really like that.
And I want to conclude, Mayor, with just a little point on that, because what we're also working on, and we'll be bringing to you pretty soon, is another analysis we did of our traffic safety program, not just pedestrians but vehiculars. And we'll be bringing that information to you in the near future. It looked at our entire program over the last couple of years, some of the improvements we've done, and where those improvements have really benefited to reduce number of both vehicular and pedestrian accidents. And a final note, Mayor, you know, our analysis concluded that the illumination levels are as intended based on standards, but the other important factor is, we're actually seeing about a 60% reduction in energy consumption. And so, saving the city and its taxpayers about $1.7 million a year in electrical bills because of this conversion.
It's a wonderful report and really enlightening because of the fact, I mean, to ask a question and come from council about this, and have such a thorough report, I mean, really, really significant and very important to the public, and also really does probably tell us all, just whatever you're doing, drive according to the speed limits and pay attention. And I can't thank you enough, both of you, for bringing this information back. And I would, I would ask on behalf of the council, too, just that one piece, where were those fatalities, and how did they relate to what your report was? Appreciate it. Thank you both so very much. Anything else from the county, Council? No, excellent report.
I've had several calls, and I'm just going to copy this off, let them look at it. Thank you.
Okay. Our agenda item 33 has been abated till the 19th of February. So, agenda item number 34, Report on Emergency Contracts Awarded to Protect Public and Private Property to Minimize the Impairments of the Health, Safety, and Welfare of the Public in accordance with NRS 332.112 and 338.011 related to the flooding in the northwest portion of the City of Las Vegas, US 95 along Grand Teton Corridor and east of US 95 and all areas north of Elkhorn on August 25, 2013. That being 2,700,000 in emergency contract approval sanitation enterprise fund. This is in Ward 6. Councilman Ross, and so, good morning. Yes, good morning, Mr.
Good morning, Mayor Council, Orlando Sanchez, Deputy City Manager. Before I turn it over to Matt Kleiner, I'd like to recognize and thank departments for their outstanding work they performed in this project, in particular, the Departments of Operation and Maintenance, which is Larry Hodgins and his team, and Jerry Walker and his team, and all the hard-working men and women. I'd also like to recognize Venetta and Purchasing for getting these contracts going forward so quick, and of course, the City Attorney's Office for working with us. That, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Matt Kleiner, and he'll give you the particulars.
Good morning. Matt Kleiner, Purchasing and Contracts. On August 25, Ward 6 received about four inches of rain in one hour. Due to the Carpenter One fire, there was increased erosion and debris and sediment that landed in Kyle Canyon Basin and caused significant damage along the Grand Teton Corridor. An assessment was done by Jerry Walker and the streets folks, and it was immediately determined that private sector support was required to mitigate any immediate safety concerns. With that said, in accordance with NRS 332.112 and 338.011, the City Manager's Office authorized use of emergency contracts. Five emergency contracts were awarded in response to the, to this issue. The scope was clearing roadway debris, protecting any exposed infrastructure from further damage, clearing debris from the Ackerman Channel and any of the arch culverts, repairing damage to roadway pavement, and removing debris from Kyle Canyon Basin. Kyle Canyon Basin incurred over 200,000 tons of debris at almost 10 feet in height. These emergency contracts were coupled with some task orders that were issued under existing contracts. The city did require prevailing wages to be performed, required for all work performed, and a significant portion of this work will be reimbursed through the Regional Flood Control District. And if you have any questions with regard to this, we'd be more happy to try to answer that.
Well, we are just really responsive to this. I know how important it is to our community, and I know Councilman Ross has to say something.
Well, I'm actually just kind of thumbing through an email here that Mr. Walker just sent out this morning in regards to the amount of debris still left in the detention basin. And I have to, and my hat goes off, and I don't know where you got your four inches from, but it was six inches from, to me, from the Regional Flood Control District. It was recordable in Kyle Canyon. I say recordable, because they, and they estimated that it actually rained more than six inches. In some locations, they did not have a meter at, in the Kyle Canyon area. That being said, that much rain in three hours, and we could not have prepared for, regardless. And I must say, while I have the opportunity and the microphone, Mayor, Mr. Walker, you have done a tremendous job saving the taxpayers of this city millions of dollars with your efforts in negotiations with paving, with home builders, with Apex Republic Services. My hat goes off to you, Mr. Hodgins, and your team. You recognize the efforts by Mr. Walker, but I want the residents of this city to know how much that guy means to me in regards to saving taxpayers. And if this, this picture on the monitor, if folks at home can see this or watching this program today, that is 14, over 14 feet deep of sediment. Absolutely devastating. Jerry grabbed me that night, that day it rained, picked me up at the house, and we were out in the mud, the muck, Mayor, and it was ugly. It was very ugly. We prepared our, our streets as best we could for that onslaught of the next rain, and nothing, nothing could have prepared us for that. A dam may have worked, Jerry, I think, but I want to say something, too, because of the Kyle Canyon Detention Basin. That infrastructure in place saved countless lives and homes. Without that detention basin being in place at the time, Providence would have been wiped out, literally wiped out. I want to note, for the council and benefit of the public, we lost no lives, we lost no structures. Yes, we lost some road. Yes, we were almost losing some sanitary sewer, but thanks to the efforts of our teams out in the field, that didn't occur, because that would have been a biohazard nightmare for us. So, my hat goes off to all of you. My appreciation on behalf of the mayor and the city council and the residents of the City of Las Vegas for everything you've done and everything you continue to do, because we're not done yet. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And I would, I think, always looking to the future and more catastrophic environmental challenges. It is prevention, prevention. We've learned something here, and how do we move forward to make sure it doesn't happen again? Because it will, we will have these rains, and you know that. And now, the mountains are, you know, without any landscape or any prevention there, they're just slippy, sliding mud holes.
It will. And the Forest Division, Mayor, and council members, they have done a phenomenal job of laying over some, some, some straw over those burned areas to mitigate some of that. But it takes time, and some of those areas that were burned are very rugged and very difficult to access. Mayor, bless your heart. I would love to do, as you've suggested several times to me, and do a citywide tree planting in conjunction with the Nevada Division of Forestry. It's just making that all fit together with the logistics. But it's, it's important to note that two construction projects, one already starting this month on Grand Teton between Rainbow and Durango, and Mr. Rigman's doing a great job with KCLV and LasVegasNevada.gov in my newsletter, getting that information out there to drivers using those roadways, especially around Arbor View High School, where starting that construction project. Yeah, and social media, we're using Facebook and Twitter to get that information out there. But that construction project, Mayor and Council, will alleviate that, what occurred on the east side of US 95 on Grand Teton. The west side, the damage that here was in the previous slide, that is on the west side of Grand Teton, and that project was fast-tracked by the City of Las Vegas and the Regional Flood Control District to get it under design and under construction by mid-year this year. So, we got it. Mother Nature has spoken, and we're, we're taking care of our, our business.
Thank you, Councilman. I know you've done a grand job with that, and I do remember the very first day, and on the news and in the media, there you were slushing around, so.
With Jerry.
And yes, with Jerry, without question. So, yes, Councilman Coffin?
Well, yes, Mayor, I'm glad you mentioned Councilman Ross on that, because he was everywhere, and we watched TV, and you could see the flood, then you'd see Councilman Ross out there in his knee-highs, or he was doing something directing traffic or shoveling some thing. And, you know, it, but as I have spoken before, this whole thing really started 30 years ago, when the legislature had a hell of a tax fight over the quarter-cent sales tax that you and I are paying now. And in fact, if it hadn't been for that decision made by the legislature 30 years ago, the northwest, the northwest part of town would have been gone, not just Providence, but gone, because of the massive amount of rain that is now mostly under control by our flood control projects. So, again, Councilman Ross, you made us all look real good, and, and I think we can look back. Institutional memory tells us, today's fight yields tomorrow's, you know, yield of benefit.
Thank you. Thank you both. Thank you, Mr. Kleiner and Mr. Sanchez. Report only, and so, no motions required on this. Thank you. I will move on to agenda item 35, Report on Flooding Experienced at City Hall, 495 South Main Street on November 18, 2013, and the resultant corrective actions taken by staff to stop the water leak and minimize the impairment of the health, safety, and welfare of the public. City staff with water damages causing approximately $355,000 of insured damage with a $10,000 deductible Facilities Management Internal Services Fund. This is, of course, in Ward 3, in Councilman Coffin's ward, so let's continue. Mr. Sanchez, please.
I'm Mayor City Council, Orlando Sanchez, Deputy City Manager. Again, I'd like to recognize the team and thank them for all their hard work. It would be Operation and Maintenance, Larry Hodgins again, and Steve Ford. Also, from our Finance Department, Venetta, Iniolli, and Matt Kleiner, of course, and our City Attorney's Office that gave us leading advice. With that, I'll turn it over to Matt Kleiner.
Thank you. Matt Kleiner, Purchasing and Contracts. On November 18, we had a water line that failed on the eighth floor. It was a, a plug in the, in the copper line that was not compatible. It was a temporary plug. It failed at about 2:00 AM in the morning. The water damage was seen around the elevators on all floors of City Hall. Damage was largely contained in the vicinity of the freight elevator. Once again, for NRS 332-112 and 338-011, the City Managers authorized use of emergency contracts. The scope of those contracts was an initial response to clean up any standing water, mitigate any immediate, excuse me, immediate safety concerns. The city also brought in a third-party firm to do a verification validation to ensure that there were no environmental concerns before we started any restoration activities. The other contracts that were let were to restore the facility back to its normal condition, repair the elevators, and to repair the fire alarm systems. As stated, the city had a $10,000 deductible. The rest was being covered by the city's insurance policies.
There is no auxiliary built-in of alarm? When the alarm went down because of this, had something else occurred, there would be no additional alarm? By backup?
Mayor, City Council, Rolando Sanchez, Deputy City Manager. This was a high-pressure water line that serves the entire city. It's not a fire safety, so there was no alarm on it. When it blew that one-inch little iron cap, it just shut out, I think, a 200, 2,000 PSI per minute, something ridiculous, that just caused mass flooding within a three-hour gap.
Thank you. Comments, questions?
I have a question.
Yes, please, Councilwoman.
On the summary of emergency contracts that you have up there, could I ask a question about that?
Absolutely.
I know that you got the insurance covering almost everything except the $10,000, and I know that you're going after it with, going for even the $10,000 from the contractor. Is that right?
That is correct, yes. City Attorney's Office.
My question is, when you say west elevators, is that one of the executive, is that the one we're having trouble with all the time that's near our offices, Mayor? Is that the west?
Mayor of City Council, no. That is a freight elevator that went down, was completely drenched in, they had to completely almost rebuild it. Now, the, you're the mayor of the elevator and the City Council elevator, there's issues with that, that we're working with the contractor, trying to get them repaired and resolved permanently.
All right, so all of this is what was done because of the water problem we had?
Correct.
All of this on this, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
In addition to that, as you're going after the money, I just wish, it's so frustrating when that's an on-and-off type of elevator, I just wish that you'd be able to go after constructors, the construction people for that, because that's not been working since the very beginning.
Correct. And we do have, it was under, we brought this under the warranty period that it was an issue even when we first moved into this building. We'll be working very closely with the City Attorney's Office to put them on notice if they're not rectified, the problems that we want to complete switch out, and we want to make sure that the elevator works like it was designed to work.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to move into the other.
Mr. Sanchez, Mr. Kleiner, thank you both very, very much. Appreciate it. Thank you. Okay, and we will now move on to recommending, and Agenda Item 36, Bill Eligible for Adoption at This Meeting, Bill Number 2014-2. Mr. Jervick, could you please read the bill?
On behalf of you, Your Honor, I would make a note before I read the bill that all of these bills that are eligible for adoption, they were before recommending, and unfortunately at the recommending committee, not all of them were open for public hearing. So I'm going to recommend, after I read them, that each of them be open for public hearing today.
Okay, fine.
And with that said, Bill Number 2014-2, in order to eliminate specific business license categories for commercial dance studios, distressed merchandise sales, retail demonstration merchandise sale stores, and food caterers, eliminate charitable solicitation permits, amend licensing regulations and fees related to outdoor pay telephones, professional promoters and charitable or special events, and provide for other related matters.
Thank you very much. I do recall in recommending at that time, Councilman Coffin, on this bill had mentioned how, on occasion, and maybe too many occasions, that certain businesses in going out of business have going out of business sales again and again and again. And so in asking that somehow that licensing and Mr. Fag and Ms. Duddleston look specifically to numbering those, and then more as well, which specific, it says specific business license categories, which ones additionally to what is listed here would be included.
Your Honor, for the record, Karen Duddleston, Business Licensing Manager. Yes, we are, will bring back some additional proposed changes on businesses and continually going out of business sales and advertising as such, and handle that under our civil penalties, rather than trying to do a separated permit system, which is what we are proposing to eliminate here. On the other businesses, most of the businesses in here are ones that we currently have no one licensed under, or we have, are proposing to combine those with other businesses. So, for example, right now, we have promoters, we have producers, and we have charitable promoters. But most businesses that promote an event or plan an event for someone do all three of these, so we're trying to combine those under one license, rather than trying to have three. The other ones that we are proposing are charitable solicitations. These are basically a permit, so anyone that is soliciting anything for charity, anything from cookies to an event, is supposed to come in and get a permit from City Business Licensing. It's something that has been rarely used for a very long time. Those businesses, those charities have to register with the Secretary of State's office, and they have to register with the IRS. So that information is available online if you want to know if it's a legitimate charity or not. Also, outdoor pay telephones, we're changing from permitting them individually to having the company providing them, provide us with a map of all of their locations, just to simplify those procedures, and commercial dance studios. And I think that's about it. Can I answer any additional questions?
Well, the main thing was, as I recall, Councilman Coffin's comment about the closeout. So is there a limit to how many of those you're recommending, or what Councilman Coffin thought about that in furtherance of this?
There is not. We've got it on our list. We'll be glad to meet with the councilmen, look around and see what we can find, is any history on that issue, and bring back to you some rules and regulations that we could then enforce against a business.
So does that preclude our going ahead and moving to adopt this today, and we have to wait for that to happen, or what?
No, that would be rules and regulations that would affect all businesses. This was a, basically a permit or a license, that if you wanted to go out of business, you would come in and get from licensing. Unfortunately, by the time we can enforce on something like that, they've already gone out of business. So it wasn't something that has, that we can find that we have issued in the last 10 years.
Okay, thank you. Any questions, comments?
I'd like to ask a question, if I could.
Yes, please, Councilwoman.
With all of these licensings, for those people who might try and sell merchandise outside the store, do we still require an SUP for that?
Yes, and most of them come in and get a special event permit. If they're operating outside of their business, if they're doing a parking lot sale or something like that, there is another permitting procedures. Those come in through a special event or a.
But if you had a business that made it part of their business every day, they can't do that, can they?
They cannot do that unless their land use approval allows them to have things outside.
Unless there what approval?
Their land use approval, so some sort of approval to have things that are outside in their parking lot.
Okay, approval by whom? Oh, us. I got you. Sorry, you said land use, I couldn't get.
Yeah, it would be a land use approval. So for business licensing, we issue the business license, but we look at what was approved for that business, for their operations on that site, for what they can and cannot do in or outside of that building.
So they'd have to get a SUP. We're just getting a lot of these now in Ward 1, and that's why I wanted to check.
Flynn Fag, Department of Planning. We have a land use category called outdoor vendor sales. They have to submit a site plan and be approved to do that. There are specific standards that they have to adhere to in doing that as well. There are also other areas where we do allow outdoor sales and storage, typically in our industrial districts. If there are specific issues or problems that you have questions about, please contact me, and we can take care of those.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Are you recommending on this, Mr. Jervick? Didn't we open the public hearing on this particular one, or no?
We haven't opened it yet, but I think it's appropriate to ask if any member of the public wants to speak on this.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Coffin, do you want to make some comments, and I'll open this?
No, ma'am.
Thank you. We will take public comments. Hearing none, we will close the public comments. And therefore, I would entertain, this seems to be sponsored by Councilman Ross, who has stepped away, so Councilman Beers, how about you? Move this, please.
I want to vote on this, Your Honor, but I did want to disclose that I have, in my day, as a certified public accountant, filled out a number of these forms, and believe this will make my life easier. Nevertheless, I'm going to vote in favor of it.
Okay, thank you. And you make a motion?
Move that we adopt this ordinance.
Thank you.
Do I need to list the number?
Bill 2014-2.
2014-2, Bill Number 201, 214-2.
Thank you. This is a motion, please vote, and please post.
If I could, well, that's posted, and it's one from the record that the councilman consulted with me before voting. I informed him that his business is affected no more or less than any other similarly situated business, so I think disclosure is appropriate, but abstention is not necessary.
Thank you very much. And so that motion carries. We will move on to Agenda Item Number 37. Okay, this is Bill Number 2014-3. Mr. Jervick, could you please read the bill?
On behalf of you, Your Honor, Bill Number 2014-3, in order to delete certain work card requirements in multiple chapters of LVMC Title VI, amend multiple chapters of LVMC Title VI, remove work card requirements, establish a hearing panel to hear work card appeals, and provide for other related matters. On this matter, Your Honor, I believe that the Metropolitan Police Department is here, and I believe that they have some comments that they were not, they did not make it recommending, but they would like to make today.
Thank you very much. How about Ms. Duddleston, could you come up and talk about which work cards and why? The why?
Certainly, Your Honor. Again, for the record, Karen Duddleston, Business Licensing Manager. The bill before you today not only reduces the number of work cards that are required in the city, it changes the appeal procedures and the timing of those appeals. So the first thing it does is takes, in working with county business licensing, asking them what work cards they require, and trying to make those regulations as similar as possible in the city, that was the task that we were given in preparing this for your consideration. So work cards would no longer be required for amusement park attendants, apartment staff, youth employment agencies, carnivals. Under liquor, it would be the waiter and the 7-Eleven, or the convenience store clerk, but bartenders, supervisors would still require work cards. Pawnbroker, they are required to have work cards under their second-hand license, so this is simply duplicate. So all of their employees must, because they are second-hand, all continue to have work cards, so this one is just redundant. Peddlers, solicitors, and temporary merchants, and martial arts instructors are the ones that are proposed to be deleted from having work cards. The appeal procedure in here would allow the City Council to have a, to set a hearing panel, which is allowed by state law, to hear those work card appeals. The proposal also makes the requirements for denying a work card on behalf, so for, when Metro denies a work card, to have the criteria that they use be the same in the city and the same in the county. So if you have a work card in one entity, if you were accepted or denied, it was based on the same rules in one entity or the other, which would allow us much more easily to have those work card rules go back and forth between ones. So if someone comes into the city with a county work card, we have the same criteria for them having that work card as ours.
Very reasonable.
And the other piece of this is to expand the time period that we have to prepare those reports. So currently, we have 45 days from when an appeal is filed with our office to send that to Metro, for them to do an investigation. Often, those investigations require going to other states and asking other states to provide the criminal background and history for someone new to this community. We then get those reports, we give them to the person requesting that work card, they have to go over it with their employer, and we have an affidavit come back before you. Unfortunately, with only 45 days to complete all of that and get you those reports, often I'm running in the day before or the morning of, and I don't have those reports back from the employer yet. It just simply takes the employee time, and it takes us time. So we're asking for 60 days.
Okay, thank you. I don't know if there are any comments, but I am opposed to an intermediary group on an appeal. I think it needs to come back to this body, because this body is ultimately responsible in everything else. I certainly concur with that. But to establish another body, the buck stops right here, and I think they should ultimately hear the recommendations from your office and planning on these appeal cards. I just think to have another appointed body, it's just another layer of government, just if it's an appeal, that you represent the pluses and minuses and have it brought back here for attention. That's just my personal take on it. So I don't know if there are any questions or comments here. I see a light on with Councilman Barlow.
Yes, my light was on, but inadvertently, but I do agree with you, Mayor. Thank you.
If you'd open the public hearing, Mayor?
I'm sorry?
Would you open the public hearing, please?
Yes. This is a public hearing before or after the presentation here?
Right.
Right now, okay. Good morning.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Sergeant Carmen Donigan with the Las Vegas Metropolitan Police Department, Special Investigation Section. Metro is very much in support of the extension within the bill of the work card appeal process from 45 to 60 days, as was explained by Ms. Duddleston. In streamlining the work card application process, there are a few employment categories that the LVMPD recommends the City of Las Vegas continue to require work cards for, as we do in the county. These categories are carnivals and circuses, martial arts, peddlers and solicitors, and temporary merchants. Additionally, Metro recommends that in regard to sex offenses, language should be added stating that a work card can be denied if the applicant is required to register as a Are there any questions?
Councilman Ross?
So are you in support of the bill, or you're not in support of the bill?
We are in the support, in support of the bill, but we are recommending that there be some changes. In order for there to be consistency between the city and the county work card applications and denials, several categories need to be added to be in, so that they're the same as the county.
And through the mayor, and Ms. Duddleston and both of you, actually, have you had this conversation with Councilman Beers, as he is the sponsor of this bill?
I have not personally had.
Ms. Duddleston, with the mayor's permission.
Your Honor, I did forward the changes that Metro requested to Councilman Beers, and I'm sure he can comment for himself.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
Your Honor, I've pretty much delegated the management of the processing of this bill to Ms. Duddleston, and I'm pretty comfortable with what staff wants to do here. You know, the fundamental question is, do we want to have an appeals board hear these, or us hear these, and then bring parity between the categorization of different entities in the valley? And I think there may be a slight disagreement as to what, between Metro and the county, as to what the county's trying to say. I think it's part of the confusion.
I'm wondering if we can legally separate the way it's posted, or we have to obey for proper notification, pull out the piece on the appeal board's responsibility, or not? That's a question I'm asking Val, if you're down there. And then secondarily, I know Mayor Proten has a comment, question, so.
You can always, excuse me, you can always reduce the content of the bill. We get into notification problems when you're seeking to add things that are way outside the scope, but you can always process a bill that only contains part of that which is in the ordinance now, so.
Thank you very much, and I see Mr. Fag has a comment right there. Do we need to, okay, you're okay. Mayor Proten, please.
Yeah, a question and a comment, or two questions. So I heard you say that this ordinance brings us in, makes work cards similar to the county. Is that correct?
According to the county business licensing and county staff, that bill that is before you is the same work cards that they require for their businesses. Metro's interpretation, and I don't want to speak for them, this is my understanding, of the ordinances in the county differs from the county staff's interpretation of those ordinances.
Okay, so between you and the county business licensing, you guys are okay?
Correct.
Okay.
We also have, we have no issues with Metro's proposed changes. We can continue to work on that and bring that back to you in the future, if that's what you would like us to do. We worked with county staff to try to get these as similar as we could.
Okay, my second question is, this appeals board that you're looking at, is this a public hearing? The appeals board, is it a public hearing?
It is a public hearing appointed by the, with a panel appointed by the City Council.
Okay, so do you know where it would be held, or you haven't gotten that far yet?
I don't know. It would be up to the City Council to determine who would serve on that appeals board, whether it would be council members, or it would be outside constituents, or other county. it would be council members, or it would be outside constituents, or other county, city staff. You get about thirteen appeals a year, for your information. Last year, we had thirteen. I think only one of two of them were bartenders. All of the others were waiters and waitresses, and clerks at convenience stores. So if you go ahead with this as proposed, especially in the liquor categories, we would see very, very few, if history holds true, appeals that would actually come before you. So that may help you in your deliberations.
The reason I like the appeals board, actually, is we, you know, these people come down here to appeal their denial of a work card, and they're standing over there, and they're on television, and their criminal history is being discussed. One lady was down here crying. I just don't think we need to put those folks through something like that, when it'll probably be handled in a conference room where nobody is really caring, and let some group decide whether to deny the appeal or not. And, I mean, that's my feeling. Now, can they, can that person appeal the decision of that board to the City Council?
Yes, I believe they can.
Yeah, I actually like that a little bit better. I just don't like people in public going through that.
Also...
If I may just interrupt real quick, because that was a very key turning point that the Mayor Protem brought forward. That wasn't my understanding as far as the individual having an opportunity to appeal back to the City Council. So if we can flush that out a little bit more, that would be helpful to me, because that was not my understanding, that it was final at that board level.
I apologize, mayor, if I may. You are correct. I was just reading the language, and it says, upon the filing of an appeal, Metro may issue a temporary work card which will be revoked or become permanent upon the final decision of the hearing panel.
Okay, well, I would actually like the, I mean, I would like...
There's actually a separate section that I think we need to look at.
There's a section on page twelve, and I think this is required by the charter. The charter gave you authority to establish a hearing panel with the caveat that anybody who was unhappy with that could have a final hearing here, and so that's reflected on page twelve.
Twelve.
So that is why my comment, you've established another body, another layer for people to go through to do this. My basic sense is that how we treat people that come before us that have an issue that have been denied a work card, it's up to us to be fair and not put people in a sense of public embarrassment to the best of our ability, but there's a reason they've been denied a work card. And so the appeal process, in my opinion, I hold very strongly on this, more layers of government, more people appointed and intermediary. It still has to come back here, or might come back here. I think it is, I don't think it's a wise thing to do. So just as we move forward, this is Councilman Beers. In fact, I would like to pull that vote separately, because I'd like to vote for this. I do think it's a very important piece, and I think it makes a great deal of sense, and I'd like to pull out the appeals process from that, since Mr. Steed said we could do it, and make a motion, but without the appeal, then we go second to the appeal, and you can vote whatever you wish. Wait, one more thing down here. We have two. Start with Councilman Coffin.
Thanks, your honor. The, I am a little concerned, because I thought that at the conclusion of the meeting, there was the final ability to appeal to council, which I believe there should be. And so apparently, that's a little cloudy, and I really don't think we should vote on the bill or any amendments to it today for these reasons. There still seems to be something up in the air, and I like the bill, I'd like to see it pass, but my position on the public appearances of people who appeal is that I feel that that just sometimes happens, because if a person's got a criminal record, sometimes it can be explained. But let's, they've got to be able to have their grievances heard at the ultimate authority, which is the council. I think the idea of the panel is good, because that puts them through their paces, and they can kind of get a sense for what might come up in public if they do. But it's their business, it's their choice. It's always been their choice to appeal. They know their record, they know their problems, and they're willing, they're willing to expose it. It's not like something they're trying to hide. You know, I'm not at all worried about how people feel about exposing these kinds of things, because it all comes out in the wash. If it happened twenty years ago, then the public knows that, and it's a forgiving public. And I just feel like we need to be the final authority on all of these things, but the appeal board can really help things, you know, from having to come to us in public.
Are you able to consider going ahead without the appeal issue, so we can move this forward, or do you want it all in one and have that resolved before you are able to?
If I could suggest, first of all, there was an impression given, and I think it was unintentional, mayor, when you said, or somebody said that we didn't have a public hearing. In a sense, it's implied that we didn't, when in fact, it was a very public hearing, properly noted and all that, but there was, you were chairing, and I think you're unfamiliar with the committee, and so we moved through this rather quickly without actually asking those vital words, even though Carmen was in the audience. You didn't stand up and wave your arm and say, hey, I want to talk, Carmen, which is not a sergeant's way, but in any event, it happened by accident. So that's why we're dotting the i's here, to make sure that we have a hearing today. But in so doing, we've just lengthened the council meeting. And I think, you know, it's a good bill. There's a lot of really good elements in it.
Additionally, on that note, I have Denise Key here with some comments, and she is the Director of the LVMPD Fingerprint Bureau.
Okay.
Good morning.
Please do announce yourself for the record.
Thank you. Denise Key, Las Vegas Metropolitan Police Department. Sorry, Denise Key, Las Vegas Metropolitan Police Department, Director of the Fingerprint Bureau. I did want to clarify, I know the point was made about the work cards that we are asking be put back in to the ordinance or remain in the ordinance, and those were carnivals, martial arts, peddlers and solicitors, and temporary merchants. They are not in the main Clark County work card ordinance. They are separated out into four different ordinances, so that may be the conflict between why they're not included in the county's original work card ordinance. So those, but we do issue those in the county, and we currently issue those in the city as well. So that was our main point, that we wanted to retain that ability in both the city and the county, and bring that clarity.
Thank you. Mayor Protem, comment.
Actually, I think this might be a good idea to send this back to recommending, to hash this out a little bit more. So if anybody is against that, or not against it, I'll go ahead and make that motion.
Yes.
Mayor Protem, before I do, I just had a question for Sergeant. Sergeant, from what I'm hearing you guys say, you'd actually like to see the county actually have some more classifications in theirs?
That is not correct. They already are issuing, we are already issuing work cards in all of these categories for the county as we speak, and we always have. So if they were not included, it would make it different.
Okay, so we're, but then, Ms. Duddleston, we're not, this isn't the same thing as the counties, then if those classifications are missing?
Your honor, if I might, Karen Duddleston, Business Licensing Manager, and we will be happy to work at this, on this at any level. I believe that the disagreement that you're hearing is between what the county interprets as their code based on their officials that have spoken with us versus how Metro interprets their code.
Okay, and mayor, that being said, I just want to be clear on the record that I want to support what our officers are doing in regards to their investigative abilities in identifying challenging individuals within this community. That's my concern, is to support you and what your endeavors are, at the same time, support Councilman Beers in trying to streamline this process with Ms. Duddleston. So thank you, mayor.
Thank you very much, therefore. Oh, wait, one sec, please. Councilman Beers.
Thank you, your honor. Not on the topic of which classifications will end up or not end up in this bill ultimately, but on the topic of the appeal board and that piece of the process, I would like to point out to the council that we have never, and it's only been a year and a half, almost two years that I've been here, we have never not granted a work card to someone who came before us with a letter from their employer. It is not a decision, there's really no decision made up here. It's every single time, if they come with their employer in support, we grant them the work card. If they don't, we don't. So it's not like we're exercising judgment up here on this matter. It appears to be kind of a binary decision that we end up looking at the flow chart and pushing the right color button for.
Thank you, and are you okay, since it's yours? Should you go ahead and send it back to recommending?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Okay, Mayor Protem.
Okay, so I'll make a motion. Let's take a look at maybe having two ordinances, or I'll let Val and you guys work it out, how we can vote on the work card section, and then vote on the appeal board section separately, because it sounds like that's what we want to do up here. So if you could work that out, number one, and number two, let's obey this to the, not the next recommending, because we obeyed everything yesterday to the next recommending, so the one after that, which...
March fourth.
March fourth, okay, so that'll be my motion, March fourth.
Okay, there's a motion. Please vote. And please post. Not March fourth? Okay, March fourth.
What's the record?
The bill was published on January twenty-third, so we have sixty days, so we should have till about March twenty-second.
Okay. But let's leave it March fourth. So we will obey this item until March fourth, and thank you. And when it goes to recommending, it is Councilman Coffin and Barlow and Mayor Protem. If in fact, somebody is out, I would like to be there, since I was there recommending. If in fact, anybody is not going to be there on March fourth. Okay, we can discuss that, but thank you. Thank you. All right, now we will move on to agenda. I have a number. Excuse me.
Mayor. It's me. We haven't taken the vote yet. Do you want to make the motion to hold it in a banse, or just send it back to recommending?
My motion was to send it back.
Back to recommending.
On March fourth. Correct, thank you.
I thought I always voted on that. I did. Oh, okay. Yes, and it carries. Sorry, it was not posted. Okay, so let's move on to Agenda Item thirty-eight, and this is Bill number two oh one four dash four, Mr. Jerwick. Mr. Steed, could you please read the bill?
Yes, Bill number two thousand fourteen dash four, in ordinance to amend the Unified Development Code to establish the means of allowing a site with development approval entitlements to obtain separate and concurrent approval for temporary development and to provide for other related matters. There is a First Amendment that should be in your backup. There was an originally proposed five years, and amendment was to reduce the time periods to three years, so that should be in your backup, First Amendment.
Thank you. So that has been amended to have temporary for three years, not the five years.
That's correct.
Thank you very much.
And if you don't mind opening this one up for public hearing, I'm not sure if this one, okay, thank you.
I think we did, but that's fine. We can open the public hearing at this point. Anyone wishing to be heard on this item, please come forward, state your name. Are you coming forward, Mr. Riegelman, to make comment? No. Okay, I'll close the public comment, and therefore, go for it.
Move for approval.
Thank you. There's a motion?
That's the First Amendment.
With the First Amendment.
Thank you.
And please post. That motion carries. Thank you very much. And this will be, now let's see if we have anything pulled from here. Items thirty-nine through forty-four, Bills number two oh one three dash six one and two oh one four dash six through two oh one four dash ten will be heard at later meeting. And so we can move on to item number, whoops. Agenda item forty-five. Items forty-five and forty-six, Bills number four oh one four dash eleven and two oh one four dash twelve will be heard at the recommending committee meeting on Tuesday, February eighteenth, two thousand and fourteen. Mr. Steed, would you read the new bills, please?
Yes, thank you. Bill number two thousand fourteen dash eleven, in ordinance to adopt the latest revision to the uniform regulations for the control of drainage, together with local amendments pertaining to drainage facilities and to provide further related matters. Bill number two thousand four dash twelve, in ordinance to update the appeal and hearing procedures for nuisance abatements in accordance with state law and to provide further related matters.
Thank you very much. These new bills, two oh one four dash eleven and two oh one four dash twelve, are assigned to council members Barlow, Anthony, and Coffin, and thank you. The morning session of the City Council meeting is in recess until one o'clock. Thank you.
Val? How long has it been that the council itself wouldn't hear?
Okay, we will reconvene here. And we are reconvening. Got not enough space up here for all my stuff. for all my stuff. Okay. So our afternoon session, agenda item 47. Okay, for possible action. Any items from the afternoon session that the council staff and/or applicant wish to be stricken, table withdrawn, or held in abeyance to a future meeting may be brought forward and acted upon at this town. Mayor Brotem, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I have four items. Item number 53, SUP 49539, applicant, Aralini, owner, T.L.B.C.R.L.C. 18 Fremont Street. Applicant has asked that be obeyed till July 16th, 2014. Item number 24, SUP 49540, applicant owner, Laheim Fremont Associates Property, 300 Fremont Street. Applicant has asked that be obeyed till July 16th, 2014. Item number 55, SUP 49543, applicant, Crazy Eli, Western Village, owner, H.S. Family Limited Partnership, 316 Fremont Street. Applicant has asked that be obeyed till July 16th, 2014. And item number 56, SUP 49574, applicant, Arleney, owner, Shift Enterprises, 21 Fremont Street. Applicant has asked that be obeyed till July 16th, 2014. And that's my motion.
Thank you. Thank you. There's a motion? And would you please vote? And then would you please We know up here, we're old enough to know, technology comes after us. Okay, that motion carries. We will now move on to agenda item 48. Items 48 through 52 on the consent agenda are considered to be routine or recommended for approval by the Department of Planning and Development. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda items 48 through 52?
So moved.
Thank you. There's a motion? Please vote. And please post. Okay. That carries. And we've just heard that agenda items 53 through 56 have been obeyed till July 16th? Oh my goodness. It's my oldest son's birthday. Therefore, we will move, hard to think that far forward. We will move to agenda item 57. Report for possible action regarding the development of regulations by the Nevada Department of Health and Human Resources for licensing of medical marijuana establishments. This has to do with all wards. And so, Mr. Fagmas-Dudleston, floor is yours.
I will turn it over to Ms. Dudleston.
Thank you, Your Honor. For the record, Karen Dudleston, Business Licensing Manager. We are here today to talk about the framework that is present for the city council to provide some direction to staff on the topic of medical marijuana. As you are all aware, under the federal framework, we have the Controlled Substances Act where medical marijuana, or marijuana is considered a Schedule I substance. The requirements for a drug to be listed on that Schedule I is that the drug or other substance has a high potential for abuse, the drug or other substance has no current accepted medical use in treatment in the United States, there's a lack of accepted safety of the drug or other substance under medical supervision, no prescriptions may be written for a Schedule I substances, and such substances are subject to the Drug Enforcement Administration jurisdiction. Those are the requirements directly out of the Controlled Substances Act.
And as such, are anybody engaging that, it's considered a felony at this point by this act, correct?
I do not know if it's considered a felony. I do know that at the federal level, it is illegal.
Okay, now if I may, let's turn to the attorney who is down there, Mr. Steed. Substance I, under the Controlled Substance Act, Schedule I, anything to do with growing, selling, using this substance is a felony according to the U.S. government, correct?
I don't know. I don't know if it's a felony or not. Sorry. I can look it up if you'd like.
I would like you to do that and report back. Can you do it right now, please?
Sure.
Thank you. And report back. Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Please continue.
There have been passed petitions to the DEA to reschedule marijuana in recent years, and those petitions have been denied for the DEA. Under their rulings, from the research that I was able to accomplish, their ruling was that the substance still met the criteria for Schedule I. There are, however, 21 states plus the District of Columbia that have implemented medical or recreational marijuana programs. Thank you, Your Honor. In August of 29th of 2013, the Department of Justice did issue a clarification memo for their priorities for enforcement as it relates to marijuana, state marijuana programs. What that memo basically does, the most recent one, and there were memos from before, lists eight areas that they said that if local programs meet these eight areas, they would be a low priority for their enforcement agents to spend their time on. So those local programs have to prevent the distribution of marijuana to minors, prevent revenue from going to criminal enterprises, prevent the diversion of marijuana to other states, prevent state authorized marijuana activity from being used as a cover for the trafficking of other illegal drugs or other illegal activity, prevent violence in the use of firearms in the cultivation and distribution, prevent drug driving and exacerbation of other adverse public health consequences associated with marijuana use, prevent the growing of marijuana on public lands, and prevent possession and use on federal property. The framework in Nevada.
Yes, Councilman Coffin?
I wonder if we could help staff out because you had a question that wasn't answered. And yet, you know, why don't we all stipulate that a violation of this act is a felony, a federal felony? Why don't we just do that? So not waiting for legal counsel to figure out whether they could even talk about the issue?
Yes.
I mean, it must be.
I think we're all under the belief from prior council comment that anything in Schedule I at this point, substance controlled, is a felony, doing, growing it, selling it. And we'll proceed on, but still, I'd like to wait for that confirmation.
Yeah, let's just move on after that, though, Your Honor. Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks, Councilman. Please continue.
Thank you, Your Honor. Under Nevada, in the year 2000, question nine was presented to the voters of Nevada and was approved by 65%. That asked the legislature to develop a medical marijuana program, which the legislature began in 2001 by implementing the card registration system. And that provided for some limited growth of marijuana in homes and the possession for medical purposes. In 2013, as you're all aware, the legislature passed Senate Bill 374, which authorized for public facilities in throughout the state for the cultivation and distribution of medical marijuana. They have authorized dispensaries, laboratories, cultivation facilities, and production facilities, both of edible products and infused products. The state regulations were assigned to the State Division of Mental and Behavioral Health, and they have spent this last fall working with local governments and with the public on the development of those regulations. They held several workshops. And in December, produced a draft set of regulations. Those regulations were then forwarded to the Legislative Council Bureau for official drafting in January. And they've reported to us that they expect a final draft of those regulations out sometime in February. They would then be forwarded to the Board of Health for hopefully a March hearing, and then to the Legislative Commission for final consideration as the state regulations. So we would anticipate seeing some of those actions later this spring. Those state regulations from the drafts that we have seen determine the regulation's scope for each type of facility. They develop a state certification process. That certification process is a application from anyone wanting to provide any or all of those types of services through an application process. And the state would rank those applications based on a merit-based criteria and return those to local governments. They are also be developing a product tracking system, an electronic verification system for both the cards and the products. And the state taxation has issued its regulations for taxation, which are an additional 2% at wholesale and 2% at retail. Of those state facilities that have been authorized in SB 374, dispensaries would be limited in the city of Las Vegas to a maximum of 10. Edible Protection Facilities, Testing Laboratories, and Cultivation Facilities, the state may determine a number throughout the state, but at this point, they have not. And the city may obviously restrict any or all of those types of facilities within their jurisdictions. I will point out that under the state regulations, testing laboratories, anyone that owns a testing laboratory cannot have an ownership interest in any of the other production or dispensing areas of the system. The state has stated that they will be issuing a request for applications. They will give everyone 45 days' notice, and then they will have a 10-day open period. We do not at this point in time have a definitive answer on when that open period may be. So we will keep in touch with them on when that is. It could be as soon as this spring or later. At this point, we have not been issued any dates. The division will set point values for each portion of those applications. And then the state will rank order those applications and forward to the local government in ranked order the number of authorized facilities. And they will issue a provisional registration certificate to the entity on that ranked ordered list. So if we determine to have 10 total dispensaries, they will send to the local government 10 applications in ranked order, 1 through 10. In regulatory systems, while we are at the local level, used to the system of wholesale distribution, for example, in liquor, where you have a separation of the production of liquor going to a wholesale distributor, and then retail, and you have a complete separation of ownership in those, in that system. The state system allows vertical hybrid and a separation based on all of their application proposals. So vertical integration would be where one company or one person could have an ownership interest or own from seed to sale. So they could cultivate, they could produce the edible products, and they could dispense through a dispensary and own that entire system. Or they could propose, as other states have in their regulations, a hybrid where one cultivator might have one or two relationships with dispensaries, or dispensaries could have relationships with more than one cultivator in order to see differences in products in those dispensaries. Some states have required that system. Our state is allowing the applicants to propose the type of system that they would propose in their application. We also see around the country, separated ownership, which we may see in some of those application, where there would be different owners. So one ownership would be, a company would own cultivation, another would own a dispensary or multiple dispensaries, but they would not be related. So the assignments to local government from the regulations are pretty clear in those regulations, that anyone that wants to enter this business must comply with local ordinances and regulations. They must have local land use requirements and permitting. They assign all inspections, building standards, environmental requirements, and cleanup to local government, and business licensing and operational regulations that we would develop at the local level would be up to the city council. So what that really means to us is that the types of facilities that will be allowed in this jurisdiction, we would need to have a discussion on this number or the size of those facilities and what would be needed to serve the community, the standards for local operation, if there are any beyond those state regulations that you want to see implemented, considerations of the building requirements for these facilities that would be located in our jurisdiction, the appropriate placement of these facilities within our community, which is land use and where they might go, and the licensing and operational requirements and any community concerns. One of the items, for example, that was in the early drafts of regulations was a public hearing so that the public could be heard on individual applications or proposals. And with the shortened timeframe that the state has, those, that was something that was not be able to accommodate in the final regulations. So if you would want a public hearing on any of those, we would need to put those in our local regulations. So the decision points at this point for the city council were outlined as these. Our current moratorium expires on March 17th, 2014. So staff needs direction on what you would like us to do at this point. So the first question that we would have for you is, is direction to develop a medical marijuana program? Or if you would like us to bring back an additional moratorium? And, Your Honor, I'll leave it to you. I can either go through all of these questions at once and run it back, or we can take them one at a time, whatever your preference would be.
Could you just make one comment, just for clarification, which may need legal input on this? An extended moratorium with ad infinitum, or does it have to be a specified moratorium?
The direction we would ask for you, it really depends on the answer to the first question. If you direct us to develop a medical marijuana program, our next question is the timing. Do you want us to do it before the state process or after the state process? If you wanted to wait a year or something like that and have the state go through its process, which we know is imminent sometime this year, then we would need a moratorium not to accept any applications. And we would need to make sure that our land use did not allow for those types of facilities. If you wanted us to develop a program right away, then we would not need to extend a moratorium. If you chose not to have marijuana at all, then we would need some sort of document making it clear that we would not license any of those.
Can you answer, does supporting an extended moratorium preclude our future rights to these 10 entities?
I believe that would be a legal question. At some point in time, I believe that we need to give an answer to the state on whether the city of Las Vegas wants the rights to license and provide land use for those 10 dispensaries. The state law makes it clear that if a local government does not take what is assigned to them, that the county may absorb those into their pool. How that timing would happen and how those notifications would happen has not been delineated in any of the regulations that I have seen.
So how can we make a judgment, if I may, if in fact, if we could protect our rights to these 10 dispensaries, if we could, not that we might decide down the road not to use them, but how do we protect our right in the city if we extend our moratorium? Did the legislature, did this edict that came down give us specifically the right to protect the city with these 10 dispensaries if we continue the moratorium?
Madam Mayor, if I might jump in, in fact, Department of Planning. SB 374 allows a total of 40 dispensaries in Clark County and states that know more than 10 in each jurisdiction. When they open the cycle, they may issue certificates for all of those 40 dispensaries, or they may not. There is no way for us to guarantee a legal right to up to 10 dispensaries in the city of Las Vegas if we do not have legislation in place prior to the application cycle. So just in short, the answer to that would be SB 374 allows a certain number of dispensaries. Once those certificates are issued, we don't have the ability to come back and ask for more unless the state law is specifically amended to allow additional dispensaries.
But not additional, just hold on to those, the rights to those 10. By SB 374, if we do not act, is what you're saying? By SB 374, if we do not act, is what you're saying, we lose the right to those 10, which will then annul our to the county?
I don't believe that there's anything in the state law that guarantees us any right to those 10 dispensaries. So potentially, we could lose them, yes.
Your Honor.
Okay, Councilman?
We do have some help here, although we don't have legal counsel. We do have the sponsor of the bill in question. SB 374 is in attendance, Senator Richard Tick Sagerblum. He also had a heavy hand in writing the bill, and he shepherded it through the legislature. He is available for questions and may have opinions to express to you, but he's an attorney, and he's skilled in this stuff, so, you know, I think we should take advantage of his presence periodically. He's in the audience, and he's willing to help us.
And Mayor?
Yes, please, Councilman.
That being said, with your permission, welcome Senator Sagerblum. Good to have you here with us today. Not that I need to direct my questions to you through the mayor, to you, but to you, Ms. Diddleston. And let me just say blanket before I start asking Ms. Diddleston some questions to this council and to my mayor. I would prefer that the city of Las Vegas and Clark County work together to come up with a program and a plan for all of the details that are part of this Senator Sagerblum's bill, rather than the state do it or we wait for the state to do it. And no offense, Senator, or to my other colleagues who were previous statesmen. I think that the local governments need to be in charge of their, of their future, of where they're going, especially when the people of this state have voted twice. This is written into our constitution. It is very difficult. If we say no in the city of Las Vegas and another jurisdiction says yes, we're still dealing with the same issues. We're still dealing with the same people. We aren't the city of Las Vegas because we shy away from challenges. We're the city of Las Vegas because we lead, because we are examples of leadership, and we were elected to lead as a community and as members of this council. So that being said, Ms. Diddleston, I don't know if you can have, do you have enough time before our own self-imposed moratorium expires in March to come up with a program or a plan based on comments and direction from this council? That's my first question to the mayor.
Your Honor, our timeframe is very short. That's why we're here with you today. We have participated with the state. We are meeting regularly with the county and other local governments. We are doing a great deal of research, and if we get some clear direction from you, we will continue to work and do our best to bring back something as quickly as possible. Our greatest challenge is that we can draft concepts at the staff level, but in order to get an ordinance before you, that has to be turned into the legal ordinance form. So we've got some challenges ahead of us, but we would hope, within a reasonable timeframe, that we could get something before you for consideration.
Through the mayor, to you, Ms. Diddleston, by March? Or are we, should, in my mind, be considering extending our own self-imposed moratorium till May to give you more time to do that, working in conjunction with Clark County? So we have a seamless plan, and that's what I'm looking for, is that seamless plan across jurisdictional borders. So the same things apply here as they do in Clark County. Maybe we don't want to accept everything that the state is giving us the authority to accept. Maybe we limit the amount of dispensaries, the square foot of production. I'm just throwing this all out there. But I want you to tell me, as a council member, do you have enough time working with Clark County by our March deadline when our moratorium expires?
Your Honor, if I may?
Please.
No, we do not by March 17th.
Is May a better date?
May would be a much better date.
But you may have already lost the right to your 10 dispensaries by extending the moratorium till May.
May I just jump in real quickly?
Please.
One of the things that we do on a regular basis, we have dual-track activities going on. So let's say, for instance, you look at the program that Karen has identified here, and you direct us today to go forward in developing a program. We're going to go forward developing a program based on, hopefully, some questions to some further questions that we've identified in this presentation. That doesn't mean that we might not get to March 17th and say, we need another month because we haven't brought an ordinance to you for the permitting process that Karen is working to design that would then allow us to get ahead of the state, if you will, in their decision-making process so that they understand which applicants we've already vetted to begin with in their determination. That number may be four, it may be 10, it could be two. That's part of what we need to work through. This question is really, do you want us to design a program or not? And if the answer is no, we're going to wait and we're going to watch it all play out throughout the state process, then that's an answer for you to tell us. If the answer is yes, we have a lot of work to do, and that might include an extension of the moratorium for business licensing until we have the business licensing regulations in place based on your answers to the further questions. So I don't know if that helps you, Councilman Ross, and the rest of the council as you deliberate, but you could have both things happening simultaneously, and that would be something that we could bring back to you at the appropriate time.
Okay, Councilwoman Barlow?
Thank you. I'm looking at this as a three-pronged approach. Number one, the first question staff needs to know, from what I'm hearing, is whether or not this is something we want, whether or not this is something we want to do. If this isn't something we want to do, then there's no need to have any further conversation. So I believe we need to get that question answered first. Secondly, if in fact this is something we want to do, then we basically start down the track as to what that design and structure should be or could be moving forward. So staff is at a standstill until we answer the very first question, and that's whether or not this is something we want to do. And so I'm not sure if we need to make that a motion and put that in a motion, Mayor, in relation to thumbs up or thumbs down in order for us to open up this conversation, to go down the road that the, that Councilman Ross has alluded to. So I don't want us to put the cart before the horse before we answer the first question. And the first question is, is this something that the city of Las Vegas wants to do so that we can move forward? That's a question. I'm just putting it out there to see.
And is that question premature, based on the fact? And maybe Senator Sagerblum, if you could come to the microphone and also identify yourself, you know, there are two things in life that we really have no control over. One is paying our taxes, and the other one's death. And beyond that, everything's in our control. The question is, the first question is, not, in my opinion, do we lose rights to further involvement if we go for a continuing moratorium? Can we protect ourselves? Knowing death and taxes are the two immovables, we may not want to close ourselves out of something. And so do you, in your bill, can we protect ourselves to hold on to these 10 dispensaries, which are illegal at this point and a felony to have at this point? Because in 2016, we're going to have a new president, and Attorney General Holder's not going to be there anymore unless, for some untold reason, he's reappointed. So he's turning his eye away from what's going on today, and I know our attorneys and everybody is being inundated by everybody seeing the jobs and the profit and everything. Your bill, and could you, again, please state your name for the record so we know it's coming from you?
I'm coming from the terrible state. Yes, I'm Senator Tick Sagerblum, 1242 Park Circle, which is happening around the corner from the mayor's house. I would say this, fortunately, having written the law, we didn't foresee ever contingency, and everything's not totally 100% clear, but yes, if you extended the moratorium, I think you could be in danger of losing those 10 because the county is under pressure to make sure the 40 that we have authorized are in fact utilized. And if any jurisdiction has said, we're not sure what we want to do, the county is authorized to go ahead and take those back and either give them somewhere else or take them themselves, and they could end up with all 40 themselves.
Okay, if I may interject right here, if in fact we move forward with establishing some kinds of regulation, whatever they are, painting everything pink or making everything brown, whatever we do, and then at the point that we have come to this big discussion full circle and we don't want them, we can still give them away, correct?
Exactly.
So if we, the best way we can put ourselves in a no-lose situation, if, and to be able to have control over what has been given to us by the state, is to move forward with the regulations because we will lose them probably if in fact we extend the moratorium.
In my opinion, yes.
Yes, okay. Okay, so more questions here. I mean, I think those are the biggest issues. Yes, Council?
I appreciate Councilman Barlow's comments. And perhaps I didn't frame my words as eloquently as I would have liked to, but I think, again, and let me restate it differently, we need to be in control of our destiny. I mean, Senator has made it clear that, you know, there are other localities that will take these and use them, and again, I still think we, as the city, need to be in control of our destiny and not at the whim of Clark County. Not that that would be a bad thing, but I think we need to work collectively with them, but certainly the state. And now I am picking on the legislature, Senator. But I think we need to be in control of this. This is a local government issue. And Mayor, you mentioned the federal, the fact that it is, it's a felony. It's illegal. We all get that. I imagine states throughout the country in future legislative sessions will be doing the same thing that other states have done, just as this state has done twice, Senator, if I'm correct. It's just a matter of time till the federal delegation addresses this on a federal level. That being said, and I'm in receipt of the document you provided to us in regards to the letter asking the LCB to do some research on any municipalities or government officials doing their jobs and being prosecuted by the federal government under this law. There have been none.
Exactly.
And that's pretty important and significant for me to read.
And the governor signed this bill. I voted for it. If we go to jail, we're going to be all very happy company.
And I think Senator Hutchison.
Gene has an open prison, you know, there's plenty of room for all of you.
And Senator Hutchison was with you on the bill, so it'll be a bipartisan term in jail, if you will.
Absolutely. He can hold Sunday services for us all.
That'd be perfect. I'll attend as well. But that being said, Councilman Barlow, I think is on the money here. What do we, our primary question today is, are we satisfied with moving forward with some kind of program? And Mayor, I think your question just a few minutes ago, if we move forward, we still have the opportunity to say, no, this isn't what we want to do. And I think we always retain that ability.
And if we don't move forward, if we don't move forward, we lose it.
And if we don't move forward, we lose that. Again, if we're in a game and we don't want to lose our position on the field, and I don't, and I think that's significant at today's meeting, that we keep this ball moving in the right direction, at least forward, whether people think it's in the wrong direction or the right direction, we're still moving the ball forward because it's a mandate from the people of the state. I, for one, happen to believe in that process, and so I'd like to support that process and be the leaders we were chosen to be.
Mayor?
Councilman?
Thank you.
Here's Councilman Barlow.
And Councilman Ross, no, you are absolutely correct. I'm with you. I mean, in order to figure out how, in fact, this has to benefit the city of Las Vegas, if in fact we're put in a position to make a decision for or against, we have to make a decision first and foremost if in fact we're going to move forward, Mayor. So I'm going back to my initial question. I mean, do we just direct staff from the dais in relation to, you know, this is something that we're looking forward to continue to research, or do we want staff to stop right now? I mean, do we take that in the form of a motion to say yea or nay so that the conversation can stop or continue? That's the question that I have in relation to the question that has been posed by staff.
The only thing I would add to that, it really is very clear. If we don't go forward to develop a plan, we lose our rights. They will annul to the county, they will now have 30 dispensaries. So the question is, do we want to, right now, today, say, cut the umbilical cord and we're walking away from it?
Right.
Or do we want to play the game that's illegal and say, we want to hold on to this potential for ourselves and therefore start the process and give them all this work, which the next President of the United States may say, we're sending you all to Gene to go to prison because you have been in operating in a felonious state?
And I get that. I guess my question is the fundamental question. How do we direct staff whether or not we're going to move forward or pull back? That's the question that I'm asking right now. I'm not sure.
All right, can you do that, Mr. Fag?
I don't know how much clearer to get. Do we tell her from the dais? Do we vote on it as a body and say, you know, yes, we're moving forward? Or do we just tell her vocally, verbally, yes, we're moving forward, or no, we're not? Do I need to put that in a form of a motion?
Well, I think the question right now, I think Mr. Fag could answer exactly, specifically to that line item.
In terms of what type of direction we're looking for here, we are looking for...
Oh, wait, here we are, folks. Pay attention, please. This is the answer to the question.
What we are specifically looking for is direction from city council if we are to move ahead with a medical marijuana program or not.
Program.
So do we take that in the form of a motion to give them direction?
Well, let's have some more questions down there. Councilman Coffin?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, we had discussion in the summertime after we saw that the legislature had passed this bill. It was determined, you'll recall, there was a move to make it, the moratorium, a one-year moratorium at recommending committee. That was defeated and made a six-month moratorium so that we could think about it, so that we could decide what to do. And I've been thinking about it for six months, and I've decided what I want to do, and I didn't waste the time. Anyway, it's like somebody can make a motion. I can make a motion, but I think Councilman Barlow's moving toward making that motion. Be happy to do it, Ricky, if you don't want.
I'd like to.
But there's plenty of time to discuss it. You can either discuss it now, before you make a motion, or we can discuss it after a motion is made, but definitely enough time has passed.
What I'd like to do, because Councilwoman's been very patient, and she'd like to make a comment too, and I'm not sure down here. Oh, yes, everybody's anxious to make a comment before there's a motion, so Councilwoman, you get the priority.
I like the idea of a seamless approach, but this is supposed to be Clark County, and what is happening in the other city entities, for example, Boulder City? Where does Boulder City stand as far as being part of a seamless entity? What has Boulder City said so far?
My understanding at the staff level is that they are not going to provide land use and licensing for medical marijuana, but I have not seen any action by their city council. That does not mean that they have not taken any. Clark County has taken action to direct their staff formally to develop a medical marijuana program and proposed ordinances for them to consider. City of Henderson has implemented a moratorium while they study the issue, and I have not seen any action from North Las Vegas, and I have spoken to their staff, and they have not had any direction from their management either.
Thank you. Does that satisfy your question?
Yeah, it does. Sort of. I mean, it shows one entity is not in there, so whatever dispensaries they were going to get are going to be up for other people to get. I don't know how many.
Not just the county? If in fact they aggregate their rights, goes to the county?
Well, it goes to the county, yes, but evidently they're not worried, so the county then can allocate them to whomever they wish.
And there is no Boulder City. It's Henderson, Las Vegas, North Las Vegas, and the county.
And what, the city of Mesquite?
Mesquite. No.
There's no Boulder City?
The city, the Mesquite is a city.
Boulder City doesn't exist.
No, we do know that. Did they get their 10?
Boulder City, they haven't asked for it, no.
They haven't asked for it.
But they voted for it? All right, we're getting off of that. We'll just get more to profit over people. Okay, thank you. That's all I've heard all this afternoon is money coming, money coming.
One more comment. All right, we have one more comment, each to my right. Go ahead, Mayor Protem.
Okay. Seems like we've been kind of tiptoeing around the whole discussion of whether we should have marijuana in the city of Las Vegas, so I'm just going to get right to it. I'm going to give you my opinion. I've been doing a lot of research on this for the last six months as we've been going through it, and I will not support a medical marijuana program in the city of Las Vegas. So if you can indulge me, Mayor, I have, I want to read this because I want to base my decision on facts, and this is what I found out about medical marijuana. First of all, smoking marijuana is not a medicine. The United States Food and Drug Administration does not support the use of marijuana for medical purposes. Marijuana is actually listed by the FDA as one of four Schedule I dangerous drugs along with heroin, methamphetamine, and cocaine, and states it has a high potential for abuse and no currently acceptable medical use. The American Medical... The American Medical Association argues against medical marijuana, saying heavy cannabis use in adolescents causes persistent impairments, negative impacts, cognitive performance, lowers IQ, and is associated with increased rates of anxiety and psychiatric thought disorder. According to the American Psychiatric Association, there is no current scientific evidence that marijuana is in any way beneficial for the treatment of any psychiatric disorder. In contrast, current evidence supports a strong association of cannabis use with the onset of psychiatric disorders in adolescents and are particularly vulnerable to the harmful effects of cannabis on neurological development. The effects of marijuana also include addiction. According to the American Society of Addiction Medicine, does not find sufficient evidence to support the notion that the public health benefits of using the illicit drug marijuana outweighs the dangers to users and to their communities. According to the association president, Dr. Stuart Gitlow, public policies that support prevention and treatment for addiction should be the basis of our government's response to a chronic disease that affects 23 million Americans. This requires, however, that substance of abuses are not made easily available or made to seem less dangerous than they really are. The American Academy of Pediatrics is against medical marijuana. According to the National Institute on Drug Abuse, the scientific evidence is not sufficient for the smoking of marijuana plant to gain FDA approval, nor have there been enough clinical trials showing that marijuana benefits outweighs its risk. The Office of National Drug Control Policy does not endorse medical marijuana. The National Association of School Nurses does not endorse medical marijuana. In fact, there are several pharmaceutical drugs that have been developed that contain the similar chemicals found in the cannabis, cannabis plant, which is the chemical called cannabinoid or CBDs. These come in spray, pill, or oil form. I found ten pharmaceutical drugs based on marijuana with their names, trade names, manufacturers, cannabis-related properties, suggested medical use as an approval status. Unfortunately, it does not produce the high, which is the whole point of the THC portion of marijuana. So let's look at, let's look at marijuana. First of all, as been mentioned, marijuana is a felony federal crime, along with heroin, cocaine, and methamphetamine. The National Association of Assistant United States Attorneys, representing hundreds of federal prosecutors, recently sent a letter to the U.S. Attorney General, Eric Holder, to tell him his decision is wrong not to prosecute drug dealers to the full extent of the law. Smoking marijuana is about THC, which is the chemical that gets you high. According to former Congressman Patrick Kennedy, who's the chair of Project SAM, which is a smarter approach to marijuana, marijuana use saps motivation, perseverance, and determination. According to him, this country is on the brink of creating a massive marijuana industry that will inevitably target teens and other vulnerable populations. This conceptions about marijuana are becoming more and more prevalent. According to the National Institutes of Health, marijuana is addictive, reduces IQ, and contributes to car crashes. Physical consequences of smoking marijuana include respiratory problems, lung infections, and a diminished immune system. According to the Israeli Pharmacists Association, the effects of marijuana include anxiety, psychosis, drowsiness, problems with motor activity, increased blood pressure, heart attacks, cardiac death, stroke, damaged blood vessels, and decline in memory. This one I found very interesting. This is according to Lady Gaga, which some of you have heard. I have been addicted to marijuana, and it's ultimately related to anxiety coping, and it's a form of self-medication, smoking up to fifteen to twenty marijuana cigarettes a day. I was living on a totally other psychedelic plane, numbing myself completely. I just want to tell young kids to know that you actually can become addicted to it, and there's a sentiment that you can't. According to the National Institute on Drug Abuse, marijuana is an intoxicating drug that impairs memory motor function when smoked. Respiratory health, adolescent use of marijuana can cause permanent brain damage, including lowering of IQ. According to the National Drug Control Policy and the National Drug Control Strategy, marijuana, again, is listed as one of four dangerous drugs. So let's look at the, the impact on juveniles. Marijuana use with twelve- to seventeen-year-olds is highest in medical marijuana straits, states. More than one-third of twelfth graders in medical marijuana states got their pot from someone else's medical marijuana recommendation. Medical marijuana was approved in Vermont in 2004. Vermont has the highest percentage of marijuana use among twelve- to seventeen-year-olds in the nation. According to the governor in his recent State of the, State of the Speech to lawmakers, the crisis I'm talking about today is a rising tide of drug addiction and drug-related crimes spreading across Vermont. Oregon, with its liberal drug laws, currently has the nation's third-highest rate of marijuana use among twelve- to seventeen-year-olds. Percentage of kids in drug counseling for marijuana addiction has been increasing annually. According to the National Institutes of Health, one in six sixteen-year-olds who try marijuana will become addicted. It also states that exposure to marijuana for teenagers can cause brain, alter brain development. Getty Images Research shows that young pot smokers can be damaged, can be, young pot smokers could be damaging brain structures critical to memory and reasoning. According to a Northwestern University scientists study, teens who were, teens who were smoking marijuana found parts of the brain related to working memory appeared diminished in size. They observed that the shapes of brain structure related to short-term memory seemed to collapse inward or shrink from those using marijuana when compared to healthy adolescents. So let's talk about the, the chaos that occurs from medical marijuana if it's legalized. First of all, this is a scenario. We have a licensed doctor who recommends that his or her patient consume a Schedule I controlled substance that is smoked, which is not approved by anyone, which is not sold by pharmacy, without the doctor's knowledge of the strength or purity of the marijuana consumed and a mal, completely controlled by the patient. That is medical malpractice. Attorneys representing clients in marijuana businesses may face significant ethical issues that could result in losing their license to practice law. There are state bar associations, state bar associations have, have to decide what to do with attorneys who provide legal advice to people who engage in the commission of felony crimes. That's obviously what Brad Gerbik is dealing with right now. Banks may be engaging in money laundering when they accept cash for the sales of marijuana, which is federally, federally illegal. Many states across the United States are passing ordinances prohibiting medical marijuana in their jurisdictions. The Drug Enforcement Administration, state and local police, and any other federal agent can arrest, confiscate, and shut down a business connected to marijuana today. Marijuana currently is found in gum, candy, coffee, sodas, and cookies. What are the liabilities of local officials who develop and authorize medical marijuana businesses that violate federal law? THC stays, is documented to stay in your body not days, but weeks after it's ingested. What do we do with high-risk occupations who may be performing their occupation with THC in their system? The Law Enforcement Council of Washington County, Oregon, made up of police chiefs and district attorneys, gave the following statement. The Law Enforcement Council opposes the establishment of medical marijuana in the city and county limits of Washington County. Marijuana use is a serious public health concern and has negative implications for the welfare of our community. We believe it will harm the general welfare of our community because of the significant potential to increase marijuana use among our youth, placing a higher burden on emergency room care, drug treatment, and other healthcare systems, an increase in marijuana-related exposures, and increased illegal interstate drug trafficking. Marijuana impairment doubles the risk of, of deadly traffic crashes and is a major causal factor in high school dropouts. Medical marijuana dispensaries are harmful to the surrounding community and its residents and constitute a public nuisance contrary to our community values, which we support in Washington County as a safe place to live, work, and raise a family. According to researchers at Columbia University, fatal crashes involving marijuana have tripled in the last decade. If this trend continues, according to them, in the next five to six years, drugs will overtake alcohol to become the most common substance involved in deaths related to impaired driving. And I just heard today, what was interesting, is CVS is, is taking all tobacco products out of their pharmacy all over the country, and then we're going to turn around and open up businesses that smoke something that's even worse than tobacco. So what is this really about? This is about public opinion, creating marijuana into medicine. This is really about legalizing marijuana. Marijuana advocates say they are already crafting the necessary initiative language for Nevada to approve the use of pot for recreational purposes. And really, this is about people making a lot of money in the marijuana business. According to the Washington Times, multi-million dollar private investment groups have emerged and are posed, poised to become, in their words, big marijuana. According to the drug policy expert Mark Kleiman, who studied potential issues of legal marijuana and was testifying in front of the Seattle City Council, he pointed out last year, the only way to sell a lot of pot is to create a lot of potheads. This is also seems to be about government trying to increase their, the revenue that they can generate by legalizing marijuana and taxing it. Most experts expect social, expect social costs ensuing from an increase in marijuana use will greatly outweigh any tax revenue. So because of all that, I mean, I've been told already, you got to get on board, medical marijuana is coming, you got to do it. Well, I'm not getting on board. I don't think it's a good idea. I'm not going to support it. And I just assume, wait and see what happens in Washington and Colorado because it's not looking good in those states right now. So that's my statement on that.
Thank you, Mayor.
Councilman Coffin?
Thank you, Your Honor. Okay, thank you. I, with all due respect to my colleague, he feels like a substantial portion of the population does, which is, after hearing this kind of doctrine we've been hearing for thirty, no, say, three or four generations, since this drug became popular and known, you know, in other fashions, through movies and frightful stories, there's always been drug addiction, certainly. And marijuana, I'm not sure about that. I'm not a scientist, so I'm not going to guarantee anything can happen or not happen with the use of a drug of any kind, even caffeine. But certainly, if, if I was to believe the entire scenario as painted by my colleague from Ward Four, cats and dogs would be dancing together in the streets after this passed because surely everybody would be different. And I just know that won't happen. But I do know that for sure, everything that the good councilman has said is true about the abuse of any substance, including caffeine. You know, I have told the entire council, which means the entire world, and, you know, that I, I use painkillers for my advanced pain because of an auto accident thirty-some years ago, which has, you know, turned my spine into kind of a piece of rock. So it's an irritation that tires me and is a distraction. So I use prescription painkillers. You know that you don't have to have a license. You don't have to have a card to go carry around to get prescription painkillers. And people really get addicted to painkillers. All you need is a doctor's prescription. Well, I don't have to carry the prescription with me to prove that I am legal, but yet our regulations are going to require that, so that a person is going to be, is going to be thinking about it. The likelihood of abuse is, and I, and I think just commonsensically would say that did probably be a lot less with those who use medical marijuana than those who abuse marijuana. Now, there, any drug, as I said, I'm stipulating, it can be abused. And most of the statistics and most of the harms that have been cited so far today have to do with abuse. And, you know, maybe the jury's out in some cases, but one thing the jury is not out on, and that is that these kinds of drugs, whether that be on a schedule, as all the prescription drugs are, as is marijuana, they all have some mood-altering properties. And it's the mood-altering properties that assist a person who is in pain, whether it's chronic, transient, constant, of varying degrees from one to ten. It has an effect of some kind to relieve the results of the pain. It doesn't stop the cause of the pain. Nothing can, except perhaps some surgical or some invasive techniques and maybe even some non-invasive therapies that are working. But really, if, if there are thousands and probably hundreds of thousands of people in, in the state, let's say, out of three million people, got to be a few thousand anyway that are addicted to painkillers. I'm sure there are more people addicted to painkillers that are prescribed by a doctor than there are people addicted to marijuana, if you can be addicted to marijuana. So I'm one of those people that uses prescription painkillers, and I don't need a registration card. I simply could go to a doctor. I, I go to a pain management doctor. And I would think that a pain management doctor is the kind of physician who would be, should be the kind of people that prescribe marijuana for people as an assistance in the distraction from their pain, or as a way to reduce the fatigue associated with the constant pain. There's all kinds of things you can use. Point is, it's a distraction, and I'm not a doctor, I can't say why it works. I'm not a chemist, I can't tell you which synapses don't fire and which neurons connect to other neurons. No, it just seems that it works for people. Just as we cannot tell why some herbs work, we don't know. Most medicines are derived from some sort of an herb that at one time or another was growing wild, and people found a beneficial effect from it, so therefore a company latched on to the idea, well, I'm going to create a synthetic version of this herb, and there, it ends up in a pill, which costs a lot of money. Okay, here's, here's a month's supply of my medicine here. It's called hydrocodone, ninety pills, that's three per day. I've been on this prescription now for ten years, and you know what? I'm using less now. I was originally prescribed four per day, now I'm down to three a day because I diligently stretch, try to exercise, and I've been to three different courses of physical therapy. There is no cure, but hopefully I can even reduce it. On some days, I only take one. But on some days, I might have to take four or even five. It just depends. I used to talk to Senator Ray Rossen, who was my, he was a dentist, but he was like my physician right hand up in Carson City, and Ray used to say, you know, never let it get so bad that you have to take more than you need because that's what, you know, you're talking about breakthrough there, and that's where you get into abuse. So I've always heeded his advice, as any other doctor would say, and I have actually reduced my consumption, even though the pain is worse because I've learned a better diet, a better exercise regimen, and so on. And as I age, and the arthritis and stenosis in my spine gets worse, and the pain will increase, I will find other ways to distract myself from that, and I, and I will use some version of marijuana as one of those things to try. I don't see any harm in it. If I've already been using prescription painkillers at the highest level for ten years, what's the harm? I do know that I don't want to smoke it. I smoked marijuana, the first time I ever smoked it, I was thirty years old or thirty-one years old. That's how square I was, and that's growing up here in Las Vegas. And the last time I smoked it was probably thirty-two years ago, so in between, I smoked it eight or nine times, maybe ten, in the course of ten years. That's all. And I couldn't stand smoking it because, to me, it's bad for your lungs. Now, people make it so that you can eat it, and I think that's just fine. And, you know, you have all kinds of strengths, you have all kinds of labels that are pretty silly, and I know that when we get into the nitty-grittiness as far as designing how these things are to appear and to be packaged, you know, I don't want them to look like anything a child would want to use. I certainly don't want to see lollipops. I don't want to see the kinds of things that would attract somebody. So I kind of feel like, you know, we have to be very, very careful. But that's been thought out. That's been worked out. Legislature's thought about this, and you know why, they just finally passed the bill. There's been a lot of conversation over the last twelve years since, since it passed. And lord, marijuana has been an issue for generations, so it's been thought about. We're not breaking any new ground with anything we might say here today. There are pain sufferers out there who are much worse off than me. A person in stage-four cancer, let's say, bone cancer, my God, you can't kill the pain. You've got to inject it right into your veins every hour, and you'd rather be dead. Well, I don't think that's the right thing for people. Give them a chance to try something different. Give them a chance to distract them, under medical supervision, which is what SB 374 says we can do. I think it's, I think it's a mistake to just delay it to, to, you know, essentially stall this thing out, and then the legislature meets again, and then they get mad at us because we didn't take advantage of the opportunity they afforded us. Because it's not for us, it's for our constituents. No one's going to force anybody to take marijuana, smoke it, drink it, imbibe it, inject it. No. People who need it know they need it. People who are addicted to, to painkillers had better try this and hopefully save their lives before the painkillers kill them because it will destroy their lives. lives before the painkillers kill them because it will destroy their liver. And so for that reason, I intend to use this and see if it works for me, Your Honor. I think it's important, and I frankly, I don't want to delay. I am I am a subscriber to the Councilman Barlow theory. Let's move on. Let's vote up or down. Give the city manager and her team the opportunity to start working. I don't want to see it slow-walked. If this passes today, I I would hope that we don't then start mumbling about how many, you know, people can dance, cats can dance on the head of a pen. Let's let's get it moving and do something. We we want, we complain all the time about getting authority to operate from the legislature. And what a what a snub in the face it would be to the legislature, which has undertaken the political risk of tackling the subject and actually having votes. And it wasn't unanimous, but it was there was a bipartisan effort here to pass it, and it did pass. But they took a political risk. They stuck their necks out. They could be chopped off for that. So now then, if we want more authority, shouldn't we at least have the vote to determine whether or not we feel that we are responsible? So I think that there's a test here for us, not just a test for us as our humanitarian instincts tell us we ought to be helping our constituents, but also a test in the eyes of the legislature. If they have taken a risk, they have simply asked us to take a risk too. If it was worthwhile to you to ask for the ability to raise taxes or change your spending habits or not raise taxes or do anything, or, you know, even not have to have so many permissions from the state to do things, and we pass up an opportunity like this, what kind of success will we have in the next legislature? I think none. I think we'll be sent packing home because we didn't have the guts to do what they did. So, you know, I still don't see the harm in allowing this to happen, and my God, we heard all right, public officials are not going to get canned, they're not going to get indicted, they're not going to get prosecuted, lawyers are not going to get prosecuted. You know, murder's a federal crime, and lawyers don't get in trouble because they defend murderers or because they write statutes relating to means of modifying murder, you know, a lawyer that defends a murderer. My God. Why, under that line of thinking that we can't touch something because we might get swilled by it, then nobody'd have any defense. So I I think the hundreds and hundreds, probably thousands, of attorneys in local governments, state governments, who have worked on this kind of legislation, if somebody hasn't been indicted or hauled off as a perp somewhere in the country over the last 20 years since this has been happening, I think we I think we'd have heard about it, and it hadn't happened. That's why I'm I am absolutely frustrated with the actions of our city attorney, and I hope that if this passes today, that he will move forward without regard to his own personal welfare and represent our actions as a council. That's what he's paid for, and that I think that's what the citizens have said we should appoint him for. So, Your Honor, I'm going to vote for it, but I don't want to step on everybody else's right to speak. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. What I'm going to do right now, before both of you get back pains and need to go see Councilman Coffin and get hydrocodone, please do sit down, but don't go far away from the microphone so you can rest. What I'm going to do at this point is open it up to public comment. What I ask you each to do, I'm going to limit it to two minutes. I'm going to ask you not to repeat something that's already been said. You come with something that's new, that might give more insight to the council, and once you sit down, it's not yo-yo time to come back up again, which I know, you know, things click off, and I don't mean to be rude or anything, but I know we could sit here into the wee hours, not yet, please, one second, that we want to go ahead. We're at this point, it's a question of, do we want to continue the moratorium, or do we want to put our staff and ask our city manager to have the staff go ahead with preparing a program of regulations, period? It does not mean anybody on this council, except as been vocalized, is against or for marijuana. It is simply a vote at this point, continue the moratorium, or absolutely tell our staff to go ahead with developing a program, which at the end of that period of time may mean that that program will be denied and we will not move forward, or we may continue to do so. So at this time, city clerk, two minutes per person. Please state your name. We don't need your address, just your name. I don't want to take more time away from your two minutes. Thank you.
My name is Anthony Hardes. Mayor, I want to say this really quick, because, you know, I try to talk real fast. I never smoked a cigarette or anything in my life. The point is, I don't even take aspirin, but we are not all the same. That's another thing I want to get particularly clear. They say twins are identical in my foot. Everybody's slightly different, whatever. But the truth is, is that all my life, what I didn't do and other people chose to do, I can't blame everybody else for what they do. That's all I'm just saying. All my life, I stay away from various type things, but I'm just an individual, okay? I never smoked a drug or anything in my life. Like I said, I don't do that, but that has nothing to do with the rest of the world. I'm an individual, and so I just want to let people know, I'm not trying to impress my way of life on any particular anything or anybody. I don't take advice from people, and I don't give advice to people. I found out those two things alone can be destructive to people because a lot of people are weak. Some people are, you say boo, and they they run for it, whatever, you know? So what I'm just saying, Mayor, is the better part of my two minutes is that they legalize alcohol after probation, whatever, and cigarettes and whatever. What I'm trying to say, the day will come, they probably will legalize marijuana or whatever going forward. The objective is, it doesn't matter, there's going to be a certain group of people going to use certain things, whether it be legal or illegal, and that's just a part of the natural order of society. It goes that way. You know, what side of the game that you're on. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to ruin your day. Thank you.
No, and thank you so much. Please, next, come forward, please. Make sure, as you give your name, that your light's on on the microphone. Thank you.
Michael McAuliffe, to address several points. 10 pharmaceuticals that you found with cannabinoids in them. That belies the claim that there is no medicinal use. If there's stuff out there, however it's synthesized or made, there is clearly a pharmaceutical use. Just yesterday, you mentioned ONcop. Mr. Botticelli testified before Congress and admitted that cannabis is safer than alcohol, a position that the president himself took just in an interview recently. Efficacy studies have not been held because the DEA prevents it, and the DEA and the and the state and local drug warriors and the drug treatment places all have a vested financial interest in keeping this prohibited against the sciences, so they don't allow the science. No one is talking about pot for kids here, and it should be parents that bear the responsibility of safeguarding dangerous things in their home, whether that be guns or booze or pharmaceutical medications of any sort. The DOJ is currently drafting regulations and guidelines to allow for banking of this industry because local governments want to be able to get their fair share of tax revenue. And so it's not going to be a cash business forever. As far as staying in your system, I've heard it on good authority from multiple people that chocolate cake stays in your system and in your body for years after you eat it. You know, lots of things, we are, everything that we have eaten. And so, you know, to single this one substance out and saying it has undue effects for greater periods of time, absurd. Pharmaceuticals, you know, you talk about drugs being a threat. True. Industrial pharmaceuticals are the single biggest scourge in America today, and where are kids getting it? Yeah, so off their parents' shelves. But, you know, this is a substance which is demonstrably safer. There has no toxicity to it, and so there's an argument to be made that these kind of alternatives would would be safer if the kids get to it, which they should not, and the parents should safeguard that. Councilman Coffin says SB 74 says what we can do. Well, the voters 13 years ago said, we must do this. We must make this available. And and with all due respect to Lady Gaga, National Geographic said that it is less addictive than caffeine, and I trust National Geographic over Lady Gaga. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And what I'm going to do is you come up, and the bell goes off, which you may not hear. I will do this so you know that means wind up, you're at the end. All right, please. And again, your name, and we won't take that from you.
Good afternoon, Your Honor, members of the council. My name is Raymond Fletcher. I'm using this for my notes. I know how he despises electronic devices. Please forgive me. United States Congressman Stephen Cohen, during a federal marijuana hearing, stated, "It is ludicrous, absurd, crazy to have marijuana in the same level as heroin or cocaine." Marijuana does not predict the addiction that some may claim. Marijuana, matter of fact, is not addictive. The CDC states that only one or two people in 2002 died because of direct use of marijuana. Over 100,000 people in that same year died because of use of alcohol. Some of the some of the issues with prescription medications, gastrointestinal ulceration, bleeding, severe deadly vascular problems, along with heart attacks, stroke, euphoria, lowered blood pressure, nausea, pupil discoloration, anorexia, constipation, dizziness, headaches, insomnia, nausea, sweating, I can go on and on and on. But the fact of the matter is, big pharmaceutical companies are winning. Back in the 20s, we had prohibition. We didn't have alcohol. Alcohol was bad. But elected officials found out, oh, we like getting tipsy and having fun. No one is saying you have got to smoke marijuana, Your Honor. There are other forms of using the medical marijuana, such as suckers, brownies, various other things. I ran into a gentleman the other day while doing my laundry, and we had a conversation about medical marijuana. He told me that he went to California, set up a P O. box, went to Social Security, got Social Security card and everything, and getting his medical marijuana in California, yet he lives here in Nevada, around the corner from me. How many residents are doing that? Colorado reported over $1.2 million in taxes in the month of January alone collecting on marijuana. Maybe we need to really look at it.
Thank you very much. Next, please.
Hello, Vicki Higgins. First, I want to say thank you to Mr. Coffin. I appreciate your support and your open-mindedness. The whole community has really appreciates your efforts to clear this issue up. There is abuse potential to cannabis, of course, as with any item that people are using to reduce their pain. I myself survive on cannabis. There is medical use for this. I've been through many, many handfuls and many different therapies of drugs, trying to kill the headache that I had for 10 years. I ended up having brain surgery. As a result of all the medicines and all the pain pills and all the all the different therapies that they gave me, I can't eat, I can't hold on to any weight, I have fibromyalgia. When I have the bad headaches, yes, I use the narcotics, but I don't have to use as many because in using the cannabis in conjunction with it makes a big difference. And I'm sorry, I'm getting emotional because we've been walking around feeling like criminals. You're indicating that we're not true patients. I myself have been in this community many years. There are many patients who are in dire need of the ability to access this different, the oils are proven to help assist with cell reproduction, and I don't know what studies you're reading, sir, but I've read a lot of studies that say there is medicinal qualities to cannabis, and there's been many proven studies. I have a folder outside, three inches thick with studies, and that's just the ones I've printed. If you're interested, sir, I'll be glad to get you those studies. Please, don't make us suffer any longer than we have. We don't want to be criminals. This is why we're asking for you and helping to give you what information we can to assist us as patients so we don't have to feel like criminals. Please, move this along. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, please.
Hi, I'm Lance Frank. I just want to give a supporting statement about medical marijuana and recreational marijuana. Colorado, at its current pace, is set to break 100 million in tax revenue this year. That's 40 million is what they did in alcohol tax revenue. California already counts on over 100 million in tax revenue for medical marijuana. Numerous independent studies have been conducted by UCLA, Huffington Post, CNN, and many more, as long as well as police stations across the nation, and there's no significant link between a spike in crime and the legalization of medical marijuana. According to a recent Gallup poll, 58% of Americans support legalization of marijuana. I'm a United States Air Force veteran. I was a federal air marshal for five and a half years. My first novel was published in 2007. Since 2009, I produced five films. My latest one got released by AMC theatrically nationwide. I'm also a medical marijuana patient. Since I've moved to Las Vegas, I've met retired police officers from Las Vegas who suffered debilitating or terminal diseases that use medical marijuana. I've met men and women returning home from war, fellow soldiers, who suffer from PTSD, and the only thing that they can find relief with is medical marijuana to help calm them. I've met people who were addicted to painkillers for years and not able to get out of bed, who now use medical marijuana, and it's the one thing that helps them enjoy their day. So my question is, if we can help, why don't we? Let's take direct action to structure something, to get this legally licensed, and allow people safe access to their medications. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street. I believe that you should go forward on this simply because I'm a constitutionalist. The Constitution of the United States only guarantees one thing, and that's majority rule. That's it. And this, all these laws were pushed down to us through a convoluted, corrupted interpretation of the Commerce Clause of the Constitution, and it's ridiculous. I don't even think there ought to be any taxes on it. I mean, this is it's majority rule. The people voted. That's it.
Thank you very much. Next, sir. I saw you come up. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Your Honor. Councilmembers, for the record, my name is William Horn, and full disclosure, I'm a state assemblyman in District 34, serving capacity as a majority leader in the Assembly, but I also have a client that's interested in this industry. And I will state briefly, Your Honor, that while my friend, Councilman Anthony, and I can debate this in private on and on, there is the issue on focusing on the purpose that the state legislature sent it down. It's because there was a failure to act over 10 years ago when it was placed in this constitution. And we finally got it done, and we sent it down with enough provisions in there to allow local municipalities to fashion it for their zoning purposes and licensing, to where they could provide a safe access for these patients to get this this medicine. And to them, it is a medicine. Whether what other side you're on, to them and their prescribers, this is a medicine. It's, your your position is misplaced if you think that walling off the city of Las Vegas, that your citizens aren't going to be using it as a medicine. They will still be using it, but the fact of walling off the city will only make it more difficult for these patients to obtain it. They'll have to drive further, send their caretaker further out to get the medicine that we have said as a state that it's legal to have. All the other arguments on addiction and the scourges of drug use, et cetera, I think are fair arguments to have if you're going to have those arguments in the context of overall legalization of cannabis. But that's not the discussion we're having now. We're talking about how do we get medicine to the appropriate patients in a in a safe and efficient manner, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Senator.
Hello, I'm Stephen Cooksey. You'd expressed concern about opening yourselves or other city staff up to possible legal action from the federal government, and I understand that concern. You don't want to put anyone you're in charge of in any trouble. But Jan Brewer had the same concern in Arizona, and she filed a lawsuit, trying to seek clarification on that. The Department of Justice told her she had nothing to worry about, there was no threat, and the suit was dismissed. So if any of you had any reservations based on any kind of liability to yourselves or any of your staff, that's something you really shouldn't concern yourself with.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hello, my name is Jennifer Solis. You have a system within you called an endocannabinoid system. If you weren't meant to ingest any cannabinoids, then why would you have it? That's all my comments.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Kirk Dukach, Las Vegas, Nevada. I'd like to address I'd like to address the issue of addiction. It's non-addictive unless you want to say that I'm addicted because I like to feel good and not be in pain. Because two years ago, I was on seven different pain medications and anti-anxiety medications. Now I use zero pills a day. I use nothing but cannabis. Okay? So yes, I am addicted because I enjoy feeling good and living a pain-free life. You know, that's the only addiction there is to this. Otherwise, it's purely habitual, which is same thing as drinking coffee or waking up in the morning. That's a habit I like to have. You know, so there is no addiction to this. That's ridiculous. And as for being afraid of the federal government coming in, come on, we have prostitution, we have gambling, we have 24-hour alcohol. You're afraid of a plant.
None of the gambling's legal and the alcohol's illegal at this point.
But sports betting? None of this stuff was legal when we passed these laws.
Right. I really appreciate your comments.
It's a battle-born state. Let's hold true to ourselves. Thank you.
Thank you. Next. Bruce, I know you're going to speak. Don't make us wait till 9 o'clock. You're not going to speak? I know it. Just make sure you have all your notes together. Not that big fat thing either. Come on, Bruce. You can't do it in two minutes, right? Anyone else? Before I close the public hearing, you are going to kick yourself, Bruce, tonight that you didn't stand up. Everybody that's watching this program, again and again, that's Bruce Gale, who's electing not to speak. Big challenge, big chance. Okay? All right, I'm going to close the public hearing unless there's someone else. And we really appreciate your comments. I mean, that's, you know, we need to know what you feel. We've all had innumerable phone calls, letters, texts. I don't know about tweets.
Yes, tweets. I want to say something.
Oh, wait, we have some tweeting here.
You knew I had to say something, Mayor, about the tweeting.
He's our leading twit.
(LAUGHING). A. Crowe, I hold.
I'm just being reminded I did close the public hearing there, just in case you're forgetting while we're joking up here. It's your turn. Go back.
Thank you, Mayor. In my endeavor and other council members' endeavor to be more socially adept, adapted, I want to do a shout-out to my friends at Wedgie's. I did run a Wedgie's, unofficial Wedgie's poll on this item, and out of 61 votes, 80% have approved the city of Las Vegas moving forward with medical marijuana. There were 20% that did say no. So there is a faction out there that doesn't support that, and that's absolutely understandable. But it's just interesting how many people pay attention to the city of Las Vegas, not only on KCLV Channel 2 or watching us online, but also following us on social media. I wanted to share that. Thank you, Mayor.
And I notice over the years that your laptop has diminished and diminished the most, the most, thinnest. Look at that iPad. Is that beautiful? He loves to carry it around, so no wonder you're doing it everywhere. It's great. Okay, any more? Yes, Councilman Beers.
Thank you, Your Honor.
This is Ward 2, for those of you who don't know.
Still reeling a little bit that comment about the chocolate cake hit pretty close to home.[804.63][804.63](LAUGHING). I'll be in support of the city moving forward with this, not because I'm advocating that people smoke marijuana. I don't advocate that people drink alcohol or smoke tobacco, but I wouldn't want to make either of those illegal either, particularly with the medicinal angle on this. Clearly, there are people who find relief to very real painful situations. So I will be in support, Your Honor.
Thank you. I will now turn to my left.
Thank you, Mayor.
And before you make, are you about to make a motion there?
Well, go ahead.
I just want to say one quick thing, that I really believe I do not want to be caught in a situation of death or taxes. I want to keep the options of the city open. I do have a relative who does use medical marijuana in another state. I'm not entirely convinced, nor am I convinced on the other side. But I think it's our responsibility always to keep the options of what we do open and don't want to close the door. We are not necessarily going to move forward after the program and the development of what is going to come, perhaps, if this passes, whether the option at that point, we still have the option to move forward, hold on to the 10 dispensaries or whatever else has been given to us through the state legislature. So my personal opinion is, I always like options open. I want the most knowledge about what we do all the time, want to be fair, want to protect our citizens, and this is about, at that point, medical marijuana. It's not about a free state at this point. We're not talking about open marijuana. And I do respect the judgment of our legal advice, that this is, in fact, we are in a situation where the, what is it called, the Controlled Substance Schedule 1, whether it belongs in that Schedule 1 or in 2 or some other schedule, the reality is, at this point, marijuana's in Schedule 1, which makes it a felony to do anything. But by the opportunity given to us, the state, at the point that that veil has been lifted, and each state can deal with marijuana as they see fit for their state, I want to protect our rights here. So, Councilman Barlow.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank my colleagues for their comments, and to each and every one of you that came and spoke today, because this most definitely is a very educational opportunity for us all. I've said this in private meetings, and I'll say it now in a public meeting, that the conversation of medical marijuana is the new prohibition of the 21st century. I truly believe that. Medical marijuana, in the national scope of the conversation, is the new prohibition of the 21st century. My colleague, Mayor Pro Tim, shared some very compelling arguments, and a lot of those arguments I agree with 100%. I really do. Being raised in an urban community, I escaped the opportunities that have veiled itself in the peer pressures of smoking marijuana. I've never smoked marijuana a day in my life, and I don't plan on ever smoking marijuana ever in life. However, I have done countless research, and I know all about the recreational side of marijuana because the community in which I was born and raised in had plenty of it. And having conducted a lot of research now on the academic side, I see that there's a clear distinction between the recreational use and the medical medicinal use. Mayor Pro Tim, as I mentioned, brought out a lot of great, relevant facts that I stand behind. A lot of points were made in his commentary that I agree with, and I paused for a moment just to think, what side of the aisle should I be on in relation to this? The academic side of me says that there should be more research conducted. So how will there be more research conducted if, in fact, we stop today? Moving forward to conduct additional research doesn't hurt anyone because it's still illegal. But to find out more information puts us in a better position so that at some future day, we'll have this item of discussion back before this dais in this legislative body to make the determination as to whether or not that's something that we want to continue to move forward with or stop at that future date. So I would rather this city, this body, be in a position to keep all of its options open while further research is conducted. I'm not advocating for medical marijuana, and I'm not against it either. For or against, I want more research. And in order for me to receive that, we must continue to keep this conversation open, transparent, and more research needs to be conducted in the process. My motion will be to move and direct staff to further their research in an effort to develop a medical marijuana program within the boundaries of the city of Las Vegas while working with the County of Clark in an effort to decrease and/or eliminate any redundancies within the proposed ordinances. That will be coming back before this council. So, Mayor and Council, that is my motion. And in closing, I'll once again state that the medical marijuana conversation is truly the prohibition of the 21st century. Thank you.
Thank you. And there is a motion. That was a motion. But it's not coming.
Madam Mayor, could I say something?
Certainly, and I think City Clerk would like you just simplistically, if you would, Councilman Barlow, just the motion.
I move to direct staff to develop a medical marijuana program and to work in conjunction with the County of Clark, being that the laws need to be structured somewhat synonymous to eliminate any redundancies, if at all, at all costs. That will be my motion.
Yes, Councilwoman Cartanian, please.
First, I wanted to compliment our Councilman Anthony. You did the magnificent job in the research. I know that kind of research is not easy to do, and really, you out-researched all of us, so I wanted to compliment you on that. And Senator Tick Seegerblum, you and I have been, we've had a good and a very deep friendship for many years, and you and I have fought together often for those who were treated unjustly. And as I explained to you, however, in the meeting, you put me in a quandary, my good friend put me in a quandary. And so I have to say today that I'm not comfortable using tax monies and city staff to develop regulations within the city of Las Vegas for licensing medical marijuana establishments, as long as marijuana remains a Schedule 1 Controlled Substance and continues to be a felony under federal law. And I realize we're not voting, well, I guess we are voting in a way to legalize medical marijuana. That's what, well, what are you saying in your motion? You say just directing staff?
No. Just for point of clarification.
I realize we're not voting today to legalize medical marijuana, but that's how I feel. I'm very uncomfortable, and I know that oftentimes I don't agree with the federal government. I have fought them hard in many, many instances, but I took an oath, I reread the oath to Tick more than once, and I feel it supports my feeling of uncomfort. So I just wanted to make that statement. Thank you.
And Mayor, if you don't mind, just so that I may be clear, and I understand the councilwoman's position and moving forward, but my motion is not to legalize medical marijuana. My motion is to direct staff to conduct further research in order to bring back a program that the staff feels will benefit for or against the city of Las Vegas in relation to whether or not we should move forward at some future date to legalize it. So I'm voting, my motion is for more research to be conducted.
I understand it, and through you, Mayor, I understand that, Vicki. I was just trying to be sure that that was the way, because I wasn't sure with all the talk that we had made the distinction, and I know we're not voting to legalize medical marijuana, but my feelings remain the same because basically, we're setting the whole stage to move in that direction, and after that's going to come, you know, recreational marijuana, and we know that. And I just feel with the law the way it is, that's how I would vote.
And you must vote then, because I see we're waiting. And Councilman Mayor Pro Tim wants to clarify?
I just want to be clear on a motion, just so everybody out there understands this. So your motion is not to move forward with medical marijuana in the city of Las Vegas. Your motion is to direct staff to put a program together so we can vote on it sometime down the road, on a yes or no. So when we leave, if that motion passes today, these folks still do not have medical marijuana in the city of Las Vegas.
Correct.
Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, I just want to make sure they all understand that.
Right.
Okay, very good. Do you understand that, City Manager?
I got it.
Okay.
And I want to thank you, Mr. Fagin, Mrs. Duttleston. I know what lies ahead of you. It's a lot more work. And Ms. Fatwell, please give them some more staff.
Mayor, I know you have to post this vote, and you may not want to go any further than this today, but there are several other questions that we really do need to have answered, or else we're designing multitudes of programs.
Without question.
So, you know, that's just, maybe we--
If I may interject, if I just may interject, that goes back to my initial--
Correct.
--question for us to do a thumbs up or thumbs down. Therefore, if it's thumbs up, then we start to answer those additional questions.
Correct.
If, in fact, this body says no, there's no need to move in that direction. That's why I started to ask the question initially, early in this conversation.
Right. Thank you.
Okay, there's a motion. It was voted, and you please post it. No. And the motion carries. So you are charged, and again, we will be in a lot of dialogue going forward. So I want to thank you all who came to participate.
But that's just step, that's just step one.
Correct.
Just for point of clarification, because there's still, now that this has moved forward for staff to conduct additional research, there's more specific line items now within that vote as to directing staff accordingly. So I just wanted to at least--
But I really want to thank all of you who've been passionately involved with this and will be. So it's a long time ahead, but at least we know March 17th. Is that St. Patrick's Day?
Yes, it is.
All right, well, that's the deadline. So we're moving forward and have protected ourselves, so we'll see you on St. Patrick's Day or after.
Well, actually, Mayor, if it's--
No, we're not done.
We have several more slides to go through that will actually help us.
Many more.
If we could, if the council will indulge us, it would be helpful if we could at least go through the rest of the presentation--
Yes, please do.
--now that we've been given this initial direction. That'll help us focus our efforts towards the 17th.
Excellent. Yes, please continue.
Thank you, Your Honor. Again, for the record, Karen Duttleston, Business Licensing Manager. We just, we have a series of questions that we just need some general feedback from you all to make sure that in our proposals, we bring back to you options of the types of things that are of concern to you as we develop this. So our first question is timing. I did just get a report from the county commission discussion this morning. Their staff was directed to develop their regulations now and try to bring them back something to start considering in March or April. So the first question we have is around timing. Not only, when do you expect to see these, is it a high priority? We produce them now for you before the state process goes into place and we get a notification that they're accepting applications at the state or after? The other question that might go along with that is, do you want to see applications come in to the city before they would go into a state process?
Please.
Okay, two questions, I guess. Ms. Duttleston, you're asking the city council for your direction. One, do we want this program developed before the state comes out? Yes, in my opinion. I'm one vote on this, Council. Yes, in my opinion, and you'll have to poll the other council members. In regards to the applications going to the city instead of the state, yes, again, I still think we need to be in control of our destiny. We need to be in control, just as we are in control of any other business license in the city of Las Vegas, eliminating the need for the state to be part of that. But, that being said, I don't want us to do it alone. As Councilman, included in his motion, earlier motion, we need to do this with Clark County so there's seamless regulation across borders, so that we're working together with them, they're working together with us. Mayor, council members, that would be my direction to Ms. Duttleston and Mr. Fag.
I'd like to ask a question here. What are the advantages of going first? What are the advantages to having the state go and we come in after? I mean, are we wasting a lot of time? Do we have any idea which way would be the best way for us to go from your position, having been involved with this?
Having been involved with this, I think there's two questions at the local level that we have to answer. One, especially when you think about dispensaries, and so I use that as an example, is where are they going to be located in your community? Are they going to be in one place or spread out? Are they going to be in one place or spread out? If the state were, to example, to go first, and they get 100 applications for dispensaries, and they send you back their top-ranked 10, they could all be in the same place when you all may want to make a different decision than that. You also have a privileged license process, and we would recommend a privileged license process for medical marijuana, where you look at the backgrounds and you look at the total package of what is being proposed and where it is being proposed. To do that, I believe you would want to see those prior to that state, that state ranking.
Okay, based on your comments, then, it would seem to me, because we don't have a model out there, you had mentioned that in the Netherlands, this is legalized, NIH must have some information. What is the advantage of clustering your dispensaries as opposed to spreading them around the six wards? Without the background that Councilman Barlow has asked for and the education, how can we make any knowledgeable decision?
And Madam Mayor, I don't think that we expect you to make that decision today. What I would recommend is that as we develop a program for you, we will give you those options and discuss those options with you and provide you the pros and cons of each type of system for locating dispensaries throughout the city of Las Vegas. So that is a later decision that we would make, but what Ms. Duddleston is saying is that there are some benefits to us as the city in proposing regulations before the state process opens, so that we have greater control over where those facilities might locate.
So we can take them one at a time, because I know the papers you have already distributed to us in reference here, these are hospitals and what their analysis of medical marijuana. I'm sure you can research and get back on each one of the four areas as to what is our best option based on research, based on models of where it's disastrous in one state or another, or one country or another. So I would want anything that you move forward in this developing program to have all the requested background that Councilman Barlow asked for, so that when it comes to us, we've at least come to that clarity, if nothing else. So thank you. Yes, Councilwoman, please.
I just, you know, I've said from the very beginning, if we did this, I wanted it done as clean and as well as possible, and my concern is the timing. And earlier today, you had said you wouldn't have enough time. Will you have, remember that, when you said that when we asked about the timing, you could use till May? Do we have to May to do it and still meet what the mayor wants? I know the pressure you're under, and I know how hard it is to collect everything you're being, I mean, you're being asked to collect dispensaries on cultivation, on this, this, and this.
Testing and everything.
Testing and everything. Do you have enough time? Do we need to allow more time for you, or do you have you set up a time you feel is workable? And not just because you're a very nice person and you'd like to meet our needs, but so that you know, because you're also a very good professional, you know the amount of time you need in order to do this well.
Thank you, Your Honor, if I might. I think, I heard the direction to work with Clark County. Just so you know, we have been meeting four months. We meet every two weeks. We have been researching regulations across the country. We have been looking at best practices. We have been developing a variety of things. I think within the timeframe, if both the staff of Clark County and the staff of the city of Las Vegas can come together and share all of our work product, that if what you want is a system that you can consider, a framework for, and some options for prior to that state opening of their system, that we can produce that for you to look at. Exactly what timing it would be depends on a lot of factors. So if we will, we will begin quickly, and hopefully, we can, we can have something within the next 60 days for you to take a look at.
Well, just know that we're with you, and we want to let you do the best you can, and we're not pressuring.
Councilman.
Hi, thank you. There's been some discussion about the county, and I know that we ought to be in harmony with the county. I think it makes sense to try not to have too many glaring differences, so that people don't suddenly just decide, well, the city is too restrictive, so let's just go to the county, and so de facto, you have essentially created a problem by making it more difficult to have the dispensaries, let's say, for example, in the city. So we ought to be working with them, as staff has been doing, but we need legal counsel. I do not want the city of Las Vegas to use Clark County's legal counsel to draft an ordinance for the city of Las Vegas. An ordinance drafted for the city must be able to be defended by the city. An ordinance drafted for the city must be drafted by our own counsel. Or we have to have counsel from outside that's independent, and I think now is the time for another threshold question, and that is, are we going to be represented by our city attorney, or do we have to hire outside counsel? And how is it going to be paid for? I really believe we need to move forward, clear that question up now, today, by directing our city council to work with our staff to enable the drafting of the ordinances that are going to be called for, based upon the fact that there's been a majority vote of the council passed. Now then, I could make that in a motion, but I don't see why I should make a motion to tell someone to do their job.
Well, except for the fact that you've been advised, if I may, that at this point, it is a felony, and that's the advice. I would like to ask that, when's our next council meeting? When?
The 19th.
The 19th. Would it be all right with you, so we can move forward with this, Councilman, that we have discussion, that we have briefing, that we have some exploration by city staff as to what is the best way to proceed in this particular area? I agree with you. Our council works for us and is our advisory, but our council, at this point, has taken a stand with us, because it is a substance, moved out of being Substance I to Substance II, I'm sure he would be willing to do this.
Your Honor, if I could just say, and I'm not speaking on behalf of the city attorney, nor are you.
Right.
But that was a personal decision, in the face of the thousands of personal decisions to the contrary, made by counsel all over the United States. It's an odd thing to have someone say to you, I will not help you, I will not assist you in the performance of your duties, because unfortunately, that's what has happened here. Yet, you know, I like our counsel. I have always had a lot of trust in him, and he yet has also instructed his counsel, his assistants, to not work with us. So those are our employees, working directly for the counsel, who have been told by one of our subordinates that they, as subordinates of him, should not work for us. That is, and we've been thinking about that ever since he announced that, he will not get an opinion, as a lawyer, he will not get an opinion from another lawyer that says you are guaranteed to never have trouble with anything, no how, no way. It doesn't come out of lawyers' mouths. They are conditioned, you know, the other way, except maybe your husband.
No, in my opinion, with two sons who are lawyers and a husband who's a lawyer, you have to abide by the law, and that's the way I interpret, while I would love for Mr. Jerbic to give us a definitive help here in commentary, and that's why I'm asking, can we defer this, so we can move this process forward and cut you loose, and then have a discussion with legal staff on the 19th? Mayor, if that's permissible.
I just saw Brad in the back, and Councilman Coffin brings up a very valid point. I mean, if, in fact, our counsel, who is here to counsel us, has taken a backseat, then we're out representing ourself on our own. So I would ask that Brad please come forward from out of the back and speak to this board in relation to the questions that we have.
Mayor, Brad is on his way right now. He has been in negotiations upstairs, so he's on his way right now. I just didn't want, I wanted him to have an opportunity to hear the conversation, so, you know, maybe one thing, until he can get down here, maybe we can move through some of these other questions, and then come back to this issue of legal counsel. If you prefer, or we can take the briefing route that you've suggested, and that's fine.
Well, no, I think we can move on. The thing that I think he, from what I've heard, is he is advising the staff, I mean, he's invited, by his comments to us, he is taking the stand that this is his advice to our city council of where he feels his role is in interpreting the federal law which rules the land. That's his point to us. What he would recommend, then, what's the next question, I would ask, where do we go so that we have legal advice? And I'd like to hear it from him, because I know we all have great respect for him. So can we, is he coming down?
Before he speaks, Mayor...
Oh, he's here, he's here.
Before he speaks, let me, let me just get this thought out, because Councilman Coffin is absolutely correct in this respect. The city, Brad and the city attorney works for this council. They represent the city council, and so in any situation where this council decides against the wishes of our legal counsel, he still works for us, and therefore, he has to defend our position as a counsel.
Before you say anything, he's advising you, this is a felony, and he's already advised us.
I understand that, I understand that, but...
So where do we go without counsel?
But my point is, he can't take the backseat to the conversation.
No.
That's all I'm saying, is don't take the backseat to the conversation.
Okay, so we have with us, in front of us now, we have our wonderful counsel, Brad Jerbic, and I think the question is, one, to restate why, number one, you feel, or what the law is and what you say, and then what do we do without the advice of counsel? Where do we go? How do we go further, if you're in that state? So thank you, please go ahead, Mr. Jerbic.
I appreciate Brad Jerbic, a man of the city attorney's office, and I appreciate the opportunity to perhaps set the record straight on this, because there have been a number of statements that I think are inaccurate. One, I've got to tell you, any attorney who would not tell you that this is still a federal felony is committing malpractice. That is a fact. It's my obligation as a lawyer to advise you what the law is, not to make your policy decisions, not to tell you how to vote on this, not to be for it or against it, but to tell you what the law is. I can also tell you that on the federal end, there's been a finding, because it's Schedule I, that it's highly addictive and has no medical purpose. Whether that was a wise decision or not isn't my call, it's my job to tell you what that is. On the state end, there's been a finding that it has a medical purpose, and many other states have found the same thing. It's my job to tell you that. But the fact is, these two laws are in conflict. I am not refusing to give you legal advice, and I am not standing before you having an opinion for or against marijuana. So you can read that as also saying, I am not against marijuana, I don't have an opinion. And all I have done is do what I think any prudent lawyer should do, and that is ask the State Bar of Nevada for an ethical opinion as to whether or not I and any of these other good lawyers who have spoken can advise any client, whether it's a city council or it's a private person, as to whether or not their conduct would break the law. We have a canon of ethic, 1.2D, you can all read it, you can all look it up. It applies to every lawyer in the state, public or private, and it says, a lawyer shall not counsel their client to commit a felony. Now, we may all not like the federal law, we may all think it's stupid, we all may think it needs revising, and if this were Schedule II, III, or IV controlled substance, we wouldn't even be having this debate right now. Doctors could prescribe it, you wouldn't even need dispensaries, we would already have them, they're called pharmacies. But we don't have that luxury, and I don't have the luxury of providing you legal advice with that federal law in place the way it is. What I did back in October, hoping that I would have an answer by now, is merely ask the question lawyers in three other states have asked. Can I advise my client in this matter, knowing it's still a federal felony? That's a pretty simple question, and I'll get a pretty simple answer, and I tell you the truth, I would rather keep my license and lose my job than the other way around.
Your Honor, thank you very much, Brad. The question is, I don't know what you asked Alan LaFever and the bar, the state bar, but certainly, they would come back and say, it certainly would be a felony for you, Brad, to use marijuana. It would be a felony for you to tell someone to use marijuana. I suspect that would be true. I do not think that you would be told, you will be advising someone to commit a crime if they draw up ordinances and rules for the medical prescribing and/or dispensing and growing of same, because we're not using. I might, but you wouldn't, and I don't think anybody else in the council is. There's a world of difference between using and telling somebody to use versus telling someone how to create a framework for which a medicine can be prescribed and dispensed.
I appreciate that argument. And the bar may well say that, but I'll tell you quite honestly, Councilman, why I disagree with you. And I hope we wouldn't have to have this in a public forum, but I'll be happy to state it, and here's how you get from there. And I've discussed it with the U.S. Attorney for the state of Nevada, and he agrees, and any federal prosecutor, if they were not on a stand-down right now based on a letter from a deputy attorney general at the federal level, would tell you the same thing. If you decide to issue licenses to organizations that sell a Schedule I controlled substance, the money you receive for that license is drug money, okay? If you decide to take a percentage of the gross, it's drug money. We may not like that term, but that's how you get there, and that's why this is troubling to me, Councilman. This is why I asked the question. The other thing, until two weeks ago, a lot of people don't realize how many moving pieces there are here. It's illegal for a bank to open an account for a business then, when they know it's drug money. If they do it, the bank loses their FDIC insurance. That's why two weeks ago, years after the very first letter came out of Department of Justice, Department of Justice woke up and said, whoa, we set in motion medical marijuana, now we set in motion dispensaries, we forgot the piece about putting the money in the bank. Do you realize that you couldn't get a credit card machine or an ATM machine for a dispensary? So this becomes a cash-only business. Now it's a cash-only business, we have licenses. You asked me to create a licensing category. You're asking me to create a law that says the city of Las Vegas will take $100,000, $50,000, and a percentage of the profits from a dispensary that distributes a Schedule I controlled substance. That's the crime. That's the crime. And that's why I want to know if I can advise you to commit technically that crime.
If I may, Councilman.
That's the 800-pound elephant in the room.
Excuse me, Councilman, I really do, I mean, because you have explained that to me, and I certainly, it's absolutely clear to me. But where I see where we are at this point, and I do think we need legal advice, at the point that the federal government gives the authority for everything to do with marijuana to individual states. Where we are right now is asking our staff to make a plan, make a plan, that's all, because up until the time that the state has the legal right from the federal government, everything you're saying is absolutely correct, and we, but we're trying to get a plan ahead of this happening. So what I'm hearing is, we need, looking forward to the point, that there's no point to anything if the federal government doesn't let go of it and give it to each state to regulate themselves. If, in fact, that happens, we want to be prepared. So assuming, at that point, this is moved from Substance I to Substance II, can you advise us on that assumption as to the efficacy and what this plan is going to develop to be? That's what I'm interested in, and I absolutely agree with Councilman Coffin. We need some legal advice. We know it's, at this point, a felony, because it is Substance I. If it were moved by the feds to give to each state, and is Substance II, and they take their hands off it, we want to be ready to roll if it is the mind of this council to put it in our city. That's the only question. Can you advise us?
Believe me, I can, and here's how I do it, and this is one of the things I need to let you know. Please understand a couple of things. One, Senator Seegerblum is a personal friend of mine, and I understand the law that he was able to shepherd through, the state legislature. I understand it reflects, in large part, the will of the people, and I respect that, because, well, I'm an American, I'm a Nevadaan too, and I understand the will of the state. My only question is about my license as a lawyer under our canons of ethics. With respect to advising this council, there is nothing that prohibits me from saying, if marijuana were not illegal or not Schedule I, could you have a licensing scheme? if marijuana were not illegal or not Schedule One, could you have a licensing scheme and what would it look like? There is very little legal advice involved in this, very, very, very little legal advice. The legal advice is the strong stuff, I already told you. This is the federal law, this is the state law, and they're in conflict. That's pretty much the legal advice. When it comes to the rest of it, Karen and Flynn will create a licensing scheme. They create them every day without our legal advice, from selling ice cream to retail sales to whatever it might be. Marijuana's just going to be another licensing scheme. They're going to create zoning categories. Do you want them, treat them like taverns? Do you want to treat them like 7-Elevens? They do that every day for businesses around town. There's very little, these are policy calls.
So to reiterate your stand right now is, it is a felony, you don't want to lose your license as an attorney because it is a felony, and that's your advice at this. But we aren't, we're not in a position to go ahead and make dispensaries or take advantage because we don't even have a plan. And we haven't gone anyway. So this whole thing's very premature. The feds have not given the state the right anyway. But all we're interested in is, were something legal, as we're making this plan, you can advise going beyond to the next step.
Mayor, may I say something?
Yes, okay. Excuse me.
I'd like to continue if I could, Mayor.
Councilman, hold on, please. Councilman Beers had asked.
No, Greg Ross.
I mean, excuse me, Councilman Ross.
Thank you, Mayor. And Councilmembers and Mayor, and for the public's benefit, Mr. Jerbik, I commend you on your position. I think you are doing the right thing for the right reasons and all ethical reasons. I mean, there's nothing wrong with what you're doing. I also agree with my colleagues in regards as we go down this path, we do need legal consultation, which means we will look to our city attorney to do that. But Mayor, I would ask you and this council to get back on task of the agenda item so we can direct staff to keep moving in the right direction.
Well, how about let us continue with the discussion?
Thank you, Mayor.
Your Honor, I had the floor.
Councilman Coffin, please. No, 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 no. Okay, calm, calm, calm. Just be calm, we're trying. You wanted to have Mr. Jerbik here.
If I could have some cannabis, I could be calm.
Excuse me one second, please. You're supposed to be taking other pills. Hydrocodone's very powerful. So the floor's back to you.
Okay, thank you. I have now, I have calmed down. I have calmed down. And you know what, Your Honor, though, here is, here is another point, Brad. Now, you said you wished we'd had had this conversation in private, but we all work for the public. This is not a personnel session, this is simply policy. And we're talking about something that ought to be in public view, because we all work for the public. You have instructed your staff to not work on this. And you know, it sounds to me, and I understand what Councilman Ross has said, if you have a personal position on this, because you're worried about your personal license, your license is not issued to the city attorney, it's issued to Brad Jerbik.
Correct.
But is the license also in, I mean, all your deputies, you've told your deputies not to work on this.
That's not correct. Here's what I told...
We've been told by your deputies that that's the case.
Well, then they have, they have misspoken. In our office, everybody has assignments. There's things I work on that only I work on. For example, I have a team working on Cordish, and I've instructed everybody else, you're not working on it. That's my project. I do public records, only me, because I want consistency. I've told everybody else, don't do it. I've told my staff, medical marijuana's mine, I'm doing this one.
Whoa, 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 whoa. So therefore, nothing can happen?
If that's been communicated otherwise, they're just communicating.
Oh, now that's like saying, well, you can do everything but go to the bathroom. But as long as you go to the bathroom, I got the toilet paper. And you had to ask me.
Any way you want to look at it, the bottom...
But Brad, 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 I'm not going to be argumentative. It's just that I can't follow your logic.
Okay, let's, okay.
It just seems like we are cheating ourselves out of this.
Councilman, I'd like to hear from our city manager.
He doesn't work for her.
If you, if you prefer, what we can do is, we can put together some options for ways for us to get the advising counsel that we need, respecting Brad's position on this, and bring it back to you in briefing next week or the week after that, and then proceed accordingly.
I can even add a bit more to that. I have been informed by a deputy district attorney who's aware of this pending opinion. We're going to probably get an answer very, very soon.
Fine, so if you'll communicate it.
It's longer than I thought. In fact, I thought, when I asked in October, I thought I'd have it in December, we wouldn't even be having this conversation now.
Okay.
If they say yes, go ahead, then we have no issue.
And you'll get back to us.
That's fine.
I think your points have been very clear, I think we're ready to move on, and let's hear the rest of this.
No.
Unless there was something else, Councilman.
I do, I do. And I apologize for belaboring this, but I, I agree with Councilman Coffin on this one, Brad. You're, if you're the only one that's handling this, and no one else is to handle this, you're leaving this council without coverage. You're leaving us without coverage, you're leaving us without representation. That's, that's the philosophical touching point here. That means we have no city attorney to guide us. Now, understanding, Brad, your position in relation to the license in the category one, I get that. But I don't follow the other pieces that you've shared, because we haven't voted to move medical marijuana anywhere. The only thing that we've agreed to do as a body was to continue to further the research as far as the what-ifs. Now, if you can tell me if there's a crime in conducting what-ifs in the positions that we're directing staff to come back to us with, once we have those options, I believe at that point, the philosophical conversation comes back as to if in fact you hadn't received the letter or whatever the notification you're seeking, at that point, I would truly understand your position going, okay, now although these are all the what-ifs, quote unquote, folks, you guys can't do this for X, Y, Z reasons that you've just mentioned right now, but all we're directing is conducting additional research. What crime is there in conducting research? That's, that's the question that I have now.
There's none, and I never said there was.
That's, that's how I'm receiving what you're sharing, Brad.
There's a disconnect here, and maybe I can rephrase it. When it comes to representation, legal representation for my office, one, you have received legal advice. The legal advice is, this remains a crime, there's a conflict between these two.
Correct.
I have not received a question from staff that I refuse to answer. They haven't asked any. They're formulating policy right now that doesn't require legal advice. We're fortunately in that period right now where they haven't needed to involve me.
Okay.
They will in the future, I'm sure. But when it comes to, why is it me and nobody else? Well, one, if there's an ethical conflict for me, there's an ethical conflict for every one of my deputies as well. I'm not going to have one of them accidentally step in it and provide advice. How silly would that be to say, staff, because I can't, you can. They have the same model rules of ethics that I do. They have the same obligation I do. And every one of these attorneys that's advising clients to pursue a license has the same obligation I do.
Brad, I understand that.
Now, if they feel comfortable, that's their, that's their business. But I'm not going to throw a member of my staff under the bus and say, provide advice. I'm going to hide behind an ethical opinion.
Brad, I, I get that. I think you're going, as far as Ricky Barlow is concerned, my concern was the fact that you left me uncovered as far as legal representation. So what you've stated thus far, I'm back in my comfort zone with what you've laid out in relation to not leaving me unprotected from a legal standpoint as my legal representation, as my city attorney. That, that was my concern.
Let me, let me be even more blunt. Your vote today to allow staff to continue to do this research is perfectly legal.
Okay.
There's nothing wrong with that.
That's what I was getting at.
I don't know if that helps, but...
It does. You've just, you've just settled my, my nerves.
You took no action today.
Because I didn't see any legal problem with directing staff to do what we just did today.
Great. And Councilwoman, excuse me, let's please not go out of order, Councilwoman's been patient here.
I just wanted to say, it may turn out to be a win-win situation in this, because what he has told us is it's planning and licensing, and we know this at this phase of any project that's similar. So it's planning and licensing that are going to make the decisions as far as land use, distance, and all of that. And by the time we get to the next level where you might be needed, we hope you'll have your answer. Is that correct? It should be coming any day now.
Hopefully, hopefully in a week or less.
And it's, I can see your point of view very much, because of course I have felt something of the same. There's nothing to say that I don't sympathize with those who need marijuana medically or something else along that line. But, but you have this federal government, which I've been involved with at times, and I'm going to tell you, they don't play little games, they come down with a sledge jammer. And we can say, the president says such and such, and the attorney general says such and such, but they're not going to be in there forever. And by the time we get fully developed, I can understand what you're saying. And that's all, I don't want to take up any more time.
Thank you. I thank you, Mr. Jerbik, because I really, I think now everybody understands your position on this, and you're our attorney, and you will advise in things. At this point, we all know and understand, it is a felony, this is substance one, and that's why you've made your statement. Thank you. Let's continue on.
Thank you, Your Honor. Hopefully these questions will get a little easier. I think on timing, I heard clearly you want us to move forward now. You want us to move forward with the county.
Yes.
And you want to see a program whereby there's options for the city to see those applications prior to the state process. That question is answered. The next one, is it, are there any concerns, is there anything that you would like us to prioritize or to not bring back for your consideration in the types of facilities? So are there concerns about cultivation or dispensaries, laboratories, edible products, including the infused products and the natural plants, that you want to make sure we gather information or we gather options for you?
All of it.
All of it.
All of it. And then it will become a time where they want to prioritize anything? We need it all, we need the background behind it.
Okay. We've been researching best practices across the nation and looking at the local standards for consideration. We've looked at and talked about a variety of ownership, regulatory structures, their operations in the local, in the local area. We just want to make it be clear from you that you are looking from us for the best practices that we can find across the nation for a local program.
Across the world.
Across the world, you got it.
Let's go to the Netherlands where it's legal, and let's find out, let's learn from their mistakes.
I think we already discussed some of the land use, the districts versus dispersal of dispensaries, and where those might go. So the last one, was there any community concerns to research or to address? Anything that you've heard from your constituents?
I'm sure I can speak for every council member. At the time that we have this information, it is important to share with the community.
We have two volunteers to go to the Netherlands for you.
I know you've been to Phoenix, right?
Yes, we have.
Have you been anywhere else at this point?
I have not been anywhere else. I have had the opportunity to meet directly with the regulators from Colorado and the regulators from Washington.
Okay. I mean, I really, it may be a joke, we have some volunteers at the end, but I really don't think it would be ill-advised to send maybe, you know, someone to the Netherlands and go to their government and find out and view and see. Because when we do this, if in fact it ever moves off to another level, we want to do it right, we want to take leadership in this state.
With that, I think we have the direction that we need. The next steps is, the Planning Commission will review land use options and regulations, I believe, on February 11th, is that correct?
That's correct.
We will be again drafting that plan and at least the staff level regulations for consideration. And then we would move forward with public hearings and consideration by the council.
Question, and this is more for, we have a city attorney down there that's still awake. Can we move this directly to the city council versus the Planning Commission?
The answer is no. If you are going to amend Title 19 to allow medical marijuana facilities, Planning Commission per NRS has purview over the zoning code. And so they are a recommending body to city council. Text amendments need to go to Planning Commission, and then they are then forwarded to city council.
Can we make it final action?
At Planning Commission?
I mean, I'm sorry, can we make sure that it's not final action?
It never would be.
Okay, just want to make sure for the point of clarification, thank you.
So there's no way to help planning with being inundated with whatever, you know, lawlessness?
We have the Planning Commission workshop yesterday afternoon, where we briefed them on some potential concepts for land use regulations for medical marijuana facilities. So they've had an opportunity to review what staff has proposed. They will then discuss that at their February 11th meeting. If they are able to come to a consensus on their recommendations, that will then be forwarded to city council for consideration. As part of that, obviously, there will be some additional research that we will provide to you that you have requested here today.
Was your symposium televised? And is it public a matter, it's on our website?
The, the workshop was not televised. It is a Planning Commission workshop, and those are not televised. We did take minutes, and then the presentation and the, the regulations that we proposed will be posted on the city website. So we'll have those available to the public.
But again, realizing everything that Mr. Jerbik said as we go forward, at the right time, as everything moves through our state and becomes legal because the state's in control and been given that by the federal government, at what point are we looking to involve the total community in where we're headed?
In part of our plan to go forward based on your direction here today, we would include public meetings to discuss the proposed regulations. We don't have any dates scheduled yet, but that's something that will be presented to you as part of our plan to move forward.
Excellent.
We've also discussed with the county is trying to do some joint workshops for the community as we get those regulations in place so that we can save staff time as well as the community's time of having to go to several meetings.
Great, thank you. That's the end? We're having such a good time, why is this over?
I believe we have the direction that we need, and, and we will move forward to develop a plan and options that meets the best practices.
Thank you.
With the thoughts that we've heard today, and we will continue to bring back things to you periodically.
Wow, well, good job, thank you both. Sorry it was laborious, but we knew we'd get there. We, oh, he's holding his head, he has a head...
Well, I'm just concerned because it's a legal question. Is it legal to hold a joint workshop on an issue like this?
Is that cute? Beer with beers, we're into beer with beers, let's forget it, with a banjo, right? Okay, thank you very much. We will move on to Agenda Item 58. I would instruct the city clerk...
Mayor, excuse me.
I hear, Mayor.
Me.
Oh.
Before you move to that item, I need to make a notice for the record. When Councilman Anthony made the motion on 2014-3, sending it back to recommending, we had the date of March 4th, and it's actually March 3rd. I just wanted to make it on the record, and the notice will be put into the minutes.
Okay, and you will put that in the minutes, and it will be so noted.
Correct.
Thank you very much. So I would instruct the city clerk to set the public hearing dates and appeals in the city Planning Commission meetings and dangerous building or nuisance litter abatements. Thank you very much. Item 59, citizen participation. Public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters within the jurisdiction of the city council. No such subject may be acted upon by the city council unless that subject's on the agenda and scheduled for action. If you wish to be heard, please come to the podium and give your name for the record. The amount of discussion on any single subject, as well as the amount of time any single speaker is allowed, may be limited. Are there members of the public who wish to speak under this portion of the agenda? Please state your name.
Oh, my name is Anthony Hodges. Mayor, I just want to say that going forward and looking ahead for the future, for the state and Nevada's concerned, we are stating...
Nevada, Nevada, not Nevada.
I know, I mess it up all the time, forgive me, whatever, I'm going to get run all the town on the rail, whatever. But anyway, the purpose of going forward, I'm talking about the benefit of the state and the local, local cities and whatever, you know. Since we're an inland state, so we repel, you know, other states adjacent and whatever, come from the east and the west and south and so on, whatever, Mexico, the Pacific Ocean and so on. The objective is, is that, one of the greatest things they ever invented was the train, you know, the train. So you had a train, well, the boats, the ships was the first thing they ever run around the world, whatever. the world, whatever. And then when you come up with a train, the train is still a big fella, you know.
I like the clothes washer, to be perfectly honest.
Huh?
I like the clothes washer and dryer more than the train.
Well, whatever. Anyway, the train, all I'm saying is that the train, rather be carrying freight of people or whatever, that's not undoing. It's the objective of it being a train. Remember, the train is the first thing ever made that wasn't, you know, pulled by a horse or a mule or whatever. So remember, the trains have been running pretty good while. And then you had the train, then you got some cars, and somebody thought about the Wright Brothers with the plane and rest is here, whatever. But the danger, we don't need to go there. But the train is very vital. And so they're talking about bringing the train, high-speed trains from California, whatever. We really need to get the trains in here, whether come in, you're driving so slow you have to push it up to hit, whatever. The objective is the train is, needs to come back, period. Rather be high-speed, low-speed, or somewhere in between. But we really need trains coming into this place badly. I'm joking in plain, but I'm telling the truth. Trains need to come back. Rather be high-speed or low, it doesn't matter, okay? So that's one thing I want to kind of hurry up and get out of the way. Another thing, Mayor, is that getting back to marijuana and all that other kind of stuff. When the government has the last word about certain thing, the states can beat and bar and do whatever they want and pass little backyard laws or whatever. But always remember, the federal government do have the last word. And so, you know, each state can do their own thing within limitation, that is, their right as states. But the main thing is, at the end of the day, until the federal government decides to cut marijuana, loose-legged alcohol and cigarette, whatever, you know, it's going to be a little rough stuff going down the road. Sorry about that.
And just to tell you about your trains, I did ask in Washington two years ago, and then again a year ago, Amtrak will not be servicing Las Vegas till they have a regional plan, period. Amtrak will not be servicing Las Vegas until they have a regional, that's the whole Southwest plan in place.
Well, I hope you heard them thinking that.
Thank you, Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street. I got several items. On item number 32, that was on the lighting report. Mayor, I almost hit somebody too. And the common dress code for kids anymore seems to be black pants with dark gray hoodies. You cannot see them. I don't, you just cannot see them. So I'm, and they were outside, if they're outside the pedestrian zone and they're standing in the middle of the street, I mean, I just came just so close, and I didn't even, there's no way you could see them. On item number 37, that was on people on work card denials, whether they can appeal that to the council. First of all, everything should be able to be appealed to the council. But in planning, if somebody wants to appeal something to the council, they have to pay a fee for that. And if somebody, if on a work card denial, if they appeal it to the council, I hope that there's no fee that they have to pay because these are people that cannot afford the fee and who are trying to get them to work, not hold them back. On one other item, on the news this week, now, we're all trying to encourage education. And Don Snyder, we all know who he is, very effective. He was, he's the new president of UNLV.
Interim, interim president.
His salary is $300,000, and in the same week, they paid the football coach, they approved $700,000. If you want to affect your education, you're going to have to pay teachers what you pay the sports people. And I have nothing against sports, but I think they ought to be conducted as a business, not part of the education. On the last item of the council meeting on, the Planning Commission meeting on the 14th of January, there was on item number 53, Tivoli Village. They have a, they wanted a residential unit, and the people in the surrounding didn't want to see a block wall there, a huge four-story wall. So what they did, they tiered that in a step thing, and they put green roofs on it. And I asked if they could find that in the Planning Commission, put it on the screen, but they can't. But if you can go back to the Planning Commission meeting and review that, because it was final action, so it didn't have to come to the council. But it is absolutely beautiful. It is just beautiful. The green roof, it takes away from the heat sink effect and everything. Not only that, but the neighbors. In a way, if you just find that someplace in your notes and look it up.
Well, that's in Councilman Beers' ward, so I'm sure you'll follow up. Thank you, thank you. Anyone else wishing to be heard? There's nobody left to be heard. So I'll close the public comment, and we'll move on to Agenda Item 60, which is council member recognition. Comments made by individual city council members during this portion of the agenda will not be acted upon by the city council unless that subject's on the agenda and scheduled for action. Any member of the council who wishes to speak under this portion of the agenda, Councilman Beers, you're first.
Thank you, Your Honor. On the coming Saturday, we're going to be shredding over at Anson Sister Park, 10:00 AM to noon. The actual address is 7801 New Charm Avenue, but it's just west of Buffalo, very close to Alta. Then, on February 13th, we'll be doing Coffee with the Councilmen at the Starbucks at Rampart and Lake Mead. That, if memory serves, is the southeast corner of Rampart and Lake Mead. That'll be from 7:30 to 9:00 in the morning on Thursday, February 13th. And then, Your Honor, how do you solve a problem like Maria?
Oh.
Yes.
You sing and you play your banjo.
We're doing the Sound of Music out at the Summerlin Library this weekend and next weekend. Broadway Bound is presenting it, and they do an excellent job. I haven't seen this show, but I've seen other shows that they've done. Their website is BroadwayBoundLV.com. BroadwayBoundLV.com. Tickets, just 15 bucks. It will be a good time.
Wonderful. They are great. They have a great reputation. Their performances are wonderful. How much fun. Okay, Maria, go.
Maria?
Go. Oh, singing too.
I just met a girl named Maria.
Very good. Wrong Maria, but it's okay.
But that's the one I like.
It's all right. We'll just take any Maria you like.
In light of the sad passing of actor Philip Seymour Hoffman, I will be speaking at an event called Black Monday on Monday, February 10th, from 6:00 to 8:00 at the Salvation Army. Black Monday is a memorial for those who have died from heroin, are addicted to heroin, or are in recovery. So I just want to make note of that. I will be speaking, as will Las Vegas Metro Police Department Under Sheriff Jim Dixon and District Court Judge Linda Bell at this event to kind of point out the importance of heroin addiction and awareness. That being said, I've got something a little fun, but a little serious. I will be hosting a live Twitter chat on Tuesday, February 11th. Go figure, a live Twitter chat, to get the public's feedback on something we talked about this afternoon, medical marijuana. So join me from 4:00 to 5:00 PM by using the hashtag LVAward6Chat, and you can follow me at SteveRossLV, or, and you can follow the City of Las Vegas at CityOfLasVegas. If you have any questions about participating, certainly email socialmedia@lasvegasnevada.gov.
Is that little ducky you?
No, that is actually the little Twitter duck. That was my first reaction, too. Is that supposed to depict me with a cowboy hat on? And it was kind of cute at first. That's the little Twitter guy. That's the Twitter guy. On a more serious note, our continued partnership with Nevada Childseekers. We do have a missing young lady. Her name is Dariana Rios Ramirez. She's 14 years old. She's about three foot, five inches tall, very tiny, 75 pounds, of course, brown hair, brown eyes. Last contact was January 22nd. She was last seen in the area of Eastern and Sahara Avenue. Dariana was last seen wearing blue jeans, a white blouse, gray sweatshirt, and white shoes, and maybe carrying a light blue backpack with personal belongings. She does have a birthmark on her right arm near her shoulder. If anyone has any information leading to the whereabouts of this young lady, please contact the Las Vegas Metro Police Department at 702-828. We don't have the graphic, Todd. 828-3111, or Nevada Childseekers at 702-458-7009. But thank you, Todd. I apologize to the public that we don't have the graphic of this young lady, but nonetheless, she is still missing, and we'd like to get her found. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilman. Councilwoman, you're next.
We will have Award One shredding event and drug collection. A particular emphasis on the drug collection. These are prescription drugs that you don't use, all of them, you leave them in your cabinet. Sometimes youngsters get to them, and the drug problem in the middle schools and the high schools is quite severe with about 70% of the prescription drug use coming from the home. In other words, from the medicine cabinet in the home. We will hold it at Garseide Middle School, the West Parking Lot, Saturday, February 26th, from 9:00 AM to 11:00 AM. And along with your prescription drugs, if you want to bring any marijuana donations, you can do that, too. We also will have a Puppy Love Event Saturday, March 1st, 10:00 AM to 12:00 PM at appropriately Wooster Family Park. And we will have the vendors there and the doggy parade with awards, and we really have a great time, and anybody who loves dogs would love coming. So remember, 10 to 12 on March 1st, Saturday. Puppy love.
And will that have an adoption component to it from our animal foundation?
I understand that they do have that also, but I will check.
Thank you, because that's fine. You can adopt a puppy or a dog that needs home.
I want to adopt one of those puppies that survived the fire. They look too cute. Put me down for one.
Oh, wow. Okay, Councilman Barlow.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, on tomorrow, Coffee with the Councilmen will be taking place at Starbucks, starting at 9:00 AM until 10:00 AM. So I invite the entire community to please come out and participate in Coffee with the Councilmen. Will be located at 751 Rancho and Bonanza, right at Bonanza and Rancho. In addition to that, the next Bluegrass in the park will take place Sunday, March 2nd, from 1:00 PM until 3:00 PM. We invite the entire community to please come out and join local Bluegrass bands playing traditional American music out in the park at the newly renovated Lorenzi Park. In addition to that, I would like to wish a very happy Chinese New Year to those residents in our community that are celebrating the Chinese New Years. Thank you so very much.
Thanks so much. Councilman and Councilman Coffee.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to say tomorrow morning at 9:00, we're going to unveil a new program in Ward Three that has been in the making for a long time. That is something to change the appearance of our neighborhoods, which look so badly devastated by the financial crisis. And, you know, there's thousands of homes unoccupied now. And nothing, in my mind, looks worse than an occupied home, except for an unoccupied home that really looks unoccupied, and that is one covered by plywood panels on the doors and windows, and it just looks like trash. And so while we've been doing that, we've been ordering that, and it's in our purview to do it because we want to keep those properties secure, what we hadn't really considered was the aesthetic value. And so I came up with an idea, and boy, our city staff has really rocked with it. And our arts people, Nancy Deeners folks, have come up with an idea where we will be able to artistically decorate all of these plywood boards in a whimsical and an artistic fashion so that when you drive by your neighbor's house and you see something interesting there, maybe somebody looking out waving at you, maybe somebody on the telephone, not going to be a real person, it's going to be somebody who's been drawn there. The Downtown Project took it on a few weeks ago and has already, if you want to drive down East Fremont, take a look at some of those motels they own that they had boarded up. What they did was they created some stencils with some whimsical art in there, and they have painted those windows. So now, they don't look bad. They look pretty fun, actually. And I think those are the kind of things that will prevent graffiti because artists, they kind of respect each other's turf on this stuff. And I hope when you see it, Your Honor, and I think others, they're going to want to adopt that for the rest of the town. Every abandoned home, every foreclosed home can look good, can actually look like it's part of the neighborhood. And so that's the first thing.
How do people join in with this event with you?
Well, it's tomorrow morning at 9:00 at 108 Shiloh. People can call my office, though, for directions to get there. That's Thursday morning, the 5th, the 6th? 6th. And it is 4, excuse me, 229-4623. And we'll give you directions on how to get there, 229-4623. But anybody can drive down East Fremont now and see some of those motels, like the Ferguson, couple of others. They have changed their appearance.
Can they paint? Can the people who want to come in and volunteer, could they come in and paint or what?
We're not at that stage yet, Your Honor. My real first intention was that we hire at a very low price unemployed artists and others, and including, we may even have some, we have some very talented graffiti taggers out there that if their work, if their efforts, if their energies are put into a useful purpose, they can do something very nice for the city and work off their punishments that way, I think, in a much more constructive way than just picking up paper off the sidewalks and the medians in the freeways. Anyway, I say this because I think it's going to be a real red letter day, and I think it's going to set a precedent for the whole city and other cities to follow. There have been a few that have tried it, but I don't think anybody will do it quite like Las Vegas. The last thing I want to say, Your Honor, is how much I appreciate the level of debate and discussion today. You know, I relish a good debate. There's no such thing as a disagreement that gets personal. If you follow the rules and if you stay in order, and it's a difficult thing to chair a meeting when people have divergent opinions. And you did an excellent job, Your Honor, in moderating this discussion. And it's never easy on particularly a social issue. I've cast more than 10,000 votes in the legislature in my time, and I'm sure I'll cast a lot here. Every time you cast a vote, you make an enemy of some kind. So it's best to get on the record, as Councilman Anthony did so eloquently. He got on the record with his position, and he stated his very good reasons, his very legitimate reasons for his position. So I tried to as well, and others. And that's an important thing because voters, they don't like if you just vote one way or the other and not say what's on your mind. Here, they at least understand what you're thinking, and we owe that to you, Your Honor, for conducting a good meeting to let all opinions be heard. So thank you very much.
Thank you. I agree with you, and I think it's wise that everybody states their reasons why and back up. And so in concluding this, please join me and actually, Mayor Pro Tem downtown on fabulous Fremont Street as we celebrate Chinese New Year. It will happen Friday, February 7th. We'll gather at the Third Street Stage at 6:00 PM to usher in the year of the horse. The horse is especially meaning for us here in Las Vegas, where we embrace the Western culture and host dozens of equine events throughout the city, including the National